We are now live.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for attending today's meeting of the Santa Rosa City School Board. Today is Wednesday, March ninth. Open the meeting. And we will start this evening's meeting with a territorial land acknowledgement. We have a guest joining us. Right now I'm going to call on Trustee De La Cruz for introductions.
Thank you. Thank you so much, President Sheffield. So it's my honor tonight to invite and to introduce Ruben Crowfeather. So Adina, I'm wondering if Ruben is here? We can bring him over?
He's on his way over.
Great. Thank you. Hi, Ruben. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
Thank you. So I'm so glad you're here with us tonight. It's my, as I said, it's my honor to introduce you and to have you do our land acknowledgement tonight. Ruben Crowfeather is a member of the Standing Rock Sioux Nation and is now residing here in Santa Rosa. He's also the parent of Santa Rosa City's district child. And works every day to make sure that his kid and many others have the benefits of indigenous practices and knowledge. Ruben is a community leader who is currently working with Raíces Collective in their Cosecha Program, which is designed to encourage Spanish-speaking and indigenous youth to connect with their culture through the arts. So Ruben, thank you so much for being here. I'll turn it over to you now.
Can you hear me? How mitaki api chante washtena pe chus apalo. Ruben Crowfeather imachi apelo. Lila io maki pihilo. Ian slata ma ma ma. Erwati Santa Rosa. Say good evening, my relatives. My name is Ruben Crowfeather. I'm a Hunk Papa Lakota. I live here in Santa Rosa. I want to say thank you to Alaglia for the introduction. I wish you all a good evening. Before I share a few words amongst our indigenous people, whenever we begin any kind of a meeting or a celebration or whatever it is, we begin with a wocheki, with a prayer. So at this time, I ask that you, in your own way, in your, with your own heart, your mind, your prayer, put our minds together and make a prayer for the things that we want to do for our children. So at this time, I ask you to pray along with me. Good evening, relatives. I welcome you to the homelands of the Homo, Homo Nation, also the Miwak Nations. In the United States, we have over 574 tribes in the United States indigenous nations. Within California, we have nearly 100 tribal reservations or rancherias. In our Latin, our Latin America, we have over 826 different tribes. And so amongst all those different tribes, you have different languages, different dialects, different customs, lot of history amongst amongst all the different nations. And words of Sitting Bull, great Hunk Papa, chief of our nation, Standing Rock Nation. Let's put our minds together and see what kind of future we can make for our children. The Santa Rosa is a very, very unique and beautiful place, very, very diverse. I'm very excited to announce that we're having a new addition to our family. March 28th, we have a baby girl on the way. My companion Lucero and I, how about a round of applause for Lucero? And we plan on raising our daughter here in the Santa Rosa, city of Santa Rosa. And we look forward to being a part of her education. As Alaglia had mentioned, we have a son in sixth grade. Last year in the fifth grade at Proctor Elementary, his teacher had the, the class, half of them would be colonizers and half of them would be Native Americans. Our son came home confused, crying. He was hurt. It was, it was pretty emotionally traumatic for our son. And so we want to help avoid that in the future. And the history that has been taught has, the teacher, she cried, she felt bad about it. She, but what is she taught and what are we going to teach our children? So it's our hope that you can add cultural sensitivity. This past year in Riverside, there was a teacher that mocked Native American culture, which she was later fired for. And so those are the things that we as Native Americans, we face. We have, we have our own culture identity issues. Are we Native American? Are we Indian? Are we Mexican? Or what are we, you know? And so we as, as parents, you know, we're doing our part. And it's our hope that you, the school board, can help us. That we can make Santa Rosa a beautiful place for all the indigenous children, for all children. And for all, for our greater community of Santa Rosa. And it begins with a prayer. And we began, we began with that prayer at this time. So we turn it over to you. You've been entrusted to serve as the school board and make these great decisions that can greatly affect the future of our community of Santa Rosa. I wanted to keep it short and sweet. So I, on behalf of all of our community, I want to say wopila tranka. Great gratitude to all of you for all that you are doing and that you're going to continue to do. And I hope that you all have a great meeting and maybe we can talk about cultural sensitivity training in the future. So with that, I'm going to share one more thing. Can you say mita?
Mita.
Kuye.
Mita.
Kuye.
Oya.
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 Dean.
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 Mitaku ye oyasin is the acknowledgement that we're all related to one creator. My grandpa said that we're from the week wonge, that we're all a rainbow, a mixture. And so we're to be human beings, you know, first and foremost. But from the indigenous community, we would just like to see more of cultural sensitivity in regards to our community. But I thank you all for your time again. And dokshakaychi and tilo, we'll see you in the future.
Thank you so much, Ruben.
Thank you so much, Mr. Crowfeather. Your acknowledgement was beautiful and congratulations on the new addition to your family. We do affirm that Santa Rosa City Schools will work harder to address cultural sensitivity, issues that come to our attention and train our staff to, to see these issues as they, as they present themselves. We will continue to honor the past and the present for the future of this land and for our school community. Thank you again.
Oh, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good night.
That was amazing. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item C2, Pledge of Allegiance. All please rise and mute your microphones for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance. To the flag.
United.
The United States of America.
To the Republic.
And to the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, before we get down to business, I want to acknowledge that yesterday, March 8th, was International Women's Day. Global celebration dedicated to uplifting women, honoring their achievements and promoting gender equality. And March is also Women's History Month. The board approved a resolution at our last meeting acknowledging Women's History Month. But as we forward on into March, I just wanted to take a moment to also acknowledge that Women's History Month started right here in Santa Rosa by a local history teacher. The movement began in 1978 by Molly Murphy McGregor and a group of other women in our community who came together to explore the obvious omissions of women accomplishments from history books. They concluded that the lack of acknowledgement of women and by not telling her story, then we're doing a disservice to everyone. And further that if we don't teach about the noble women in history, then who will be the role models of our future women leaders? Well, Ms. McGregor's movement, it went viral and President Jimmy Carter declared the week of March 8th as National Women's History Week in 1980. But the movement took it one step further and in 1987, just a few years later, Congress expanded the week to Women's History Month. And I actually just wanted to take a moment to give a shout out to Molly Murphy McGregor for creating the Women's History Movement. And I also want to use this platform to amplify Santa Rosa City Schools' commitment to encourage our young women to make history. All right, we're going to continue with the agenda. Agenda item C3, Report of Actions Taken in Closed Session. The board voted 7-0 with all members present to authorize the superintendent or designate to adopt Resolution Number 2021-2235 to notify one or more temporary certificated employees that they will be released at the end of the 2021-22 school year. The board also voted 6-1 with all members present on OAH case number 2021-120567. Moving on to Agenda Item C4, Items Considered in Closed Action. For actions in open session, none. C5, Statement of Abstention. Are there statements of abstention tonight from board members? Seeing none. Moving on to C6, Adjustments to the Agenda. Board members, are there requests for adjustments to tonight's agenda? Adina, can we go to the public for adjustments to consent items in the F section?
If there are any members of the public who would like an item at the end of the meeting in the F section to be pulled for public comment at that time, you need to let us know right now so that item can be pulled. So these are the items in the F section of the agenda. This is not for public comment on anything in the E section. And I will call on you if you've raised your hand and ask you which item you would like to be pulled for comment later in the meeting when we get to that part of the agenda. Joanna Kiesel. Joanna, which item in the F section did you want pulled for public comment?
I would like to speak on item F6 regarding the reclassifications.
Okay, thank you. Melanie Rosales. Which item did you want pulled?
I would also like to speak on item F6, reclassification.
Okay, thank you. Kyo Acosta.
Hi, yes, I don't have a copy of the agenda, but I was told that there will be mass on the agenda, so I don't know if that's an F or E.
That is an E item. That will be coming up during the regular agenda. So thank you.
E4.
Alicia Morrison.
Yes, hi, I'd like to speak on the reclassification on item on the agenda, F6.
Okay, thank you. And Lynette Casey.
Yeah, good evening. I'd like to speak on F6, please.
Thank you. And it looks like that's Katie Loomis. Katie Loomis.
Hi, yes, I would like to speak on item F6.
Thank you very much. And that's it, President Sheffield. So it looks like F6.
F6, thank you, Beth. Okay, we are going to move on to C7, Special Presentation for Student of the Month and Certificated Classified Employees of the Month. We have special, a special presentation tonight to honor our students for their academic, for their character and other praiseworthy accomplishments. We will also be honoring our certificated and classified employees for their outstanding dedication and service. Looks like we are bringing some folks over, joining us for these presentations. We have Principal Albevera, we have Principal Diaz and Principal Gage, I believe, with us.
Principal Gage, if you're present, could you please raise your hand? Thank you.
There we go. All right, it looks like we have everybody with us. We will start with Caesar Chavez, Language Academy. And we have Principal Gage. There we go. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good, good evening. School Board Superintendent Tronell, President Sheffield, community members. I'd like to start off by highlighting our Classified of the Year, Lynette Casey. So let me just say some few words about her. Upon joining this year as her administrative assistant, Lynette Casey immediately made an impression at CCLA. Lynette's presence is felt and seen as she walks the campus with authority and awareness, which brings a level of comfort to all those around her. She exhibits great problem-solving skills from finding substitutes, which is usually a big mess, to cover our classes, to providing a helping hand when we need her the most. Each day, Lynette comes to work knowing it will be a brand-new day, different than the day before. Each day opens her eyes to new perspectives and views. Though work may be very fast-paced, she always takes time to support our staff and interact with our students. Her favorite part of being at school is bringing laughter to all of us. And that is my very favorite part of Lynette, is her laughter. We have some really good laughs and that really helps us get through some of those challenging days. Lynette works as an amazing team member at CCLA and we work very closely together. She is an integral part of the CCLA support system, which relies on each other, whether classified, certificated, or administrators. Lynette compliments the wonderful team that we are, like family away from family. She believes in teamwork, leaning on each other to build trust. She is of the philosophy that together we press through each day, remaining flexible and complimenting all the things that need to be accomplished, completing all the things that need to be accomplished. According to Lynette, getting to know our students is the best part of her job. She loves getting to know them, building trust and lifelong relationships. Lynette enjoys learning about people and their lives, their cultures, their philosophies, their families, their struggles and their jobs. When she is not at work, Lynette relishes spending time with her family, laughing, eating delicious food, hiking, gardening, and practicing yoga. She got me into Kundalini yoga on Sunday mornings. We are so lucky to have someone like Lynette at our school. We are grateful for all she does because she is truly an amazing professional. Thank you, Lynette. For our Student of the Year.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Lynette.
Rest, Lynette.
And we're going to move on to our Student of the Year. She here. Okay, our Student of the Year is Marley Corea Molina. She is a seventh grader who transferred to us from Luther Burbank Elementary this year. Marley's teachers describe her as a rigorous and committed student. Marley has earned her teachers' deepest admiration and respect due to her academic performance and persistence. Every day she comes ready to challenge herself, to apply what she is learning, to expand what she can do in class. Marley plans on attending Elsie Allen High School and following in her sister's footsteps, who is currently a senior at one of her local high schools. Even though a junior college, going to junior college is on her current plan, Marley is contemplating joining our CCLA avid program next year to learn more about her other university choices. When asked what she likes about school, Marley responded that she likes math and problem-solving. One of her teachers says, "I see Marley opening so many diverse and different doors that could lead to wonderful new places." Whichever door she chooses, I know she'll learn more from what's behind that door. Marley loves being with her cousin and her friends at CCLA and really likes computers and English with Mr. David Fiori. She describes Mr. Fiori as her favorite teacher and says he knows how to teach and communicate with students in a way that makes sense. In the future, Marley would like to work with something related to or living with in Mexico. She has a dozen cousins, over a dozen cousins in Mexico, and loves visiting and spending time with them and experiencing their culture. Marley is known for helping her mom with cleaning the house and with cooking. Her favorite dish to make is fried quesadillas with queso fresco. When asked how she maintains her 4.0 GPA, Marley states she goes to bed at 9:00 PM and she wakes up at 5:00 AM, everyone, 5:00. In the morning, she goes to the gym with her mother, works out and gets ready for school. By the time she gets to school, she's had breakfast and she is completely awake and ready to go. In the afternoons, when she gets home, she spends 30 to 60 minutes doing her homework and studying. On behalf of everyone at CCLA, we want to congratulate Marley on a job well done. Congratulations.
Alicia, that is.
Congratulations, Marley. Thank you.
Great habits.
Thank you.
Five in the morning, you guys. Wow. All right, I'm in a deep sleep at 5:00. Okay, and for our Certificated of the Year, we have Stephanie Brown. Stephanie Brown is in her third year of being a fourth-grade teacher at CCLA. Stephanie is known for her dedication and always being willing to help out and take a role in leadership and with helping other teachers. Stephanie is always willing to help any teacher with anything they need, but has especially been helpful to our new teachers. She was amazing when we lost our fifth-grade teacher and provided so much support to the fifth-grade class in their transition. When asked about being a teacher, Stephanie is quick to say, "Working with students has been a great privilege of mine. I enjoy getting to know each one of them and creating an environment where each child can thrive." Stephanie is known for always being helpful and willing to help coworkers. Personally, Stephanie finds much joy with her profession of teaching fourth grade and being a part of the CCLA community. This year, she has enjoyed working as co-lead for the elementary school, participating on our bilingual advisory board committee, the principal's advisory committee, and collaborating with her colleagues and the community on the best ways to support our school and staff. When she is not in the classroom, Stephanie loves spending time with her two daughters, one in high school and one in college, her husband and their two dogs, the beach, backyard barbecues, and time in her favorite place, her garden. We are lucky to have such a strong leader and teacher at CCLA. And even though she feels blessed every day to do what she does, we are the ones that are blessed to have her amongst our staff. Congratulations, Stephanie Brown.
Congratulations, Stephanie.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Principal Gage, and congratulations again to Marley, Lynette, and Stephanie. We are going to move on to Santa Rosa Middle School. We have Principal Diaz. Welcome.
Evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to honor three amazing women, most fitting for this month. And I'm going to start with our Student of the Year, Ms. Liliana Hill. Please join us.
She's on her way over.
Thank you, Adina. It is with great pride that Santa Rosa Middle School honors Liliana Lilly Hill as our Student of the Year. Her teacher describes her as follows. Lilly is not only a great student, but a fantastic person as well. She is empathetic and kind and is always looking to help out others. If there was ever a question that needed answering or a role in class discussion, Lilly is always there to offer her opinion or an answer she has thought up. Lilly is a kind of student that is ambitious and willing to go the extra mile on even the smallest assignments. That is who Lilly is, someone willing to go above and beyond. Lilly must know a science or math formula that has eluded all of us because she somehow finds more than 24 hours in a day to do all of the things she does. She keeps her academics to top-notch performance while also being very involved in our leadership class. She is running activities for the whole school, singing in karaoke club, and also finds that wormhole to be a caring and supportive friend, and she makes it all look effortless. She doesn't appear tired at all. We are all so grateful to have Lilly in our class. Another teacher says, "Lilly holds herself to high standards and expects the same from those that she surrounds herself with. Her peers adore her and want to be around her. She does not let insecurities keep her from growing, learning, and risking. Her love of life is infectious and refreshing to be around, especially during those difficult times. Lilly always jumps at the opportunity to help struggling students, both academically and emotionally. She has been through a lot at such a young age, and her coping skills and empathy for others is a testament to the support and love of her amazing family. Two short years at Santa Rosa Middle is never enough when you get to teach a student like Lilly, who is full of life, cougar pride, and school spirit. She will truly be missed by both students and staff next year as she moves on to high school and beyond. Lilly, you are one of a kind, and we are honored to have her as our student at Santa Rosa Middle School. We are very proud of you. Congratulations."
Congratulations, Lilly.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And you can tell us a secret later on how you can get so much done. And I would honor our Classified Employee of the Year if Ms. Vasquez could join us.
She's on her way.
Thank you, Adina. Santa Rosa Middle School honors Ms. Mercedes Vasquez as our Classified Employee of the Year. Santa Rosa Middle School has the privilege of Ms. Vasquez being our attendance technician for the last two years. Santa Rosa Middle School has the privilege of Ms. Vasquez being our attendance technician for the last two years. During her time in this position, she displayed a wonderful ability to relate both to students and their families. Often, Ms. Vasquez would be the first person at SRMS to learn that a family was struggling or that a student may need extra support. This was so because Ms. Vasquez is able to put people at ease with her kindness and empathy. Ms. Vasquez is such a team player and is always willing to help with anything. She has created a strong bond with our students and staff, making our SRMS team that much stronger. She can do anything she puts her mind to and she is a strong asset to anything she is part of. Our family engagement facilitator Melanie describes her as, she is loved by the students. She has this amazing way of connecting with them and making sure to still be firm when she has to. With these wonderful attributes, Ms. Vasquez has decided to take on a new challenge. And is transitioning to a new role as our restorative specialist at CCLA. So Principal Gage, you are very lucky. We will dearly miss Ms. Vasquez, but we're excited for all those who she will be helping in her new position. Congratulations Mercedes and we will miss you dearly.
Congratulations Mercedes.
Congratulations, Ms. Vasquez.
And now, we're gonna honor our certificated employee of the year if Ms. Cruz can make it over.
She's on her way.
Thank you. It is my honor to introduce Santa Rosa Middle School's certificate employee of the year Esmeralda Cruz Arroyo. Ms. Cruz is in her second year as one of our school counselors, but she is a graduate of Cook and Elsie Allen. Ms. Cruz started during distance learning. And we were all impressed with her dedication and the compassion she demonstrated to all our students and families. She developed games and activities to engage the students during a difficult year. She also did various one visits to meet with students and their families who were also struggling. Ms. Cruz's unconditional positive regard for all our students and staff is displayed daily. She is the first to provide a kind comment, empathetic ear and welcome support to those around her, including the principal. Mr. McCamber says, Esme is not only one of the most gracious professionals I have ever worked beside. She is also a proactive advocate for our students and families. She is not adverse to putting in the extra time, effort and emotional commitment to ensure those in our school community in need. Get what they need. Another staff member says, Ms. Cruz has brought so much light and comfort into our school since the first day she started at SRMS. Even though sometimes she looks like a student. She never hesitates when help is needed and always has a smile on her face. Ms. Cruz is a rising star and we are blessed to have her at Santa Rosa Middle School. Thank you for bringing the sunshine to our school every day. Congratulations, Ms. Cruz.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Esme.
Thank you, Principal Diaz, and congratulations again to Lilly Mercedes and Esmeralda. We are going to move on with our presentations. Principal Albevera, welcome.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure being here with you all this evening. I'd like to start off by introducing our classified employee of the year, Mr. Ryan Halverson. We'll see once he comes up here.
He's on his way.
Excellent. Again, thank you for this invitation and I'd like to start off by bringing Ryan Halverson and as our classified employee of the year. Ryan Halverson is an alumni of Elsie Allen High School. And he's been our campus supervisor for about twenty years. Ryan doesn't just supervise our campus. He's a mentor, a confidant, a big brother. And literally a father at times for many of our students. Ryan has excellent rapport with our students. He understands them and he knows where they come from. Hence, he connects on a level that maybe another adult on campus might not. That relationship and connection leads to respect and caring, which is what Ryan displays on a daily basis on our campus. Ryan never loses his cool. Cool is a cucumber. He connects with our students through understanding of the culture and the conditions of where our students come from. Students look to him for support with emotional concerns and seek him out for advice. His demeanor is continuously positive and our students are often high-fiving him, fist bumping him. Calling him out by his name with a wave and not only at school, on the community as well. Ryan also supports our teachers with anything that they need from a break as they need to use the restroom to handing out some copy machine paper for the copy machine in the building. He supports administration with escorting students to the office. He supports custodial staff by helping remove graffiti on our campus. And even helps out students and staff when their cars don't start in the parking lot. Basically, a tool-time Tim on our campus as well. It goes without saying that Mr. Halverson is a team player. We are lucky to have Ryan as a valuable, caring adult on our campus who everyone knows and respects. Elsie Allen High School is proud to present Ryan Halverson as our classified employee of the year.
Congratulations, Ryan.
Congratulations, Ryan.
Congratulations.
I would like to now bring our student of the year, Naomi Vidal Visut. And as she comes on. There she is. Neo, as she's affectionately called on our campus, there she is. Has been at Elsie Allen High School since her freshman year. She is a reserved, quiet and compassionate student who has grown so much over the last four years. And is willing to help her peers when needed. A good example of her compassion occurred during her freshman year when she overheard a student stating that he needed some new shoes. And so she went out of her way to figure out the shoe size and buy him new shoes. Instead of her delivering the shoes, he asked if a staff member could do it for her because she wanted to remain anonymous. That is who Neo is. Neo stated that she was scared to attend a large school due to her personality, very reserved. During her freshman year, she had the pleasure of meeting Myra Gonzalez, our restorative response specialist. And Myra Sosa, who we call affectionately our Myra squared, our family engagement facilitator. When she wanted to join the restorative justice class. That connection with adults on campus gave her the confidence she needed to open herself up to trying to do new things. For example, being part of the Sesak Chavez Language Academy, LCL and High School. School design team that we're gonna talk about a little bit later on. Naomi's a client leader. Neo's a client leader. She leads by example. Being part of this design crew is one example of that. She feels empowered now to make a difference not only in her school community, but in all of the southwest community at large. She's more confident in being part of a team and pursuing her goals to do better in school for future Elsie Allen High School students. She wants to thank Ms. Eberly, who has been a positive adult in her life and has always told Neo not to limit herself. And that's really ironic because, and I did get permission from Neo for this. Excuse me, and I get a little emotional because again, her passion is contagious. So I got permission from Neo to say, so Neo is a specialist student. And unfortunately, at some point in time during her educational careers, there were some limitations put upon her. And those comments by Ms. Eberly are what make a big difference. And that's what stands out. That motivate her and now she's committed to prove all those people wrong. And she wanted also to just say that these are the things that are, now she feels she has no limitations. And that she has endless options in front of her. Her plans after high school is to go to Santa Rosa Junior College to become a pastry chef. When she told me that, I was ready, prepared to buy some pan dulce or some conchas because I was excited. So it is my honor to present Naomi Vidal Visut as our Elsie Allen High School Student of the Month. Congratulations.
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 And now for our certificated employee of the month, Cara Parlado.
She's on her way.
Thank you. Elsie Allen High School's certificate employee of the month is Cara Parlado. Cara came to us three years ago and in that short time, she has garnered the respect from her students and her colleagues. Along with being an ag teacher, here we go, long list. FFA advisor, CTE department chair. She's on our bell schedule committee, graduate profile committee, new school model work with the CTE Foundation. And she's also part of the Elsie Allen Sesak Chavez Design Crew as well. All important committees that drive our mission and vision of supporting all of our students to be able to be successful and have an equitable educational experience. Cara is always leading her students to build culture on our site. During Thanksgiving, the FFA students put on a lunch for staff and students. Last month, she organized the FFA students to hand out goodie bags for staff that included hot chocolate, tea. Bubble wrap, you know, for that stress relief, Hershey's chocolates and a lottery ticket. She also oversees all of the different field trips for our ag students. As they go show their leadership skills around the state and also show their animals. There are some words, here are some words that her students have used to describe her. She's helpful, supports us, encourages, pushes us to work hard. She is fun, bright and cheerful. She's one of my favorite teachers at Elsie Allen High School. She gets to know us and she builds relationships with all of us. She is a mentor and someone that I look up to. I spend so much time with her that I don't look at her like a teacher, but more like a friend. Which is one of the highest compliments a student can give to a teacher, that's for sure. And so it is with that, that it gives us great pleasure to present Elsie Allen High School certificated employee of the month to Cara, Ms. Cara Parlado. Congratulations, Cara.
Congratulations. High praise.
Alright, well, thank you, Principal Albevera, and congratulations to Neo, Ryan and Cara. And congratulations again to all of our students and staff. You're all amazing. Moving on to agenda item C8, school site, parent organization updates. Joining us this evening for school site reports, we have representatives from CCLA. And Elsie Allen joining us.
So our first parent report will be from CCLA and our parent is Donna Prack.
Welcome, Donna. There you are, welcome Donna.
Hi.
Ready for you.
Thanks. Did you realize, like, this is my eighth year speaking to you? I was figuring it out. So the first year, I mean, actually, I don't think none of you have been on the board for all eight years, but anyway, I was realizing that today. So thank you for having me. Sesak Chavez Language Academy is in its ninth year and this is my eighth year speaking to you. With our foundation and our large parent involvement. This past year, we held our annual beautification day. We renovated the office, library and cleaned out multiple storage rooms and closets. We also held a color run fundraiser. At the beginning of the school year, we raised over twenty-five thousand dollars between our families and sponsors. And I would like to remind you, we are a Title I school. We have dedicated parents who come during lunchtime to help with supervision. We are so thankful for our active parent community who are always willing to help, especially with the district staffing shortage. Each holiday, we have been able to provide meals and treats for our staff. In order to show them just a little token of our appreciation. Our foundation is also hosting upcoming events and next week, we're gonna have our first taco and bingo night of the year and we are planning a huge Sesak Chavez Day celebration. On April 1st from one to five, we are cordially inviting you to attend. It is incredibly important to our school community that we continue to honor our namesake. Last summer, we hired a new administration who was new to dual immersion. CCLA became a K through eighth grade program. However, with CCLA and Cook unable to complete their merge, there was a lot of unfinished business that was never resolved. The dual immersion track in our middle school fell flat. There is no dual immersion program. Our dual immersion program. Our dual immersion program. Our dual immersion curriculum was purchased a couple of months ago, but it's still sitting a box in the library because no one's been able to be trained. There are no best practices being used. There were no grade level Spanish books or textbooks for our middle school dual immersion students. How are we supposed to have a dual immersion track to high school when we don't have anything in place at our middle school level? The last two years, we've not had an accredited Spanish teacher. This year, we had no Spanish teacher. We had a fantastic long-term substitute and I'm still bitter that we could not have hired her on. We recently hired a student teacher, but there are still so many positions left unfilled. I had so much optimism for the school year. I knew that becoming one school would be difficult. Emotions would be high for many. The concept of a merge was a little misleading from the start because CCLA is a school of choice. We started this school with sixty children and we created this beautiful reputation. Where parents throughout Sonoma County dream of sending their kids to our school. We have enough kids waitlisted for three kindergarten classes. Our name is more than a name. Sesak Chavez Language Academy is about equity and social justice. Parents don't send their children here because it's the school that's in their boundaries. Parents choose to send their children to CCLA because they believe in raising bilingual, bilingual and bicultural type children. I choose to send my kids to CCLA because I want my kids to attend a diverse school. I want my kids to go to a school where strangers become a family. Here, they see how people will rally around one another when one of us is hurting. This year, we had a teacher who needed help taking her son to preschool. She reached out to our parents group on Facebook. A new kinder parent offered and has been taking her son to preschool every day. We lost a parent to COVID this year and we created a GoFundMe account just as we did for undocumented families when COVID first started. And pushed many of our undocumented families further into poverty. This last week, one of our middle school teachers was helping a student find transportation to and from school until spring break while her mother recovered from surgery. If she couldn't find reliable transportation, then she would miss two weeks of school. Parents stepped in to help. These parents didn't even know these individuals, but these are the examples of what makes our school special. This year has been difficult. Many of the challenges we have experienced with the lack of consistency, lack of communication. Not having clear expectations for behavior, all that could have been prevented. Communication is so important. I cannot emphasize that enough. We need consistent expectations for all of our students. New families entering kindergarten receive a parent-student handbook that must be signed in return. The handbook has clear guidelines and expectations for students and parents to participate in our dual immersion program. These handbooks were never distributed to middle school because our administration did not want to impose too much change too soon. There are also mandatory parent meetings that new kinder families have to attend in order to be enrolled in our school. This way, there are no misconceptions about the behavior and academic expectations that CCLA has. We also value our common dress code that our TK through sixth grade families adhere to. Our common dress code helps everyone feel equal to one another and we hope to have this enforced at the middle school level. If we are going to be one school, then we need to implement the same standards and expectations that we have for our new families. This includes how we treat each other, the words we use and the respect we show each other. This is crucial if we want to have a pathway to Elsie Allen. Because where we stand now, I see our elementary school crumbling. And I don't want that to happen because of the challenges we have faced this year. These challenges cannot be repeated. I want my administration to be successful. I want our school to be successful. Our administration has to be coached and trained in dual immersion research theories and best practices. Because I believe in her. I want her to be successful. Unfortunately, our bilingual advisory board does not have anyone on the committee with dual immersion experience. I am the closest thing to being an expert, that's in dual immersion, because that's because I have the most years at CCLA. And that's as a parent. We cannot lose sight of who we are. We are a dual immersion language academy. We are a We cannot lose sight of who we are. We are a dual immersion language academy. We are a school of choice that celebrates diversity, multiculturalism, and social justice. Those values influence who we are, what kind of events we have, who we hire, and who we attract. I wish for the success of the pathway from CCLA to LC Allen, but it can't happen this year or next year. It's not ready. CCLA isn't ready for that jump. Allow us to focus on creating a successful TK through 8th grade program. I was excited last year when the talk for a true TK through 12th grade was discussed at last year's board meeting. I called in with excitement, and I also encourage you to offer French courses for our middle school and high school program. I wanted to become a true language academy that would draw students from, who are passionate about culture and travel, and one that celebrates the language students speak in their homes and in their home countries. It saddened me that the French Charter School didn't even consider having a pathway to our, at our school. Our two language programs could offer a wonderful opportunity to the southwest part of town and would help to desegregate our schools. Trust me when I say it's not about location. To offer a tri lingual program would be a great asset to our community. When CCLA was searching for a permanent home, we chose the part of town where we thought we could do the most good. That is why we chose to relocate to Lawrence Cook Middle Schools campus. CCLA saw Cook as a school that had so much potential. We have resources and parent involvement that has made a positive impact at the site. I hope you can encourage the French school to do the same because the last thing we need is more segregation and inequity in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. There are a lot of issues and concerns for us to address here, so thank you for bringing them all to our attention. We are going to move on to LC Allen High School. Site Representative Jamie Padilla.
Jamie's on their way over.
Thank you. Welcome, Jamie.
Hi, thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the invitation to be here to represent LC Allen tonight. Students and families are excited to be back in person. Students and staff are working hard to make connections and create culture on the LC Allen campus. I wanted to provide you a few highlights. Intramural sports, the winners play against a staff team. Sorry. Trunk or treat event for the neighborhood. Our family attended, and it was so much fun being back on campus and getting to interact with children and staff. We have had movie nights, rallies, and Spirit Week, celebrating our student achievements with a pizza party. 2222 Surprise Ice Cream Social College and Career Week with classroom speakers and school time lunchwide event in the quad. Homecoming in the quad. Bringing back in-person concerts, drama productions. She Kills Monsters is coming, April 7th through the 10th. We hope we see you there. My son has got a part in the play, and we're super excited to see it. Also, dance shows are coming. Fielding a baseball team for the first time in four years with many student athletes that have never played before. Join us for our first game on 3:10 at 3:30. We also just celebrated the recent success of our wrestling team. They won a conference title. We appreciate the efforts of the LC Allen coaches in providing opportunities for all students to participate in athletics. Next, the Site Council has worked this year to evaluate and support the considerable number of initiatives in process to improve academic excellence and work to support our various subgroups and plan for an expansion of what LC Allen is meeting the needs of students, parents, and the community. We have been happy to start seeing data from both the new ARI system and the MAP Assessment System, which will help us evaluate and fine tune the SIPSA strategies to support student academic successes. We do appreciate having additional funding sources that are allowing us to deal with the significant needs for classroom materials and supplies. We are able to provide classroom book sets and teacher professional development without having, having to cut out fun stuff like field trips and other activities. We continue to support programs such as AVID with LCAP dollars, including adding a program coordinator this year. This is allowing us to work toward having a complete AVID program on the LC Allen campus. We hope the district will work with us to develop a paid AVID tutor position on campus, which is necessary component to have a comprehensive AVID program. The Site Council is looking forward to an expansion of elective offerings on our campus as well for the 2022-23 school year and revitalizing our visual and performing arts program with the amazing complement of new teachers and new talents. We look forward to introducing a significant family engagement program in 2023 with a focus on using our campus as a way to connect with parents and families. LC Allen High School is an amazing high school, and I am a proud, I am proud to have had a daughter graduate in 2020 and to now have my son as a ninth grader there. I look forward to continuing to tell LC Allen's story to the greater community. Thanks for having me.
Thank you so much, Jamie. All right, we are going to pause briefly for an interpreter switch.
Thank you, President Sheffield. Mariel Bell, if you're present, could you please raise your hand?
She's in with the panelists. She's listed as Mariel Bell CB.
I apologize. Give me some time, please.
We are all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. We are moving on to Agenda Item C9, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Beth, are we ready?
We are. President Sheffield, are you, do you have a time for the public comment?
We were going to do two minutes tonight. We have a lot of participants on the tuning in, so we want to make sure that we are mindful of the time, particularly of students, and as always, if we could have students go first.
Okay, great. So I'm going to lower all hands right now and ask that if there are any students here who would like to public, make comment on a non-agenda item, something that is not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand at this time. This is for students first. And a non-agenda item means something that's not coming up later in the meeting. So for example, if you wanted to comment on masks in schools, that's coming up later in the meeting, you would wait until we get to that item. And now we will open it to anyone in the public who would like to comment on a non-agenda item. Please raise your hand. And our first comment is Mike Vonderporten.
Good evening. I'll be quick. I've got an observation, a request, which is now a note, and an accolade. First of all, let's take a look at the San Francisco recall. I think there were really three reasons behind that recall. One was renaming. The second was academics, and the third was bond oversight. The renaming was insensitive. It was, really had bad timing. Academics, the district really dishonored academics. We don't, they were not honoring academics the way they honor athletics. We have varsity sports. In San Francisco, varsity academics is Lowell High School. And Lowell High School was really the door for so many families to move up in San Francisco. They got rid of that, and they had no bond oversight committee. So fortunately, we've not had that. We've not gone through the divisive recall here, but I think we face kind of those same issues. And the key issue we're going to be looking at in the fall is how many sections of Math 1 are going to be offered at the middle schools. My request, which now is a note, is I appreciate being pointed to the bond oversight committee. We've not yet held a meeting. I just learned we are going to actually hold one this month, so we're kind of delinquent on that. We will see about adding some more members and filling that in. And the accolade goes to your naming of the track at Santa Rosa High School. And sometimes you have to see others' actions to really know how well you handled it. We note here that there was apparently no request by the honoree for the honor and that the honor was applied after the man left service. There was a waiting period. Those are all good processes. And you also saved the name Ernie Nevers. We don't need to lose our heritage to add another piece of heritage, and I think you handled it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, public comment on a non-agenda item, two-minute time limit, is Natalie Hoyt.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm just here, I spoke about this at last meeting, so I'll probably just sound like a broken record, but I'm here tonight to speak about some safety concerns that we're having on our campus. I'm a parent at CCLA, and our children are just not being adequately supervised. Fights are breaking out between middle school students regularly. We don't have enough supervision staff-wise to really adequately supervise the younger students near the bathroom area. We're seeing a lot of vandalism. Students are being bullied for their sexual orientation. We have other students who are having to spend their break and lunch period in the office because they're repeatedly being bullied. I think the solution to this is pretty clear. They need more supervision. We currently have, and we have had all year, six open positions for yard duty and super campus supervisor type jobs. That's six unfilled positions the entire school year. You're offering $16 an hour for that job. I drove past McDonald's today and saw their giant banner saying that they're starting at $16 an hour. So you have to really stop and think about $16 an hour is really not a livable wage in Sonoma County. $16 an hour is maybe what you would be making if you're living at your parents' house as a teenager. So I'm not sure how you're going to fill those jobs at $16 an hour, but our campuses are not safe as they stand. So if we're, your slogan is that you put students first. I don't know how you're putting students first if you're not supervising them adequately during breaks and recess and lunchtime, so I don't know what the plan is for next year, but unless you offer more patients, we'll also just continue to sit vacant next year as well. So I hope you consider doing something about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, public comment on a non-agenda item is Kristen Colgrove.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Colgrove. I'm the Office Manager at Hidden Valley Elementary School and a member of CSCA 75. At the beginning of every school year, the classified and certificated staff of Santa Rosa City Schools are given the task of completing mandated reporter training as well as several other trainings. We receive emails in July with the expectation of having these trainings completed by September. This year, the certificated staff negotiated four hours of extra pay to complete the trainings. This pay was extended to all certificated staff regardless of whether they did the trainings on time or after the deadline. The classified union feels we should have been extended the same opportunity and therefore notified the district of this request at the latter part of 2021. As of today, I'm told there has still been no response to this request. Both certificated and classified staff have workdays prior to students showing up for the first day of school. This affords plenty of time for these trainings to be completed. I understand that many would prefer to concentrate on getting their classrooms ready, getting their office organized, constant, or registering new students, but as a requirement of employment, these trainings shouldn't be completed on time. For the certificated staff to negotiate and be granted extra compensation to do these trainings is admirable, but is unfair and inequitable to not automatically extend this to your classified employees. Certificated employees who met the deadline were still compensated for the extra time regardless of whether they completed the trainings or when they completed the trainings. It's also worth mentioning that substitutes must complete the mandated reporter training prior to being eligible to sub with no exceptions granted. There is no compensation whatsoever for them to complete this, but the requirement is there nonetheless. The lack of equity between the certificated employees and the classified employees is glaring at times, and this is just one of those situations. If my numbers are correct, a teacher made an extra $210 to complete these trainings that are required to retain employment in the district, but the same opportunity was not automatically extended to the classified employee who would make far less than this based on their hourly wage. I'm curious as to why the district has not responded to our request and more importantly, why we even have to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment on a non-agenda item is Lori Turner.
Hi, thank you. I hope there's no feedback. Can you hear okay?
There is some feedback.
Okay, let me fix that. Do you want to go to another caller and come back? I'm having a problem with that.
Sure, we'll do that. Thank you. Next is Shelby Pryor.
Good evening, board. I usually call you guys for the same reason. Week after week, month after month, so far. I think it's pretty blaring apparent that the health officials and the people who are guiding us in the direction of economic interest to their own wallets continue to force mandates and continue to push for vaccinations that obviously have been in our face, not effective, and in a test phase, making everybody have to be susceptible to being part of a scientific experiment. As far as I can understand, we just had a woman call talking about people being bullied for their sexual orientation, and then I have individuals in the community bullying people for their choice not to be vaccinated. I can't see how you can stand for one group and then not help another. If you're willing to take the least from one, they're willing to take the rest, the most from all of us. It's embarrassing to me that you guys throw around the words equity and equality and have no idea what that definition even remotely means. I know that you guys are trying to do the best that you can, and I don't know your economic interests, but I'm gonna start digging into them. As I continue to go ahead and do more research on the people who represent the parents and the students, this will be an obvious understand, this will be an obvious communication for me to see your transparency. Now, I'm not pointing fingers at everybody on this board, but some of you know who I'm talking to. So let's look at the economic interest. Let's start taking into the accountability that you believe in not bullying people, and let's start doing the right thing. I really would greatly appreciate that, so I can put my energy somewhere else.
Thank you. Next is Deanna Oliveras.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I always have to decide on public comment on non-agenda items, which, which line item I'm going to complain about, right? Because you guys all know me, and you know that I have a lot to say. Today, tonight pulled at my heartstrings because the teacher, Donna, that spoke, I, I'm just very disheartened because I feel like it's been a year or two now, and I really am like praying that this board comes around because at first, I thought you really just didn't see most of my point of views because maybe you categorized me as a right-wing nut job. But now, these moderate, politically moderate to liberal even, teachers and community members, like, we are begging you guys to listen. We, I mean, you guys are giving awards to these amazing teachers in our school district, and they're using their platform. This should be a positive experience for them, but they're using their platform to be heard because they normally can't be heard by you guys. And they're, they're, they're like begging. They're begging, you guys. I mean, we're gonna lose the few, I mean, maybe not few amazing teachers. We have a huge district, but the amazing teachers and the amazing people on campus that we have, we can't lose them. We need them. And you're not listening. It's not about your political agenda or what you feel personally. Do what's best for your community. Do what your community wants. You're voted, you're voted in. Tax dollars, you know, we're all taxpayers. And what the first thing I was going to talk about is bring our, our student resource officers back. There's gun threats. There's attempted kidnappings. It's not any money out of the district's pocket. It's not about George Floyd. It's about keeping our students safe. Do what's right in your heart.
Thank you. Next, we'll go back to Lori Turner and see how the audio is going. Lori, are you there?
Hi, yes, thank you so much. I just want to first thank you all. I know your meetings are long. I know you have a lot to cover, and you're trying to listen to a practical chaos in the community of us being able to speak for what we're calling about. So thank you for that. And I know that you have a lot to cover tonight later about masks, but I just wanted to touch on something that's somewhat related, but I don't think it's being covered. And what I want to know is if you guys are considering. And what I want to know is if you guys are considering, not only the students and the employees with masks, but have you considered what your duty as an employer and looking out for the policies all around, that you may need to have a release of liability for potential harms, including any kind of long-term health consequences that anyone may incur as a result of your decision tonight, and the decisions you've already made. And I know that you're kind of in a pickle, but I went to a high school in Santa Rosa. I have children in school now. I've been around the community a long time. I've worked with people in many different areas in the schools, and I have hit my limit, and I know a lot of people who also have. We cannot continue this, and I think you guys know what I mean, but you, generally you cannot contribute to mandating anything that's going to harm anyone or potentially could. It's putting the schools in a liability. There are people finding out about how they can file the UCP, the complaints. There's gonna be a lot of claims on the schools. I don't want to see them shut down over this. And so I really urge everybody to go to the strongly recommended everything. I'm talking about whether you're boosted, you're getting tested, not to mention the tests are never, the inventor of the tests said they were never intended for diagnosis. We cannot be using those. They're emergency use authorized devices. All of these have to be done with informed consent. So the bottom line is whatever policy you decide to take, I would encourage you to look up the FDA's. And I've been calling about this, and this really frustrates me. I've called all the schools about this. I've even written, I've written to all of you about this. Nobody has responded to me. Everybody on.
Ms. Turner, you have reached your time limit. Thank you for your comment. Next is Gabby Pay.
Hello, I'm calling in tonight. Gabby Porter, good evening, board members, superintendent, community members listening tonight. I just want to speak on three things. So the first one is that the CDC quietly lowered the speech standards for children from age two to five. So that means that whatever kids used to be able to do at two, now it's the standard's at two and a half. Whatever they could do at two and a half is now three. Whatever they used to be able to do at three is now three and a half. So that's kind of, I know people have been saying like, there's no evidence that masks are harming children or that the lockdowns harm children. That seems pretty concrete to me. The other thing I want to talk about, the second thing, is the mental health of the county and how it's affecting our students and all of the residents. If you go to the county website, you can see that in 2009, there were 10 suicides. And this year, there were 14 that was reported. So that's an uptick of four. That's pretty significant. And that's not, you know, that's not even saying the suicide attempts. I know there was a student at one of the high schools in Cotteri-Roner Park that just was sent to the emergency room. The third thing I'd like to discuss are the bills that are being discussed at the Senate. You know, pay attention to these AB 2098, disciplines doctors who speak out against the COVID-19 narrative. I was just listening today about long COVID, and doctors didn't believe it a year ago, and now they're saying that it is a thing. So that really scares me, silencing doctors, you know, from figuring out new things instead of having healthy debates and healthy discussions. So I hope you guys just consider that. You can go to perkgroup.com to fight these. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ashley Bell.
Good evening. My name's Ashley Bell, and I'm a teacher at Santa Rosa High School. I came here tonight not to discuss COVID, but to discuss something else, something near and dear to my heart, student success. Oftentimes, we talk about student success, we link it to graduation rates and grades, so tonight I'm gonna focus on that. My greatest concern is that many of our students are not in a position at our secondary sites to graduate on time or to graduate really at all. The implementation of A through G paired with a pandemic has been disastrous for our students. We are seeing failure rates much higher than what we did three years ago. As a teacher and as a person who has deep and personal relationships with my students, this really deeply concerns me. How can I convince my students to engage with me and with the material or to invest in high school when they are juniors seeking Math 1 for the third time? I'm often told that relationships will encourage my students to care, and I can tell you that just the sheer magnificence of my personality is not enough to convince my students to engage with me or to invest in their own education. Trust me, I've tried it. You'll find me jumping on top of tables, walking down the catwalk, getting to know them personally. You'll see me doing the fight song six times on Fridays at Santa Rosa High, and it just isn't enough. How do I convince my students to be successful when it feels like the system is rigged against them? And it's not just impacting our students, it's impacting our teachers as well. When you look across the nation, it's not a secret that there's a teacher shortage and that teachers everywhere are leaving the profession in droves. I've seen it reported as high as 30% of teachers that are thinking about leaving their profession, and what are we doing? We've raised graduation requirements, we've increased class rigor, and we have provided absolutely no support to the people doing the work. We have no off-ramp at Santa Rosa City Schools for students who are unable to meet the requirements of an A through G outside of an emergency diploma that let them graduate with 130 credits instead of 220. And this isn't going to work in the long term. Our students have been placed in a very, very specific box with very, very specific things they have to accomplish in order to get that high school diploma that go well above and beyond with the state mandates they need. The district has been unable to provide the resources that teachers need in the form of smaller class sizes or more classroom aids. When we ask for more people or we ask for more money to be spent, we are told, we just can't do that. Can't you just think outside the box? Thinking outside the box means can't you just work a little bit harder? And we can't. We.
Ms. Bell, I'm sorry, but you've reached your time limit. Next is Carter Slay.
Um, I would, I would just like to say that you guys are doing a great job. Don't listen to the haters. And I think we should actually do more for COVID and you guys. Everyone out there that is on here, gonna, probably gonna give you guys a big night. So I just want to give you guys the kind of, the people, the kids at school, we, 99% of us were behind you guys and these parents, they're something else. Have a good night.
Thank you. President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
All right. Well, thank you all who spoke with your issues and concerns. We are moving on to our D items reports. We will start with D1, California School Employee Association, CSEA report. Do we have President Lehman or representative from CSA we can bring over?
Yes, they are on their way over.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
You want my video? There we go. Okay. Good evening. I do have a report. Good evening, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trinell, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member, and the Community. I want to thank our members who came tonight and spoke up, or those members that came and just listened. It is CSEA member participation in these meetings that will improve the lives of our members, the students, and our community. That's our mission statement. However, that alone is not enough. It is the communication and cooperation between this board, the district, SRTA, and CSEA, all working together that will improve our lives. Our members feel that the mandated reporter training compensation that SRTA received and classified employees did not is an example of unequal treatment between our bargaining units this school year. There are over 180 classified job openings. This is due to not having a living wage salary schedule. Santa Rosa City School Priority Number Three in the strategic plan states that SRCS is committed to fairly compensating staff. Let's work together to do this, creating an atmosphere that will nurture staff, students, and families. Thank you.
Thank you, President Lehman. Agenda item D2, Santa Rosa Teachers Association Report, SRTA Report. Do we have President Howell joining us?
Yes, she's on her way over.
Thank you, Adina.
Good evening, everyone. President Sheffield, Superintendent Trinell, and members of the board. I'm Catherine Howell, President of SRTA. I know that we're gearing up for it, and the issue of masking and the mandate is certainly weighing heavy on my mind this evening. The members of SRTA have had a couple of weeks to talk about it, discuss sort of upcoming changes, impending changes. We've had opportunity to respond to two different surveys, one put out by SRTA and one put out by Santa Rosa City Schools. And, you know, here we are, ready to negotiate. We actually have negotiations scheduled for our COVID safety MOU tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, and we are eagerly awaiting the, the board and what you decide tonight to help guide us in our negotiations. And with that, I want to say thank you to every one of you, both board members and Superintendent Trinell, for honoring the process and honoring every single member of SRTA as we work through these COVID safety rules together without any party being asked to just capitulate or agree, but together we have a conversation to decide what's best and safe for our families, for our teachers, right? So that being said, SRTA is ready to negotiate tomorrow, following board policy, but we are prepared to negotiate to follow the state guidelines, which is masks are strongly recommended. Our members haven't spoken out to me or in either survey strongly significantly to ask to keep the masks. And so our negotiating team is ready to strongly consider the guideline of strongly recommended. We do have a few things to ask or a few points of focus. I would ask, please, that every one of us consciously use the language of the guideline, which is strongly recommended, and not the word optional. We know that words are important, and what we hope as teachers is that our students stop and think about what removing their mask means to them, how it might impact someone around them before they make that decision for themselves to remove their masks, and just put some thought into it. Secondly, we're asking that maybe you would consider extending the masking mandate for our younger students to give them a little more transition time and hopefully more time to get vaccinated, because we know that our vaccination rates are very low, under 50% for many of our youngest students. And then finally, we would love to have the board recommend to district staff to allow for permissive leaves for our teachers who are vulnerable and are worried about their own health, worried about the health of their small children who are unable to be vaccinated, worried about family members who are also vulnerable, and perhaps give them the ability to move temporarily out of the classroom as this masking mandates change. So thank you for your time and thank you for everything that you are doing for Santa Rosa City Schools.
Thank you, President Howell. We are moving on to D3, our superintendent report. Superintendent Trinell.
Good evening. Thank you, President Sheffield, members of the board, staff, and community. Today marks day 129 of school for elementary and day 128 for secondary. I want to just pause and take a moment here to share that is recognized, that there's a lot going on in our world right now and in our community. People are hurting, there's fear, there's frustration, and others are also trying to find hope and relief. I want everyone to know that we are listening and that we recognize that things feel really heavy right now. We have resources available to our students and our staff who need support and may be struggling. And of course, we continue to listen as we take feedback tonight, and that will be ongoing. Our community also has a variety of resources available, and we would be happy to share those with everyone just so that you know what is available to you and maybe to share with a friend or a neighbor. Please know that we are doing everything we can to keep students and staff safe and schools open. Another note that I want to make is that there are students who will be presenting tonight from Elsie Allen High School and CCLA, and we have other students in our audience tonight as well. This may be the first time that they are attending a school board meeting and are wondering how we conduct our business. I'm excited for them to be here tonight and what they can learn from us in this process. Some reminders, daylight savings time starts this Sunday, March 13th, so please adjust your clocks accordingly. Spring break is March 18th through March 25th. And then tonight on item I4, we have the school site reports for Elsie Allen High School, CCLA, and Santa Rosa Middle School. I look forward to our evening tonight, and with that, I hand it back to you, President Sheffield.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. E4, agenda item D4, Board President Report. I just will be brief. On Monday of this week, I had a county committee on school district organization meeting. On the agenda was Petaluma City Schools trustee area transition to by trustee areas. We did vote to approve the map submitted by Petaluma City Schools, so we're seeing other districts throughout Sonoma County make the transition to, to by trustee areas. And that's my report. I'll move on to D5, Board Member Reports. Do we have Board Member Reports? I see trustee Fong's hand raised.
I would like to appreciate and thank Elsie Allen High School, their leadership, and I would also like to thank and appreciate district leadership. Elsie Allen had their WASC this past week, and they did so well. I was so proud of that school. They have done so much since the last WASC review, and that, that the district was there to support them was phenomenal. The WASC team was so impressed that the entire district team came to sit in on it. I think it was almost an hour-long interview. So thank you for allowing me to be there. Very proud of the school and the work that is happening. I'm looking forward to hearing tonight the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Fong. Director Beard.
Hi. So I've been talking to a lot of students just with spring break coming up, prom coming up, all these things, all these things with the mask mandates potentially lifting. And I just want to say, a lot of the students are again fully backing the board. We realize that it's a really hard decisions that are being made. And a lot of the people that I've talked to are just looking forward to the positive things regardless of the decisions that are made. Obviously, we all have preferences on whether we want masks or not, all these policies that are being taken away, put into place. I'm just gonna say, all of the seniors are very excited for college admissions, our spring break coming up, prom and graduation, and we're doing our best to look at the positives, and we just want to spread that positivity throughout our board.
Thank you, Director Beard. I'm with you. I'm with your fellow students. I am looking for the positives of COVID. Not, not positive COVID, but the positives. We will move on. Other board members? Seeing none, moving on to item D6, CSBA Report. Trustee Flores, you have a report for us.
Yes, and I'll do my best to make it succinct. So CSBA is hosting its annual Legislative Week, March 15th through the 17th. I'll be part of it. The Legislative Week is a week where CSBA, along with school board members from the state, go and lobby on behalf of our school districts. I have a meeting scheduled with Jim Wood on March 16th. We're also waiting to hear from Mike McGuire. And some of the topics that we're going to be lobbying for is obviously more funding for schools. I mean, that's always one of the top priorities regardless of where you are. COVID-19 relief and, and our CS, and a couple of CSBA-sponsored bills like AB 2585 and SB 1061. They're both about election reform. But I'm looking forward to, to represent Santa Rosa City Schools at the EST level to make sure that, you know, the state prioritizes school funding, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Flores. Moving on to our E items, our discussion action items. We'll start with E1, an action item, public board meeting via teleconference per AB 360. Public board meeting via teleconference per AB three sixty-one. We all know this routine. I'm going to turn it over to you, Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you so much, um, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, the staff and community who's here tonight. I have a brief presentation that is a gathering of data. Um, as we have been surveying um since last week, uh, our parents and our staff. Around their um understanding of attendance. At board meetings prior to COVID and then during COVID in virtual and some of the things that they hope to see in the future. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with the presentation and then I will stop sharing and discuss a couple of other items. Um, but as we know right now. As it stands, we have the ability to continue to be virtual and by doing so. And in order to continue to do so, the board must take action every thirty days in order to be able to continue being virtual. Through our survey data tonight, you will see responses and over overall numbers and overage, uh, excuse me, percentages. Of parents and staff. So, starting with our parent responses, we had two thousand three hundred and seven total responses from our parents. You can see the breakdown in the numbers uh of those surveyed by school. This is the number of staff responses, which is approximately six hundred and seventy-eight. And the numbers that represent um each school there or district office as a general. I will now go through the questions that were asked within the survey. The first one being, did you attend an in-person SRCS board meeting before the pandemic? Uh, you can see that for parents, the um, the higher number was no. And for staff, it's close to fifty fifty. Um, as many of our staff are required to be at meetings depending on presentations and such. This was an optional question. If you attended an in-person meeting, please select one of the following. Did you do it one time, more than one time or every meeting? And you can see the breakdown here. It, you can see that more of our parents, um, in this question said that they at least attended one time. And more of our staff said that they attended more than one time. The questions now shift to the virtual option for the board meetings. Um, our parents said, uh, nine hundred and six of them said, yes, they have attended a virtual um board meeting. And fourteen, one thousand four hundred and one said no, and more of our staff um said yes versus, versus no. For the optional, the breakdown, um, you can see that we had. Uh, at least we had more parents who at least attended once for a virtual board meeting. Uh, as well as staff who attended more than one. And then we asked which would they prefer, virtual, in-person or hybrid? And you can see that there's a resounding support for the hybrid model. So for the board's consideration tonight is to continue virtual board meetings. Uh, and you would take action on that tonight in order to do so. To move to in-person board meetings or move to hybrid board meetings. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. The other thing that I want to share tonight is checking in with the city of Santa Rosa. They have not adjusted their uh COVID protocols for the chambers. And I was told that I will receive more information soon, but they've not made it a definitive yet. So, if we were to move back to the chambers. Um, at a future board meeting, right now as it stands, the uh COVID protocols remain no more than seventeen. Um, audience members, um, the line for public comment would be outside with one person at a time at the podium. I know that they have some concessions for staff to be in a separate room. Uh, as well, so that there's more of that allowance for audience members who are not staff. And with that, I hand it back to you, um, Board President Sheffield.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. Um, very much appreciate the work that you and uh district office staff have done. In very quickly putting together this survey and getting it out to families and staff. Um, of course, the survey returns don't necessarily represent a truly accurate picture of the sentiment of our school community. But it does give us a glimpse of where we might be standing. Um, I remind the board that this is an action item. So at this time, are there questions from the board? I do see trustee McCormick's hand raised.
Yes, um, I was wondering, um, Superintendent Trinell, could you just give us a brief synopsis on what a hybrid? Uh, board meeting model would entail? What would that look like? Like the board is together somewhere in person? And then it's being broadcasted and that we could take um public comment in person, but also virtually? Or is it a situation where board members can be in person, but might not have to be? Like, what does hybrid mean? Thank you for the question. I think you covered um a lot of it, but I'll reiterate. So, a hybrid model means that the board is in person. Uh, however, if a board member um is going to be outside of the region. Um, then that board member would have to post a public notice wherever they are. To be able to invite the public into the space where they are in order to participate in the board meeting. That notice would have to be publicly posted, um, wherever that is. Um, the rest of the board would be in person. And then for the hybrid part for the audience, uh, we would have a number of people based on the space allowance. Uh, that we would be able to have in person in the room with the board. And then we would also have the ability to um have video equipment. So that we could maintain people participating virtually. Um, we would take time for public comment for people at the podium in person. As well as those who are virtual, just the way that we are doing now. Um, the, that is what it would look like. Okay, and then my last question is, do we have, if we are not at city hall? Do we have the capability and the staff and the resources for the cameras and the broadcasting and the audio and all of that? We do have the equipment. Uh, we do not have a hired staff just to do and set up board meetings. So we would be at this time, um, taking staff who currently maybe be doing other work. To make sure that this is set up. I think I um shared in a prior meeting that it would be about uh one and a half hours to two hours for setup. Uh, before the meeting and then we would have about that much time for cleanup. As most uh likely, if we are going to host something in district. The space we are using will be used by students the very next day. So we will have to get everything broken down and cleaned, which means custodians and depending on the. Length of time of our meeting could be doing that at, you know, eleven o'clock at night, um, or so forth, depending on when we end the meeting. Okay, thank you.
All right, we have trustee Fong's hand raised.
Thank you, President Sheffield. I have two questions. If we were to use the district boardroom, would there be any room for any audience?
So, um, taking a look at the space in there, uh, there would be minimal seating, I would say maybe seven seats. Um, and depending on the presentation, uh, that would be happening. We would have to make sure that there was at least one table for those who would be presenting and space for a podium for public comment. Um, one of the options that we are originally thinking is that we could have a spill-over room. In a, one of our nearby conference rooms, those individuals we'd be, would be patched in virtually. And could walk over to speak publicly at the podium. But unless there is an open seat in the room, would have to return to the remote uh room, if you will.
My quarters in there. Okay, second question, last question is. If we were to finally get to the uh city council chambers under their current parameters. Um, would it be the same group broadcast where, you know, we used to do YouTube? And you see it, you see us all just on, from a far distance, you see everybody at the podium versus, you know, the Zoom Hollywood Square thing?
Yes, it would be that fishbowl look.
Okay, thank you. Those were the questions.
Thank you, trustee Fong. Trustee De La Cruz.
Uh, echoing thanks, Superintendent, for the quick and thorough survey. Um, I have a question. I understand the number of staff hours. Do we have uh potential costs? For that time and how many staff would it take?
I don't have that number. Um, I, I'm going to ask Mr. Edson. When we uh did the mock setup um at one of our high schools. Do you recall how many people were there to assist with that setup?
Oh, we have, we had vendors with us as well. Uh, so it would probably be two to three staff members plus custodial uh at the end of the night.
And then would there be additional costs for overtime for custodial staff, given the late hour of our close down?
Yes.
And um, Superintendent, you mentioned staff who would be doing similar work in other situations that might be kind of repurposed for this. For this purpose, for setting up board meetings in a hybrid function. Um, what, what are they currently doing now?
So, for example, if we were at a school site, the setup for the room would have to happen before five PM. And depending on the um schedule of a custodian. Um, they might have to stop doing whatever their regular schedule is. In order to make sure that the room, wherever that is, is set up. Um, if there are people on site who are assisting us with the setup of equipment. Um, and they work till five, they might have to, and this could include some district office staff. They might have to step away from that regular work in order to set up the equipment and make sure everything is ready to go.
Are any of the staff who would be working to set up this space also supporting distance learning? Or any of the technological supports around learning in particular for kids?
I think it depends on who it is. Um, people that I have in mind wouldn't be classroom teachers and so probably not. It would be other individuals.
And, and just to be clear, my question doesn't necessarily um accept the conclusion. That somebody who does the important work of taking care of our facilities is not furthering the education of our children. Um, but I just wanted to understand, you know, the, the classifications of the folks who would be helping to set up in a hybrid setting. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, trustee De La Cruz. Uh, trustee Flores.
Uh, thank you, President Fong, um, President, sorry, Sheffield. Uh, so uh. Do we have any um auditoriums available in our district that are equipped to, to hold something like this? I mean, or any other places. Uh, it, it sounds like we're, we're making a big deal out of, you know, uh, the space where, you know. Uh, we're a big district and I'm a bit, a little bit surprised that we don't have. You know, a twenty-first century sort of auditorium that would, that can actually hold a hybrid sort of uh program. Um, am I mistaken on that?
We have, we most likely would use an auditorium so that we wouldn't have to worry about moving seats like chairs and tables and things. Um, but we would have to set up all of the technology to make sure that it was uh appropriate with sound and visibility. Of the board as well as the ability for microphones in multiple places. So that would take some calibration. Typically, those spaces don't have a permanent uh podium, and so we would have to bring that in. There would also be protocols set up out in the foyer to ensure that we had all of the necessary PPE. Um, and just to be sure that the space is cleaned, of course, um, before we use it. So there is some preparation. Um, I don't believe that any of our auditoriums are set up with that kind of uh technology. To be able to video in microphone and speakers uh in the way that we need them. So that there is clear, so that sound is clear, there's no reverberation. Um, and that everyone is able to see the board appropriately.
Uh, do, are there any districts uh throughout Sonoma County that are already doing a hybrid program that we could, you know, um, you know. Bounce an idea off, um, because I've heard there are a few and, and they've been doing it for a while. And uh, this is one of the, the criticisms that I, I hear from bigger, you know, school districts that we're not as nimble to, to, to change with, with. With the tides. So, um, are there any districts that we can hmm collaborate with?
Yes, absolutely. And actually, to be very transparent. Um, I've had some of those districts reach out to us to ask what it is that we needed to do and research and preparation. Um, and they've been uh sort of following suit on some of the things that we've said we could be prepared for. They've also had to learn some, some things around um technology. And maybe perha- perhaps purchasing additional technology like we've had to do. Um, and then doing the work of um. Separating out seats so that there's a little bit of social distancing. But yes, the, the, the bottom line is, yes, we have the ability to collaborate with other districts.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Manieri. I mean trustee Flores. Other board members, questions? Seeing none, um, we're going to go to public comment, but you, you know, for this item, I see that there are hands raised already, but we want to limit this. I'm going to limit this to one minute. This is an agenda item that we've brought back. Um, for the last, I don't know how many meetings with several months. Um, and we have three hundred attendees on this call and I know we have one big agenda item coming up. We also have kids presenting on our next agenda item. So, um, I just, I, I'm, I'm putting this out there for the panelists to, to know the reason why we are limiting. Um, this uh, uh, public comment um to, to uh one minute. All right, we're going to go to uh public comment.
Thank you. If there are members of the public who'd like to comment on item E one, please raise your hands. Our first comment, one-minute time limit is Janelle. Janelle, would you please state your full name for the record?
Janelle Payne. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Um, I just wanted to point out, I, I've heard briefly that. We're not sure what the city of Santa Rosa is doing or if we could use their chambers, I think is what I heard, uh, Superintendent Trinell say. I've attended some meetings uh through the city, what uh city council meetings and they are in a hybrid model. I have been able to attend via Zoom and make my comment publicly. Uh, people have also been in the auditorium and approaching a microphone. So I'm wondering if uh we couldn't use the city council chambers and their hybrid model and the technology that the city has provided. So, uh, anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there. It's all online and I've shared a link with uh one of the trustees on the board already. And maybe that can be shared around. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Gabby Payne. Actually, Gabby's hand is down, I think. So we're going to Sammy Sharp.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Samantha Sharp. Um, I work at Santa Rosa High School. Um, and I would just like to say that I strongly urge you guys to move towards at least a hybrid. Um, I can say that I was logged on to many of the Zoom meetings when it came to um SR, our SROs. And how that kind of would work last year. Um, and the behavior of the board members was absolutely atrocious. People were logging off their video, they were logging off the meeting altogether. Um, that would be the equivalent of standing up and walking out of a board meeting, which I rarely ever saw it in person. Um, so if you guys do stay virtual, I really think that there needs to be some sort of code of conduct. And that needs to be brought up and actually upheld, because it doesn't feel very good when you're addressing the board and. People are looking down, they're looking at their phones, their phones are out on screen, or they're just logging off their video altogether. That's all.
Thank you. Next is Gabby Payne.
Hello, um, thank you guys for, for hearing us out, um, allowing public comment. Um, I was at the board mem- uh, board meeting last month and the last couple, several months, you guys have been discussing these. And uh trustee De La Cruz, you asked the same questions last month and the superintendent gave you the same answers. Um, so I'm not sure if you're just making it sound more difficult to like, oh, I have to, you know, Zoom so hard, I have to find internet and I have to find a phone. So I'm not sure if you're just making it sound more difficult to like, oh, I have to, you know, zoom so hard, I have to find internet and I have to find a phone. And then I have to get the link and then I have to log on. I mean, you can make anything sound very difficult. This is standard practice. Every district is doing it, even very, very small ones. They find a room, everyone helps set it up. Everyone cleans up when it's done. It's a beautiful team building kind of thing. The money is there to pay for it. That is not a concern. And I do believe any trustee that votes to not go in person is going to be removed. Because if you cannot be there in person, then please step down.
Thank you. Next is Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Good evening, everyone. I know you've heard my voice quite a lot over the last, oh, I don't know, four years, both in person and on virtual. I will say that providing the opportunity for people to come in on video, as we saw on the PowerPoint presented by the SRCS staff, a significant increase of 25% for parents being able to participate in the meeting is not a small number. I know that when we were in person, if I was coming to a board meeting to speak, it put a lot of stress on the rest of my family to deal with the kids and all the rest. I listened to the first 40 minutes of this board meeting on my way home with kids in the car. And then was able to put them to bed in between two items and come back and talk to you now. So please do keep an opportunity for everybody to reach you virtually for the foreseeable future, if not forever. Thank you.
Next is Shelby Pryor.
Hello, board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I agree with the last gentleman who just went ahead and said what he had to say. Going ahead and going virtual would actually help individuals be able to participate. That being said, I also think that you guys should still have to be in person utilizing the virtual services so more people can participate. I don't understand why you can't use where the Board of Supervisors meets for their meetings. I don't understand why you can't use the city of Santa Rosa's place for meetings. Those places are already paid for by the taxpayers and we don't have to use our brains outside of that. They use the Board of Supervisors, which I've attended their meetings. And you're able to show up in person, you're able to mitigate whatever you need to do to make that happen. I don't want to see more funds going and being appropriated places, not to the hands that need to be getting them. Like our teachers who need more money and to be more appreciated than our NBA stars and the people who don't contribute to our society.
Thank you, Mr. Pryor. One minute time. It is up. Next is Deanna Oliveras.
Hi, this is Deanna. I've been advocating for probably six to eight months for a hybrid model. So you all know how I feel about it. But I just want to say this, let's keep it, let's like bring it back to the basics. It's, there's not a huge pandemic right now and things are changing. So the right thing to do is be in person. So you could utilize the Brown Act exactly the way it's intended to be. There's no state of emergency anymore. So whether it's convenient or you get more people up here on Zoom or not, it really doesn't matter. The fact of the matter is you should do what's, what's in the policy, what's in the board policy. And just spending this much time talking about it almost gives me a knot in my stomach because the things you were describing about setting up, breaking down, having a late night, that's things that parent groups, PTAs and PTOs, as well as teachers do on a monthly basis. Whenever they have an event, they work a long day and they still go to the PTA event and we break down stuff and we put up stuff and we're back the next morning at 7:00 AM. And that's just the way of life. So I think you guys should accommodate it.
Thank you. Next is Karen Wagner.
Hi, this is Karen and thank you for letting me make a comment. As we talk about social distancing, you know, or physical distancing, as I would like to, you know, have it be said. We have to remember that in our classrooms, we're not physically distanced. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Next is Kelly W. Kelly, would you please state your last name for the record?
Of course. My name is Kelly Watel. I'm actually a teacher at Rincon Valley Middle School. And I myself actually had the pleasure of working for the city of Santa Rosa in the past for the City Manager's Office. My job was exactly that, to clean up after any board meetings. I can tell you that it took me about an hour and I usually did it the next morning. It wasn't a big deal. However, in place was all of the technology, which I did not have to deal with. So setting that up would take a bit more time. The one thing I wanted to mention was ADA. If you have a school board meeting at an auditorium, it is important that the podium or whatever is provided to people to be able to comment, be able to be raised and lowered so that people can access that. So I just wanted to mention ADA compliance is very important. So make sure you please consider that. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, President Sheffield. There are no other hands raised.
Thank you, Beth. We are going to bring it back to the board for further discussion or questions or a motion. I see Trustee Medina's hand raised.
Yeah, there's actually a question for Superintendent Trinell based on some comments. I don't think you mentioned, but I believe the city charges us a cost to use a facility, right? Do you know what that cost is?
Yes, they do. And actually, I don't know that cost. I don't know if Mr. Edson or would recall that.
I don't off the top of my head. I know there is an hourly rate to cover the facility and the employee costs. The city does staff that for us when we're there. Somewhere, I want to say between $100 and $150 an hour, somewhere in there onboard nights, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Medina. Trustee Flores.
Thank you, President Sheffield. I mean, looking at the numbers that you collected, it sounds like we have, the numbers that have a little bit different because I think you got these data to us a while back. I think it's off by 1% or 2%. 28 of the parent survey wanted a virtual sort of model versus 56 hybrid. That's to me telling me that, that our parents would like to continue a model like this, right? That post-COVID, we're never going to go back to just being 100% in person, having accessibility to folks. Via some sort of modality, some sort of, you know, way like Zoom or something else. It's very important. And I think we need to start going that way. As a district, we keep, you know, and I said this multiple times, and we keep, you know, just kicking the can down the road instead of starting, moving the district into a hybrid model that we can, you know, tweak a little bit here and there as we learn because we haven't, you know, even attempted to do this, not even once. When the COVID numbers were pretty low. So you know, that to me, it was like an 84, 85% of our teachers that were surveyed said that this is, you know, a model that they like to pursue, you know, to be a statistical difference. To have that validity, I think when you had at least 10%, we weren't there yet. But I think it's significant enough to let us know that this is where our parents want us to go. So I just want to say that, you know, let's consider this. Our community is asking for this. You know, and it's time for us to start moving towards a place where we can start involving, you know, in-person, you know, meetings with a Zoom sort of meeting as well. So I would encourage the board to please, and I implore you to, let's, let's move to a hybrid model as soon as next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Flores. Trustee McCormick.
I agree with Trustee Flores on this. I think we need to start moving forward and I would very much like to take the step towards the hybrid model. One, to get us back in person as a board. And two, to allow for transition, but also allow for increased accessibility to the meetings so that we can hear, you know, the most people can hear from us and we can hear from the most people. And I would like to take it a step even further that eventually going into hybrid. Hopefully, we can at some point get back to a fully in-person meeting all the way around. But, and I'm just looking at the E1 action item. And so I want to make a motion, but I'm kind of like, how do I make a motion on this? So I'm going to make an attempt and, and you guys can help me out. If there's a second. So I'd like to make a motion that we, we move towards a hybrid model as soon as next month for our public board meetings. So the board would be in person, staff would be in person. And we would have some sort of hybrid model. I know there's a lot of details to figure out, but I would like to make a motion that we move towards that.
I see. I'm sorry, Trustee Fong.
I'd like to just add to that. I don't know if it's an amendment or what. I'd like to give us that transition time. First of all, you know, I'd like the hybrid. I'd like it so that people can stay home and put their kids to bed like our speaker was talking about. And also, as elected officials, people are saying they want us in person. We want to be in person. I'm happy to be in person. So I think in terms of like what's going on with the city, what's going with us, what's going on with staff, that we give ourselves a couple of meetings to do that. And I'm looking at our calendar. Because we have spring break in there as well. I think that brings us to the second meeting in April. Because we're already in March. We have one more meeting in March, then two in April and there's spring break in there. So.
So can I just ask a clarifying question? So this is why I'm confused on the motion because we didn't have a second on the motion. So is it a situation where we take the action as written to vote? If we want to move towards a hybrid model, do we make a motion to, like, do we call for a vote and we vote it down and then we talk about? If it got voted down, then we would talk about a hybrid model or make another motion or like, how do we do this? Because I'm confused when I'm looking at the discussion action item, like how we proceed with that.
Can I try to make a motion? Maybe I'm wrong.
And there was no second and then we kept discussing.
I'm trying to.
Finish up your motion. You had mentioned, Trustee McCormick, that you weren't quite clear on your motion. You were.
Right, but I don't even know if I need a motion. We might just need to vote this down and then take that step. That's my question now.
Are we voting for an action? I don't, I think we can move forward if we give some, give some legs to, to this action item.
This action item will die if no one votes for it, right? And then we can, then we can appeal.
Anna's got the answer.
So since the motion has not received a second, there is no need to vote because there isn't a second to the motion. So the motion would fall and someone would have to make a new motion.
I'd like to make a new motion. Director McCormick, is that okay?
Yeah.
I know that we begin hybrid meetings with the board in person at city council chambers, beginning with the April board meeting. Or the second April board meeting. After spring break. Okay, so help me figure out that date.
That date would be April 27th if you're talking about the second meeting in April.
Okay, so could you do it by the 13th? Could we do it by the 13th?
We will do whatever is needed.
All right. So I move that we go to hybrid in person at the city council chambers, including a hybrid by April 15th.
Okay, so we have Trustee Fong making a motion to begin hybrid meetings with the board at city council chambers after spring break at the second, no, at the first meeting, April 13th meeting. Is that correct? Looking, okay, I see Trustee Medina's hand.
My hand's not for a second.
Okay. I see hands raised. Do I see a second on the motion? Wave your hands, your physical hands if you can. No, I don't see a second on, oh, I do see a second on.
Well, no, I'm not seconding it. This is what I'm asking. This is the question I'm asking. I, I am in support of what Director Fong is saying here. But I, I think the question I have is how the agenda is written and the current action item. I think we need to. Okay, so Director Medina, if you could shed some light on this to be helpful.
I was just going to say, I was going to make a motion to continue this as we are because we agendize whether yes or no to AB 371. We didn't agendize anything about a hybrid. So it suggests if you want to bring something about the hybrid, put it on the agenda for the 30th because we have one on March 30th. I believe we have a meeting, right? And then that would be in time to vote for it and have it in time for that first April meeting. So if that's what you want, I'd say agendize the transition to a hybrid meeting. And we continue this. And I think even then, if you're moving to a hybrid, and this might be a legal question, I think we would still have to, I want to say cite or somehow address this AB 371 it is, because that's what allows us to even do this format. So that's what I'm thinking. So in terms of all the things to consider, that's what I think there is to consider. And, and I had been raising my hand to make a motion to continue the continuance of conducting public meetings virtually as specified in AB 361.
Okay, so I'm just going to seek some clarification here. If we were to actually approve this action item tonight, we don't have a date. There's no date listed. Right? My understanding is that we would then come up with how we want to proceed with this action item. If that requires us to agendize it, I'm very confused.
No, what Director Mithain is saying is that we need to vote on this item, right? And then this item will die when it doesn't get the majority vote.
Or what if it passes is what I'm saying. We don't have a date, then what do we do?
Agendize it for the next meeting as, that's Trustee Medina.
Wait, which item are you talking about? The continuance of AB 361 or the hybrid?
The continuation of AB 361.
I mean, technically, my understanding is if that doesn't pass, then we have to go to in-person altogether.
Right.
At our next meeting?
Not 30 days.
Because we didn't authorize our continued, our continuing of the public meetings virtually.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think I can assist in this. So if the board chooses not to continue your board meetings for the next 30 days. You did make this vote at the last meeting on February 23. So that only covers you for 30 days. So if you don't vote this tonight, then we're actually going in person, hybrid or not, we're going in person on March 30th.
Okay. Trustee Flores and then Trustee Beard.
Sorry.
Just to clarify, there was no second to the motion that I made.
And just so that I can clarify, I didn't hear a second to Lori's.
We did not hear a second to Lori.
I will, I will second Director Medina's motion so that we can move forward on this. I think we need to make a decision one way or the other. So I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval.
Can you repeat the motion, please, for my records? Thank you.
Yes, it's just, I moved the continuance of conducting public meetings virtually as specified in Assembly Bill 361.
And seconded by Trustee McCormick. We will take a vote.
Director Beard, wait, sorry, I'm just a little confused. So if I vote I, what exactly does that mean?
That means we continue in virtual like we're doing right now.
Okay, I.
And if I could just clarify, today is the time. So this technically will only work for our meeting on the 30th because our next meeting on the 13th is more than 30 days after.
Correct. And that's really important for the public to know as we were already discussing future dates of when we would be. Discussing future dates of when we would be meeting in a proposed hybrid system.
Okay, one more question. How how do we get to hybrid?
So based on the conversation tonight, um I will make sure that the next board agenda item includes that language. Tonight was to bring you data which the board requested around what people are thinking.
Thank you Superintendent Trinell. Okay, we are ready for a vote. Sorry, Adina.
Director Medina. Director McCormick. Director Manieri. Director De La Cruz. Director Fong. Director Flores.
We're the understanding that we are going to go into a hard hybrid mode, you know, eventually. You know, within the next, you know, thirty, forty-five days, I.
President Sheffield.
I, alright, the motion passes um again with a understanding that this will come back on our next. Agenda item with the hybrid uh language for uh transitioning to a hybrid model. Okay, we are moving on to agenda item E two, and I wanted to say thank you so much for. The patience um of our presenters on this item. Item E two, the discussion um on the new school model, which um is uh focused on developing K through twelve. Dual immersion pipeline from CCLA to LCL and high school. As well as the progress being made on the design of a world house model for both schools. And expanding the career technical education offerings at um LCL and. So clearly, we have a lot of movement going on at CCLA and LC campuses. And we have students joining us again as a reminder for folks who are attending. We still have about three hundred people. Kids participating, so watch it. Um, I am going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Armstrong um for some introductions of folks joining us. Welcome.
Perfect, thank you. I was watching the screen, seeing if we had everyone popping on. It looks like it. I am, oh, okay, great, there we go. Alright, well, um I'll get started. Good evening, President Sheffield, members of the board, Superintendent Trinell. Members of Santa Rosa City Schools and guests. My name is Dr. Kimberly Armstrong, Associate Superintendent of Educational Services. So I'm here with a team to present for your discussion. The design work that's happening at LCL and High School and Cesar Chavez Language Academy. Uh, the design work is part of a liberatory movement. And I acknowledge that this work is not new to most of you. Design teamwork launched at Ridgeway a couple of years ago. And um for those who are unfamiliar, liberatory design is a creative. Problem-solving approach and practice that centers equity and justice. Lib- liberatory design is about positive needed change. Improving schools improves our Southwest community, Sonoma County, and ultimately our country. I am excited that you will hear from our district, school, and student leaders. And I invite you and others to lean into what's to come and what's still possible in a beautiful. Opportunity ripe area that holds our students. Principal Alvera of LCL and High School, welcome. The microphone is yours. Individuals will introduce themselves as they present.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong, Superintendent Chanel, Board President Sheffield, San Rosa City School Board, and Greater Santa Rosa Community. Uh, my name again is uh Gabriela Bavera, principal of Els- of the proud principal of LCL and High School. It is my honor, pleasure, and privilege to be kicking off this presentation. And I can't tell you how excited I am uh to be a part of this team. We have been working together since November, and we are eager to share what I would consider. Unprecedented work. There was the work at Ridgway, but this is a little bit bigger uh that this team's been working on. And uh let's see if somebody could move that next uh. Slide, there you go. Thank you. That's the slide I'm looking for. As you can see by this slide. The group of people that were involved in this phenomenal work. Uh, we were very intentional in the choosing of our students to make sure that our students at the margins were represented in this group. I have been involved in education for over twenty-five years, and I've never been a part of a design group like this. The last one we had at Ridgway High School uh, which was right after I I left Ridgway to come to LCL and High School. So it was a pleasure to start working again with Karina. And really kind of coordinating not only our students here at LCL and and our staff, but also the students and staff. At CCLAs as a child's language academy, as well as our district staff. So again, working together. We, the adults, really were the learners. Uh, we listened to our students to hear from them what they needed from us. When the edu- us, the educational institution. They let us know about where the inequities are in our system and where we as a collective could design for equity. Basically, what says our child's language academy and LCL and High School students define as their needs, what their needs are. From them. Um, again, which includes bringing to life new programs and building classes. That have taken, that that has student input involved with it. Uh, as you can see, some of the pictures that we have in front of you, the design team adults that were part of this group. Included, of course, site and district staff, Debbie Cardozo, Natalie Stupignan. Doug Gibson, Mario Gonzalez, Sandra Hernandez, Elujes Yamas, Kelly McCura, Cara Parlado. Erica Raffo, Eric Rodriguez, Tomas Salinas, Mayra Sosa, Kyle Thompson. Superintendent Trinell came to one of our meetings, as well as Associate Superintendent Dr. Armstrong. Next slide. Thank you. At this point, I would like to introduce you to our LCL and High School Design Crew members. As I stated before, there was a lot of thought and intention to put uh into who we chose. Diverse, now, this is what they wanted me to announce to you all, right? So I'm just want to put it out there. This is a diverse, diverse, multilingual, respectful group of artists, leaders. Avid students, athletes who skateboard, cheerlead, play softball, baseball, netball, basketball, with the biggest hearts. It is my honor to introduce, and again, I got to know these students throughout the year, and obviously, I'm glad that we've got back in person because. I don't know if I would have had the same relationships with them if we were still on Zoom. But Sammy Williams, V, Juarez, Esther, and Jasmine C. Unfortunately, Marco Vela and Jose Yael Sanchez uh could not be here tonight. But our students know how much our staff cares for them, especially the principal, who is so proud of them. Uh, so at this point in time, I would like to inter- well, there he is already, the handsome Sammy Williams. Take it away, Sammy.
Uh, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Samuel Williams, and I'm a junior and athlete, and looking forward to graduating from LCL and High School. And leaving an amazing impact on this wonderful school system. I'm passing the mic to V.
My name is Naomi. I am a senior here at LCL and High School. My hope is that we can help leave an impact on the way people view our school. We, as the design crew, are the voices of many students that don't have the ability to speak out.
Hi, my name is Juarez. I'm a sophomore attending LCL and High School. I'm in the design crew because of the changes I want to see happen in the classrooms and also wanting to better the relationships between students and teachers. Now I'm passing the mic to Esther.
Hello, my name is Esther. I'm a senior attending LCL and High School. I'm on the design crew so I can help rebuild a school system where students can excel. Now I'm gonna pass the mic to Jasmine C.
Uh, my name is Jasmine Carrata. I'm a freshman. I'm a varsity flyer on a varsity cheer team. Not only that, but I'm a softball player. I wasn't a very good student and I struggled a lot with learning. I always thought I. I was slow. Teachers seemed to think that I never cared for my grades. They would always dismiss my learning problems and gave me the feeling that I was dumb, so I never wanted to go to class. My grades weren't the best. Get that I'm a varsity cheerleader and a softball player. But not a star student. Once I started to think of ways I could hit my grades to skyrocket, I realized that. I was on, I was a hands-on learner. The way I found out was with this design crew. This crew opened my eyes to school life. I attended my classes happily, although I learned a key to my learning experience. I realized how this was a blessing, but soon realized that students didn't yet get this opportunity either. Although I was blessed, I had a puttering feeling down. Deep down, knowing students that tried their hardest to boost their grades, but never got into their full desire. Sometimes sports is all students have and grades are in the way. And this is why I'm a part of the design crew. I want to be the change for students. Students who want to skyrocket in school. Students who want to make their families proud, students who only have a scholarship. To get into a college. I'm passing the mic to Mr. Alavet.
Thank you, Jasmine. I I appreciate that, and and I I was one of the ones that nominated Jasmine to this team. And I nominated because, again, uh she came to my office for a disciplinary issue. And right off the bat, I knew this young girl had something special like all our students. Um, we talked a little bit. Uh, I think you appreciate this, uh Director De La Cruz, I I she had articulated to me that she wanted to be an attorney. And needless to say, I I see a budding attorney right there. But anyways, that being said. Um, we intentionally included CCLA students and teachers, counselors and administrators as well. Because, again, Cook was our former feeder school. And we wanted to make sure that they were involved as well. So I want to pass the mic to uh Principal Carolina Gage Gavada. So she can take it away.
Thank you, Principal Albavera. My name is Carolina Gage Gavada, principal of CCLA, and it is my absolute pleasure. To introduce the CCLA Student Design Crew members. This is a diverse, open-minded, creative, and multilingual group of students. They are athletes and artists. Um, nothing like this has ever been done before, ladies and gentlemen. Um, they have been so dedicated, all seven of these kiddos, and reliable through the process. And it is my honor to introduce Jorge Chavez, Nelly Chanthi Roman. Uh, Julian Salinas Larios. Lourdes Sanchez Santana, David Artiega Garcia. Luis Ramirez Miskla and Lily Vera, and I'm gonna hand the mic over to Jorge.
Um, hello, everyone. My name is Jorge Chavez, and I'm on the design team because I want for students to be able to pursue. Future jobs they love. I'm passing the mic to Nelly.
Hello, my name is Nelly Roman, and I am on the design team because I want students to enjoy and look forward to going to school. We also wanted to acknowledge that Lourdes Sanchez is in our design crew, but due to personal circumstances, she couldn't be here today. I'm passing the mic to David.
Hello, my name is David Artiaga Garcia, and I'm on the design crew because I would like to learn about more meaningful things. Hello, my name is Louis Ramirez Mishka, and I'm on the design team because it was an opportunity to help. Change the way that schools teach the students and to make it better so that the students could learn more. And so that they could achieve their goals, and so it was an opportunity that not many people have, so I took it.
Hello, my name is Julian Salinas Larios. I am on the design crew because I want to change the school system so that it fits the needs of students now. I'm passing to uh the mic to Lily.
Hello, my name is Liliana Vera, and I'm on the design team to help Els- to help LC and having a better reputation. I'm passing the mic to Director Cordozo.
Thank you. Uh, before we dive into our process, uh we thought it would be important to uh talk a little bit about the new school model, so. Um, as Lily just mentioned, I am a director in Ed Services. I oversee the career technical education programs. Uh, for Santa Rosa City Schools, so I'm excited to talk to you a little bit about uh the new school model. So if you can go to the next slide, please, Karina. Great, thank you. Uh, the new school model has three major components. Continuing a dual immersion pipeline from Caesar Chavez Language Academy to LCL and High School. Building robust TE program offerings. And a fabulous design team focused on identifying the needs, hopes, and dreams of our students, families, staff. And partners using those identified needs to inform the work we are doing at LCL and High School. At the center of this work, our North Star is a graduate profile that outlines what students should know. And be able to do before they graduate from LCL and High School. You'll be hearing more about the graduate profile later on in our presentation. You'll note that all of these circles are interconnected. As we continue this work, it's important to note it's about more than just the continuation of a dual immersion program. Or adding more CTE programs to LCL and High School. Imagine not only new CTE programs, but CTE types of experiences offered in every classroom. Imagine students being multilingual and having the skills needed to succeed in a global career. Imagine a school that empowers student voice and not only invites, but listens to what their students. Families and partners' needs are and respond with change. That is the new school model at LCL and High School. And with that, I invite Jasmine, Nelly, and Lily to talk a little bit more about our journey.
We began our journey in October of twenty twenty-one. And we started by getting to know our very diverse design team. Whom includes teachers, principals, counselors, and students from both Cesar Chavez and LCL and. I'm passing the mic on to.
Although in the beginning it was a rocky start, we never really got to meet each other and actually get to talk to each other until we played activities. That would get to know each other and soon on begin an adventure.
In December of twenty twenty-one, we interviewed a purposely picked diverse group of students from both campuses in English and Spanish. I used all of their ideas to create our graduate profile. I'm passing the mic.
We met with students who spoke Spanish, but instead of speaking to them in English and trying to get them to understand us, we spoke to them in Spanish. We wanted them to feel comfortable and create an environment where they would be able to express their creative ideas and needs. These students gave us a beautiful imagination of a graduate profile. They gave us ideas of classes we couldn't even think about. In the short span of time we had with them. They, the beautiful energy that ran with our Spanish speakers gave us a beautiful. Beautiful paints that helped us paint our students' futures. Through January and March of two thousand twenty-two, we got input from parents, guardians, staff, our community, and industry partners. And we added their input and ideas to our graduate profile. We were very happy to see their ideas align with ours. I'm now passing the mic to Jasmine. The teachers, staffs, and parents gave us an insane amount of support. That helped us run with the wind and begin our journey. We prioritize not only our gym classes, but others. We spoke with our truth and our voices.
I'm passing the mic to Director Card- I mean, uh, Mr. Alaveta.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Uh, can we go to the next slide? Thank you. Um. So our site here at LCL and High School, uh due to our WASC work that we did, one of the recommendations was to work on a graduate profile, and that's what we did. We received input from our staff, students, and parents. However, we we realized that we needed to open it up more and get more feedback. Attached to the board report is the LCL and High School Graduate Profile Matrix. The matrix has the five new skills and sub-skills our design team generated based on student interviews done in both in English. Uh, excuse me, done both in English and Spanish by our design team, included all of our students, including our newcomer students. Additionally, the matrix also shows in green alignment to the five new skills and the needs uh identified by the CCLA parents. District uh CTE Advisory Committee members, the panorama survey, and finally, our original draft graduate profile. Uh, at this point in time, I'd like to pass the mic to George.
Um, our graduate profile is made up of ideas from students, students that. Students at CCLA and Elsie Allen High School interviewed by our bilingual students on our design team. We also looked at social and emotional learning student data from the panorama survey. We asked parents for opinions in English and Spanish, and we even got input from the district CTE advisory committee. Which includes industry partners. We also got ideas from the Elsie Allen High School Graduate Profile Committee, inclusive of staff, parents and students at Elsie Allen High School. The first graduate profile skill that we recognized is being motivated to connect to my purpose, to overcome obstacles and reach my goals. This means knowing how and where to reach out for mental health. And this can look like being able to have a strong relationship with teachers, to be able to reach out whenever they want. This skill also means being able to approach obstacles with a growth mindset. This can be shown by students believing they can achieve anything with dedication and hard work. Now I'm passing the mic to Julian.
The second graduate profile skill we identified is I will be able to navigate. Educational and job opportunities so that I feel empowered to reach my goals. This includes the ability to create an educational plan that connects to my interests. We brainstorm many ideas for how to bring this to life. One that I like. And the industry and parents suggested is paid internship for seniors. I'm passing the mic to David.
The third graduate profile skill that we identified is I will be open-minded so that I can embrace global ideas. And experiences in the community and world around me. This includes learning to be open-minded to others' feelings and values and cultures. We have many ideas for how to implement into school system. One is teaching real history, learning about different cultures, history, not history that makes white people look good. We want to learn the truth and what really happened. I'm now passing the mic to Louis.
The fourth graduate profile skill that we identified is. This means I will be able to communicate so that I can build empathy, trust and respect for others. This includes I will be able to seek help, support and advocate for myself. This is important because when you can advocate for yourself. It allows you to ask teachers and or friends and parents. For help in areas that you find difficult, which could open up new possibilities of jobs or opportunities for college. This also includes building connections to make us feel confident in our relationships. This is important because you build connections, when you build connections, it makes you feel more comfortable talking to people. Which allows you to become more confident in your friendships and relationships. Which then helps you be heard because you are confident enough to speak up for help and your needs. I'm now passing to Mike the Jorge.
Uh, the fifth graduate profile skill we identified is being educated so that I could be financially empowered. This includes being able to manage my money and save for the future. Having the financial skills such as taking out a loan, opening a bank account, paying taxes, budgeting, investing and even building credit. Are necessary to to feel confident working with money. We shouldn't. We shouldn't be having to rely on our parents to be teaching us these things. Now I'm passing the mic to Director Yamas.
Good evening, everyone. Edovijas Yamas, Director in Educational Services, leading multicultural services. Our department is excited and embracing the work and the learning that accompanies this work in our district. This work has been in motion to develop a K twelve dual immersion pipeline. From Cesar Chavez Language Academy to Elsie Allen High School. As well as a springboard into imagining what it could be for a program focusing on our French immersion students. I will pass the microphone to Principal Gage Guevara.
Yes, so CCLA has a two-way dual immersion program that is bilingual, bilingual and bicultural by choice. What this means is that our students can speak, read and write in English and Spanish. They start off in TK or kindergarten with a model that is ninety percent in Spanish. Ten percent in English and then it moves to eighty, twenty, seventy, thirty until fourth, fifth and sixth grade when it's fifty percent Spanish. Fifty percent English. Once they go into seventh and eighth grade. They do take math and history in Spanish, a Spanish language arts and the rest of their classes are in English. And I am going to pass the mic back over to Mr. Alba Vera.
Thank you. Um, what does this mean for Elsie Allen High School? Our next steps, we're looking at. It goes without saying that our hope is that next year we could offer a seven-period day for our students. Our AOD students unfortunately don't have the possibility of elective during their schedule due to the AOD class that they gotta take. Uh, our our staff has been working tirelessly uh since, gosh, before the pandemic. Uh, for a uh bell schedule committee, a graduate profile committee. They've been working real hard and they've done a proposal. Uh, and so we're excited about that. So if that is to happen, what we're looking at is kind of grandfathering the program in next year. Uh, offering one class uh uh in Spanish, an A through G course. Uh, possibly a math one course where not only students from CCLA can take it. Uh, that are in the dual language program, but also it would be of support of our newcomer students. Uh, math is very difficult for our newcomer students, uh, especially if they don't, obviously if they don't know the language. Uh, math one has been a challenge and most of our students don't get that opportunity until they've already been in our school for a year or so. So those are kind of our small steps and we do have a four-year plan uh as we're progressing forward. But along with that, it gives the opportunity for our students to be able to take dance, music, ceramics, CTE classes. Um, uh agriculture, um, as well as um. I'm trying to think off the top of my head, um, art classes. Um, so all those opportunities could be available for our students and we want to make sure that we have that for them. Uh, at this point in time, I'd like to pass the mic to Lily.
Learning and knowing multiple languages helps us communicate with more people and experience more. Also, knowing more than one language can assist students in obtaining more job opportunities. For example, when traveling, students would be able to communicate with locals. Things like that are helpful if they want to ask questions, buy something or simply have a conversation. Being multilingual is useful for helping their community and everyone around them. I'm passing the mic to Jasmine.
With speaking multiple languages, it definitely does help build a community with others around us. Using our time and day to talk to others in different languages helps us build. A better bond and a better understanding on other people. Using this as a technical tool will help us succeed and strive through many job opportunities. And if there is a job or necessity where we need to speak more than a different language, it'd be really helpful at the fact that we had learned this back in school.
I'm passing the mic to Director Yamas.
Now imagine what this would me- mean for our newly immigrated students. What this would mean is that through the World House Model. Students will benefit from the dual immersion core subject courses taught in Spanish through this model. This model is dependent on the dual immersion program. We currently have seventy-three students identified at the middle school level who in the next two years. Could benefit from participating in this voluntary program. Next, I will pass the microphone to Nelly.
In fall of two thousand twenty-two, we believe this might look and feel like teachers growing with us, students. And teachers who are willing to learn from their own students as well. We also want to include teachers and aides that can speak more languages so they can communicate more with the students. Something students would like to experience are having more hand on learning in the classroom, but also out of the classroom. Like a few examples are sports, music and clubs. I'm now passing the mic to Jasmine. With doing a bunch of other sports and different clubs, it'll help to build a community. And talk to others using our diverse languages. Not only that, but we've been put into schools that have changed and emotionally damaged us. And for newcomers that come here, just imagine that as your first time meeting and coming here to a school like this. Um, we've always been told that we were the change and that we're the future. If that were the case, why aren't we as students ever heard? Why have we been talked to, down to yelled that, but never heard? We've been taught to take criticism at a young age. We've been told you're smart. If so, then why do they? Why do they question our intelligence? Now imagine yourself as a non, the English speaker coming here to. America and having to take that criticism to heart. Do you think you'll be able to handle that?
I'm now passing the mic to Director Cordozzo.
Thank you. Next slide, please. As I shared earlier, a component of the new school model is focused on enhancing and expanding our career technical education offerings at Elsieon High School. Uh, we currently have a uh strong agriculture program that focuses on agriculture mechanics. Fore culture and the sciences. Um, and then we also have a public safety program. Uh, that focuses on police, fire and emergency medical services. Um, as mentioned earlier, our district CTE advisory has helped inform our work during one of our advisory meetings. Uh, recently, committee members identified the types of experiences they hope students can have so they are ready for college, career and life. As well as specific skills students need to be prepared for next steps after high school. Their feedback really helped inform the development of the Elsie Allen High School graduate profile. Uh, we want to continue to leverage these existing partnerships, but also continue to develop new partnerships. To strengthen our CTE programs, bring that graduate profile to life and infuse CTE experiences schoolwide. Um, at this time, I am excited to invite Estha to discuss. What we discussed as a team as far as redesigning our existing ag and public safety programs. As well as some new programs and experiences we are looking at offering in the future.
Uh, ways we can make agriculture and public safety better next year are by having more hands-on projects. Because we feel that students learn better that way. Also, more industry professional presenters to come into class and share about their journey, careers and give us advice. And connect what we're learning in class to the real world. In the future, we would love to provide ninth-grade students the opportunity to explore multiple career-focused programs. That can inspire, guide and empower them to decide what specific CTE program they want to take after their freshman year. This will prepare the students for a successful transition into post-secondary education and even the workforce. We also want to offer other programs and more experiences related to construction, healthcare, biotech. Engineering tech or IT, business studies and other relevant programs. An area of interest is the inclusiveness of internship programs for students that would include bilingual experiences. Now I'm passing the mic to Lina.
We believe our work is important to current and future students and will. Keep and will help keep and attract students to LCL and High School. Because students know best what students need, which is why this, the design team is student-centered. I'm now passing the mic to David.
In addition, students will feel more fulfilled with their four years of high school and feel more prepared for the real world. I'm now passing the mic to Jorge.
Finally, our work is important because it allows future and present students to succeed in areas that they find difficult or need help with. Now I'm passing the mic to V.
Thanks. Um, we hope adults can understand students not based on stereotypes. I now pass the mic to Patis.
Our design crew believes that our students are more than grades and attendance. We believe that students should be honored for their personality and skills other than the skills they use in school. I'm now passing the mic to Sam.
We believe that every school will benefit from a design team because we learn to respect each other's decisions. No matter what grade, ethnicity or socioeconomic status. We all want the same end goal and that's to succeed in life. I also believe that what we are achieving is encouraging students to want to go to graduate, to go, to want to graduate and go to school more. I'm now passing the mic to V.
Our design team also helps us be more social and open, which helps us boost our self-esteem. Build our courage and be more successful. I then pass the mic to Dr. Armstrong.
Thank you, and I'm so excited. All the brilliance and pride and motivation coming out of our Southwest schools is. Um, just amazing and wonderful and at this time, I would like to open it up for questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Armstrong and directors and principals and students. And I just, I want to thank you all for sticking with us um through tonight's agenda. Um, and also this format that makes it really kind of um a challenge for you all to be able to. Speak and present the way that you did. Did an excellent job. Um, I I am going to open it up with a question as we're talking about this kind of weird virtual format. Um, I'm wondering how um this is for, um, this is for the crew, the design crew. I'm wondering how you all. Um, came together to do the design work that you do in this sort of weird, crazy, virtual quasi. Uh, world that we live in.
And I know that Karina on the other end and she'll help facilitate voice, but um Karina, do you mind stop sharing so they could see the beautiful faces of the design crew? Thank you. So it was questions for the students, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It was fun. It was a little strange at first because. It, we didn't know each other and we'd never seen each other before, but then once we started doing the circles. And getting to know each other more, it became more fun and then we all became friends with each other. We were laughing all the time. It it was fun.
Good to hear, good to hear. I I know that we have board members with other questions. I'm going to turn it over to trustee Flores. For a question.
Well, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done. It it looks phenomenal. I I have a programmatic sort of question, uh, Dr. Armstrong. So I I heard that there is a seven-period. Uh, idea or it just could go to you to to Gabriel. Uh, so it it might to understand that you're doing a phasing approach, seventh, I mean, uh, ninth grade and tenth grade, eleventh and twelve. Or all students are going to start with a seven-period day. I'm a little bit, you know, foggy on that, on on that. So can you just explain that a little bit better?
Yeah, I can, I can start off. So it it came out as an idea based on the needs that our students had. Uh, right now, what we're looking at is specifically freshmen and sophomore. If this is to pass, if this is the ability to go through, that our freshmen and sophomores would definitely have a seven-period day. Uh, our juniors and seniors, if they're in line to graduate and don't need it, don't have it, don't have to take it. But there is that possibility, especially due to the COVID situation. And we have a lot of students that would probably utilize that time to make up classes instead of having to do an after-school course or a. Um, cyber high course. Um, but a lot's going to depend, obviously, if this passes and if uh. The union is willing to to listen to our our site, uh, staff members that have voted on it. Um, but that is our goal, that is our hope. Um, because our our staff did a lot of hard work. Because our, our staff did a lot of hard work in not only gathering the information, getting stakeholder input, looking at other uh, bell schedules that were out there. And, and spent endless hours trying to fine tune it to be able to uh, satisfy the needs that we have here at L C Allen High School.
And, and this is not a question, but um, in, in terms of making sure that uh, the board prioritizes funding because, you know, extending to a seventh period day will, will obviously increase the funding source. So I just want to say that uh, you, a, a program like this has my full support. Uh, in terms of making sure that it's, it's funded, so it properly runs or it runs properly. So I just wanted to mention that. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I mean, that's just my two cents and good job, Kate, and uh, to the students, great job in presenting.
Thank you, trustee Flores. Um, trustee Medina.
Uh, thank you. First off, thank you to all the staff and the students for your presentation. Truly appreciate it, all the time and hard work you put into it. Um, I, I did want to ask, um, I saw one of the things that mentioned implementation in um, twenty twenty-two. Um, like the fall of twenty twenty-two. And um, I just wanted to ask if uh, and this might be the first superintendent or I'm not sure who, um, earlier there was some concerns brought uh, brought up about issues around C C L A being prepared in terms of their implementation of programs. Is that anything related to, to the implementation of this year? Or could you shed any light on, on those concerns that were brought up earlier around books and all, and training and such?
Um, I will hand it over to Dr. Armstrong and then I'm happy to add any detail.
Oh, sure. Um, I was just going to say that, you know, we're, we're building the, the program for all students who are served on the southwest side of the, the district or who are in the service area. And we know that there's a significant population coming from um, C C L A. And so having the opportunity to make sure that there is um, articulation with that school is absolutely important. But we also know that the program will draw students from um, many of our, our middle schools and even outside of our uh, city school district as well. So, so we're planning with that in mind, but the focus um, has been on the articulation and um, we know that there are some things that we need to work out um, with that articulation, but that's not slowing our progress as we have.
I, I don't know if that answered my question, I think.
I think I can add to that. From director Medina. So, so as we're, I, I want to be sure that it's clear that, first of all, since I'm speaking, I just want to share how full my heart is hearing from our students. Um, and just thank everyone who's been a part of this work. So I just want to take a moment to say that and uh, really sending hearts to everyone involved. Um, so I believe that there have been two points of entry of the work. There was the uh, new school model, which is the D L I model at the high school. And then there's the World House model that is the uh, bilingual newcomer program at C C L A, which then feeds into the D L I structure at L C Allen. And those two projects had different starting points in conversation. So with that, in both cases, there was a slowdown of progress due to COVID. And so with that, there was a startup um, with World House uh, in the spring where we were trying to rejuvenate some of that work with our newcomer program, which I do want to just uh, take a point of clarification here to also additionally explain that while we are building this newcomer program to be between C C L A to L C Allen. And then offering up the opportunity in growing the number of students who are a part of those programs. We cannot mandate that newcomers who have a different homeschool be transferred over to C C L A and L C because by law they are allowed to have newcomer services at their homeschool. So I think I would just add that additional clarity. Uh, but director Medina, uh, I think that we are at different places with this work. Um, I don't believe that we are at full implementation of our World House model with our um, dual, dual language program or our newcomer program. In any case, there is definite work to continue to be done.
I, I guess I, I'm trying to figure out if there is validation to, to what was brought up that the implementation of C C L A is behind. And to me, well, if, if that's the case, then it means what's going, when those students go to L C Allen, they won't be at, at the anticipated level. So I guess I'm just trying to, is that, is that something that is happening? Cause so far I've only heard it from like, you know, a parent in a presentation. And so I, I just want about, is that, is that real or, or is it not?
Um, Ms. Yamas, I don't know if you would feel comfortable sharing some of, a little bit more detail about where we're at.
Yes, I, um, I think um, director Medina is referring to the presentation that our um, parent president of the C C L A um, parent group discussed today. Definitely there have been some uh, unanticipated um, issues with whether it's credentialing of teachers or the, the um, situations that have happened. Some of them really outside of the control of the, of C C L A and the work that's happening. I hear his concern with regards to if the program, the dual immersion program currently at C C L A is not um, at a hundred percent in place, then how are we articulating it into C C L A? I mean, I'm sorry, into L C Allen? Is, is that director Medina, is that where you're, what you're asking?
Well, in, in part, it, it almost feels like we, we expected to be at a certain place with these students and now these students aren't getting that at the C C L A level. So by the, so, so it's almost like we're failing those C C L A students because they're not getting what I think what was expected in the initial thought. And so by the time that they get to L C Allen, they wouldn't have received what was anticipated because for whatever reason, these books that are there and aren't being trained on aren't being implemented for those students. So I'm just trying to hear, is, is that what's happening? Are we failing those students? Um, I, I just, I just want to know and get a clear answer and really understand what's going on. I think we all deserve to know.
I think.
I, if I could just step in for one quick minute. So um, the scoo, students in seventh and eighth grade are receiving math in Spanish. They're receiving U S history and world history in Spanish. And they are receiving Spanish language arts. What we haven't had in place is a Spanish language arts teacher. Um, all year long, we've had a problem staffing that. And so there's been sixty-day long-term sub, different subs. We now do have a teacher that just recently started um, a few weeks ago with the Spanish language arts classes. We have two. And so there are books in place, brand-new books that the kids have. And there is a credential teacher in place uh, who just started a few weeks ago. So they are getting a little bit of a late start, but these are students who have been at, at C C L A since kindergarten. So they already have seven or eight years of Spanish instruction under their belt. They're going to be, you know, just a little bit behind with Spanish language arts, but they're a bright set of kids. And they're going to be catching on and getting the instruction they need from now until the end of the school year.
And this is my final thing, just of, of in this design process and in the whole C C L A, E H S transition. Um, do we have an idea like how many C C L A students may be already committing to go to L C Allen? Is it too soon for that?
What I. We don't have the exact number, do we? Uh, we don't have the exact number. Um, some of the students are going to other schools. They might be going to Pioneer for the football program, you know, um, or different, going to different high schools for different reasons, things that have attracted them. So we won't have the full set of eighth graders transferring to L C this fall. Uh, what percentage of the students will be transferring? I don't know that. We would have to um, survey the students and see where they're planning on going.
So I, I, I just wanted to add um, with regards to the number. I do know that um, vice principal Raffo has been, they have been recently going um, to do the registration for the eighth graders going up to ninth grade. And um, we were asking about the numbers and um, I want to say I roughly around a hundred and eighty that have been identified from C C L A that will be going into L C Allen. But that does not, we do not have the numbers as of tonight with regards to how many of those students are in the dual immersion program. Matriculating up to C C L A.
Could I write one eighty out of how many?
Principal Gage, do you know how many eighth graders you have?
Uh, in that particular program, we probably, we have two Spanish language arts classes with about uh, thirty-three kids uh, in each class, so sixty-six kids right now in the middle school. Um, and about seventy-five percent of those are eighth graders.
Say, um, may I just jump in? I, there's a special request. As you all can see, uh, those wonderful faces in that one little box means that they're still at school in the room. And I just got a request that uh, the students are um, have the ability to be dismissed so they can go home as it's now after nine o'clock. And so I just, I wanted to put that out there and, and see if the board was agreeable. And I'm, I'm pretty sure some folks want to say some things to you all, but um, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I know, Dr. Armstrong. I, I think we're, we're agreeable. Um, I see some nodding of the heads. It's, it's, it's a late night. It's, it's, it's nine o'clock. You know, unless there are any objections, I, I, I see waving goodbye. Thank you again so much, crew. For all your input, your expertise, um, way to get involved and um, really incredible work that you're doing.
Can I just add one, one more kind of set of thank yous and just so impressed with all of your work. Um, it took me until my third year of law school to build my own curriculum. And it's amazing that you're doing it as seventh and eighth graders, um, recognizing that the systems that are trying to currently educate us for what we need are failing us. And so I'm just so, so grateful for how powerfully you came to this work and how beautifully and like proudly you bring your whole selves. Um, so please, please know, right, the county where I work is the single biggest employer in the actual county. And I would love to find so many ways um, to bring you into shadow lawyers and engineers and geologists. And um, and eligibility workers and interpreters and translator, like there are so many different things there and I just, I want you to see all of them because um, they need you so badly. Um, our, our systems, our public, our public institutions just need you right in the middle of them. So please, yay, I see thumbs up. But you just, you just did my heart so, so beautifully tonight. And I'm so grateful for your.
I just, I also need to jump in and because that's what my hand was up for. I, I want to. Students, um, and, and also add my voice to the gratitude. I, I'm an L C alum. And so just, I'm so incredibly proud of, of what's happening here. And it's just so, and the last time the youth design group presented to us, I just, I like bawled. I was like, not okay after that. So I'm going to try to keep it together. Um, and just say that I was really inspired. Um, a couple of you talked about, you know, changing the reputation that L C Allen has. And I just want you to know that that is such, such, um, there's so much work to be done there. And I just want to encourage you to keep doing it. It's something that I felt when I was at L C and you know, it was, you know, that it was going on way before any of us were there too. Um, and it's something that continues to keep going. And I just want you to know that I'm right there with you and I'm doing that work with you too, even though we don't know each other. But I'm, I'm right there with you and I want to encourage you to keep doing that.
All right. So there you have it, crew. We, we love the work that you're doing. We love you. We appreciate the work and we're, we're here to support you. Have a good night, you all. All right, we'll turn it back over to you guys, sorry.
I held it together until that moment.
Oh, love it.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't know if there were any other questions or if this item is complete.
No, I did have a few other questions. I know that there were still folks trying to.
Let's keep going with questions, trustee De La Cruz.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think director Medina was done, but tomorrow I want to check in with you.
Go ahead.
Um, I think my questions are kind of in line with where you were going. And I'm really curious to understand if there has been a decrease in ninth graders after the closure of Cook, if we're seeing that in any way and what this program and this kind of attention to something that really is um, a draw for, you know, C C L A kids and from other kids from the southwest side, are we seeing, what, what, what do those numbers look like year to year um, since the Cook closure?
Um, we are at capacity. So uh, we took way over our capacity. Um, at the beginning of the year, we have huge waitlists. Um, and are starting a waitlist next year for eighth grade especially. Um, where we do have a little need is seventh grade. But um, it's been brought to my attention that what usually happens is school starts in August and then all these parents come flooding in to register their students. So where we can uh, use a little help is outreach to um, our uh, surrounding schools. Our uh, counselor used to go into the sixth grade classrooms and do presentations. Um, and they are now not allowing her to go into many of the surrounding elementary schools because we are a charter. So we're not able to get the word out to many of the sixth grade students, which is an issue. So I'm really hoping that these parents come knocking at the door in August. We, we do have some seventh graders enrolled. And definitely we have the role over of sixth graders into seventh grade. But at capacity, eighth grade, we are completely at capacity uh, this year for seventh and eighth grade.
Thank you, principal Gage. I guess my question is, how many of those kids are going to L C? And is that different? Is that different from?
I, I think you're going to have one section. So uh, if I had to do my best guess, it would be you're going to have like one section of math, science, history, one section of Spanish language arts to begin with.
All right, director. Yeah, I, I think director De La Cruz, are you talking the totality, the number of?
And if it's different from, from when it was Cook, right? Like, how are we seeing a decrease from C C L A to L C and um, and if we are, I'd love to know how we can mitigate that.
Great. I'm going to pass that um, principal Aba Vera, do you have those numbers? Do you feel comfortable speaking to that?
Uh, no, I do not, I do not have those numbers. I know uh, uh, vice principal Raffo has been doing that work. Uh, and I don't have him with me, but uh, they have been, they have already gone down to C C L A to get some. I think the problem also is uh, is that again, we're doing this right now, right? The, the window was back in what, uh, November? And I think that, I think if, again, no fault by anybody's fault, but looking ahead, once we establish this, this is what we're looking at moving ahead. So I think as next year's, which would be next year's eighth graders, our hope is to already have the program established to be able to support students and then be able to answer any questions that the parents over at C C L A might have, especially as it relates for those parents that want to continue with their students. Being able to take Spanish classes at the high school. And I think we could get a better barometer next year.
Great. Um, I think, I think, you know, just reflecting on what our board has been aware of in the closure of Cook as a public, as a public school and the, and you know, really wanting to be clear about how we can protect L C um, and increase its admittance. Um, I would love to have uh, those numbers come back so that we have a sense of what we as a board need to do to increase the resources to ensure that we are mitigating the impacts on L C. Um, regardless of, you know, I, I get that COVID and, and time and everything else has slowed down our progress. Um, so I'm not, this is definitely not a blame game at all. And um, I just want to make sure that you know, we understand the impacts to L C and that this board is, you know, aware of our past dedication of making sure that we're mitigating that and directing resources in a very intentional way to um, to protect our Southwest Santa Rosa schools. Um, my other question is, where is the French school? So where is that bigger vision for a multilingual program that draws from all through the district? Cause I know that that was the other thing that this board was really excited about and working towards.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Yamas, did you want to speak to multilingual? So.
I, yes. What I would like to say is, as of right now, the work that we are really focusing on is the um, C C L A, L C Allen um, pipeline. That does not mean that we're completely ignoring what's happening um, with French-American. We know that um, French-American will have their satellite um, campus at Slater come the fall to set, um, where, where they will begin seventh grade. So um, with the new changes and us now becoming multilingual services, we definitely see this. So with the new changes and us now becoming multilingual services, we definitely see this as we begin to implement the pipeline for CCLA to LC Allen. Really look at what that entails for the teachers at LC Allen, the credentialing behind it. And then really learn from that to inform us as we begin moving into what that would look like for the French American students that will be up and coming in the next few years.
If I may add, I think Director De La Cruz was also asking about what is the potential for growing other languages within this program between CCLA and LC Allen or just at LC Allen? And the one thing that I do want to be sure that we mention here is that, yes, we have that vision. The start of this program, the foundation of this program is the bilingual program with Spanish and English as a starting place to understand the model itself and then build upon it. So this is the foundation with the potential for growing additional languages and doing the research on what those languages will be, including French.
Great. Yeah, I guess my question is really about what, how is, how are we connecting the two programs and ensuring that what resources went into the French schools' expansion of its charter and its movement? And what we've learned in that capacity really comes over and informs the way that we similarly build resources and a path for the, you know, dual immersion Spanish program. And then ultimately, the goal being that those two things come together and really create that language magnet. And that kind of excellence in a multilingual education that we know is what is so attractive to parents in both of those systems, right? In both the French school as well as in the Spanish school. My last, my last question, I think. What resources do you need from this board? How can we accelerate support, elevate, champion, love on you? What do you do? What can we do? And then I think in particular, Principal Gage, you know, what can we do to support building that pipeline of CCLA and expanding your K through six as well as K or seven and eight? To make sure that LC has that, you know, just that free flowing pipe there.
I think that an interest of many of our eighth graders are sports. You know, at the high school level, particularly football. So, you know, looking at growing a football program at LC, I think would be an attractive component for our students' pipeline into LC. So I would say that that is one thing to look at, definitely.
Excellent. For us at LC, really, a lot, and yes, that's, that's great input, Principal Gage, because we're definitely looking at that. Again, we're starting baseball, big game tomorrow. Got the time, come by. Just a small plug. But for us, I think a lot's gonna hinder on the passing of the seventh period day. It's really, really, really critically important because if not, and again, some of you, you know, former students, I've been here for almost twenty years. And we keep doing the same thing and it's not working. It hasn't been working for our students. It just hasn't. And it's just different. And we're gonna try to do our best. And again, kudos, props, whatever you want to say to our staff who realizes that, acknowledges that and started working on this about a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, because they know the need that our students need. And so that's probably the number one. And I think everything else will fall into place, you know, because we got the support from our industry partners with the new school model. They want bilingual folks out there on the ground, on the boots, boots running in all fields, all fields from, you know, university track to, you know, folks that are working in the industries, right? It's really important, welders, electricians. Cannot even start to tell you how important bilingual folks are for those positions. So I think those are the major things that we need. In any way you can help, in any way whoever can help, we really greatly appreciate it.
So my last question, if we start a football program, does Title IX require that we also bring a girls' across program to LC?
You know, we got the lines on the field. We got the lines on the field. No problem. We can work that out.
Okay, well, I am, I am there for you. Slacks in the future, LC Allen. Talk about another amazing magnet. Be the first girls' across program in Santa Rosa. I am down for that.
All right, I like, I like to hear the first. I like that. Let's do it.
Oh, you watch out. You're gonna be coaching.
Oh, heck, yeah. No, that's a given. I will happily step away from the board to go coach girls across to LC Allen. Reclaiming, reclaiming Native American sports at the school named after a Native American leader in our community. Like, that just feels like such, such kismet right there. So adelante.
That's it.
All right, we have trustee Medina's hand.
Thank you. Well, speaking of first, coming from the first graduating class of LC Allen. One of the things about LC and why I think the French inclusion is to that, because to me, as a student that already spoke Spanish, I wanted to go into French because it's what I didn't know. And I know that a lot of Spanish-speaking, there's a lot of Spanish-speaking students also have, you know, gone that route. So I think really building that program at LC would also be positive for multiple levels. But I wanted to ask, Principal Gage, about, I think you mentioned something about capacity being at capacity. And I wanted to find out, does that mean physical capacity or like limitations on staffing? Because I know the parent earlier mentioned we had like three kindergarten classes worth of students on a waitlist. Or is it staffing capacity? Because I know, I think they mentioned something about like having trouble hiring like a Spanish teacher, I think it was. What are the different capacities that we're facing in terms of limitations? And along those lines, are those things that we're looking at in terms of LC Allen? Are those going to be limitations, similar limitations that we face as we grow the program over there?
Just our classes are just full. So we just were maxed out on our classes. So we're at capacity in that way. We'd have to go to one point two teachers instead of full-time teachers. So as far as physical capacity, we do have a couple classrooms that are available, that could be available for next year. But to grow our program, to add a kindergarten, let's say, or we would, the way that we're structured, we'd have to double, you know, fourth grade, double fifth and double sixth grade. And I think I figured it out at sixteen extra of rooms. And maybe right now we'd be able to find two or three extra rooms. But over the course of eight years, we would need sixteen rooms in order to expand the CCLA model, which is not reasonable. You know, we'd have to bring in about fifteen bungalows over the next eight years.
And what about the issue on staffing, both for CCLA and, and LC Allen? Like, is that an issue that we're taking into consideration? Seriously, I mean, since it seems like we're having trouble as it is, as we grow, do we already have staff we need at LC Allen? Do we need to hire more? What do we anticipate is issues there?
I think for us here at LC Allen, we did have a little bit of a struggle in the beginning of the year with Spanish teachers. And so we still have one open position that we have a long-term sub in. But I think part of this, and not only announcing this and putting it out publicly, is that I am sure that we have some staff members at other sites that might be interested in coming to LC Allen and being a part of something new, something different, something creative, especially bilingual folks that are out there. There's a reason why, you know, a lot of our staff wants to stay here because they, they know the population that they work for. They know that they have the passion for it. And so if, yeah, if there's any staff members out there that are looking, we're here and we're here to support. And again, to be part of something that is unique. I know there's other parts of the state that have what we would consider a bilingual high school, but not nearby here. So this could be the start of something fresh, something new, and we're really excited to have it for our community.
And my final thing is around scheduling. You know, I recognize the need for like the ability around the time that we were doing A through G, the issue of needing more electives to me became an issue. You know, I put together like a mock schedule that worked. I sent it to Dr. Kedemora back, you know, a couple of years ago. But, but one of the, the forces of resistance, I think, was also like within the teachers' union, what that might entail. And I'm wondering, are teachers supportive of the work that you're doing within the design team with this plan forward? Or what field are you getting from teachers? Because in the past, I found there's resistance to changing the schedules.
I mean, for us here at LC, you know, in the last two years, we've lost three sections of drama. We've lost three sections, excuse me, three sections of dance. Those were some of our more popular electives. And so right now, and again, this is what drove the conversations and started the committee on the seventh period day is that our students were not getting the opportunity to have those electives. And so we're really appreciative that our staff saw that and, you know, made sure that they kept that at the forefront, is what can we serve and how can we serve our students? So at least from our staff, this work is work that they have been a part of and they understand it, and it's something that they want for our students.
All right. Any further questions, trustee Medina?
No, thank you.
Okay, I see no other hands raised from trustees. This is a discussion item. We are going to, actually, before we go to public comment, I want to point out that it is nine thirty. Maybe we're looking for motion to extend the meeting tonight past ten o'clock.
I moved text on the meeting past ten.
We need to have an exact time of ending. I'm sorry.
Until, until midnight.
Okay, we have a motion to extend the meeting to midnight. All right, no all-nighters tonight. We're going to midnight. Moved by trustee De La Cruz, seconded by trustee Flores. Show hands. Okay, I see hands in favor. I see trustee McCormick, no?
Yeah, that's a no.
That's a no. Okay, we have eyes have it. Extending the meeting to midnight. Let's go to public comment. We do have still about two hundred and fifty attendees. Looking at hands being raised, let's limit this to two minutes for public comment on agenda item E two.
If there are members of the public who'd like to comment on this item, please raise your hand. Gabby Porter would like to comment.
Hello, thank you. And that was a really beautiful presentation. The students did a great job. Like, wow, like, applaud them because it's not a very easy thing to do. And I hope that they continue to come to the board meetings and find out what the process is in order to get these changes done at their school and being able to, you know, implement and find out where the money's coming from and what monies they can have for different programs. Like, down here in Petaluma, there's a watershed that, you know, there's another program that can study marine biology and, you know, conservation and all kinds of things. Yeah. And then the other thing is, like, you guys have a lot of really great questions. And I'm just wondering, like, as part of the board, your job is to, is the accountability piece? So you have these questions and a lot of times the, that I've noticed is the question, the question's not answered, like, they don't really know. Is someone taking an action item or does someone have a PDF open? Or, you know, we're document open. That's like, okay, this is the question, steer to this person. And, you know, hold that person accountable to bring you an answer or to provide you that number so that moving forward, you don't have to re-ask that question because I see a lot of those things. Also, being able to trust that the people who are saying they can do something is they're actually gonna do it. You know, they wouldn't be saying they could do it if they weren't gonna be able to do it. So asking like those little tiny details, I think we can, that can either be a side conversation or, you know, it could, you could say, hey, can you send me a detailed proposed information on what this is gonna cost us? And then, you know, have that posted. Okay, just a suggestion. Thank you. And you guys were amazing.
Thank you. Next is Donna Prack.
Hi, I just need to see, because now I'm trying to find it in the passenger. Did you guys already grant the French school? The pathway or to Montgomery? Really? No, I can't tell. I see some shaking yes, some shaking no. Oh, I hope not. I swear, if, if that's the case, if that's even an option for the school district to allow the French school to Montgomery for, because I listened to the meeting and it was about the convenience for the location, that's a load of crap. People choose charter schools because it's the interest that they want for their kids. It doesn't matter where the charter school is located. They will find a way to get their kids there. So I think it would be in the best interest for our city and for Santa Rosa City Schools to have the trilingual program at our school and going to LC Allen. Because I just really don't want to see more segregation than there already is at our, in our district. It's disheartening. And our kids deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Veronica Jordan.
This is actually Paul Polling, her husband. So it's kind of ironic, kind of piling on after Donna just spoke, but I'm a parent of two students and eventually three at CCLA. And I'm just struggling to like comprehend like the cognitive dissonance of having you say that you want to support LC by having them have a French program and have that be part of that pipeline while simultaneously deciding to have the French school be at Slater instead of the actual language academy that you already have at a middle school that has space for that number of students to be there. Like, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. It's like, you're in this fantasy land of like, oh, if we just put a French program there, the French students will go over there. But I don't understand how you think that's gonna work. And then you didn't even bother to try to make sure that the French middle school stuff would be at CCLA. So then you would have a combined program of students that are there for language reasons that you could then pipeline into LC Allen. So it just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense what you're doing there. And I really want LC Allen to succeed. And I just don't see you taking the steps that you would need to do before that decision around language there at the middle school level. You're just, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Next is Cara Parlato.
Hi, thank you. And a great job to the students. Again, as everyone has discussed, I wanted to put forth that with a straw poll at LC Allen, eighty percent of our teachers' association members are in support of the seventh period day. And we really want to offer those courses to our students to make them career and college ready and to have those fields available to them. We also have a significant ALD population and with the requirement by the state for those students to take an ALD class, which is one-third of our population, they unfortunately are not always able to take those electives. So by adding those seven periods, it allows them to have a more robust and opportunity to take those CTE courses in addition to other electives. We also are in jeopardy if we do not have enough CTE electives. We will not have funding such as CTIG Perkins or opportunities from the CTE Foundation. So in order to retain that funding, we do need to have those courses available to our students. And ultimately, I'd like to reiterate that our efforts towards the seventh period day align with our SIPSA plan, WOS recommendations, school board policy and state imposed comprehensive school improvement. And once again, as professional educators, we all want the best for our students and to see them succeed in both college and career fields in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anastasio. Could you please state your last name for the?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Anastasio Tovad Rose, and I'm a proud parent of CCLA. First off, I want to thank the students that spoke. It's gonna take students and parents and faculty to move this forward. I just saw this, the failed program for our founding students at CCLA, the seventh and eighth graders. Mr. Gabriel just said that this is gonna be ready for next year. We have eighth graders that are graduating from CCLA next year. And they have no future home. You know, the French principal talked a couple of months ago that she had twenty-three students that were, you know, displaced. We have those students at our school that are gonna be displaced next year, that are founding students that started our school and they have no program to go to next year. What a disappointment.
Thank you. Next is Natalie Hoyt.
Hi, I'm just here to add to the voices of frustrated CCLA parents. I, Mr. Veronica Jordan and Donna Prack and Anastasio have said it nicely already, but it's so frustrating to hear Director Gage here saying that she has these spaces in her seventh grade that she can't fill. And we have these French seventh graders who need a place to go, and yet you choose another option. And it's all over a ten-minute drive and saying. And it's all over a ten minute drive and saying it's more convenient and it's so frustrating. People drive for these charter schools. This is not something that people would turn down over a ten minute drive. I talked to a kindergarten parent today who got waitlisted and they're going to drive to Petaluma to go to Loma Vista because they want the bilingual program. So to say that people aren't going to drive across town for it is just a cop out in my opinion.
Thank you. Next is Joshua Lewis.
Hi, everyone. How are you tonight? So I'm turning my mic on here. So I teach at LC Allen High School and there's been so much amazing things said tonight. I was moved to call in or zoom in, even though I had not intended to. Donna Prack, I don't know you and you don't know me, but your words have really moved me tonight as well as the three previous callers before me. We, I think we do all want to do what's best for the kids. And and you're right that to travel to the charter is is a true sentiment. I can attest because a guilty secret of my own that I don't talk about very much is that I have a first grader and next year I'll have a kindergartner. And we take them to Gravenstein Elementary in Sebastopol, even though we live. I can throw a baseball to Monte Vista School in Warner Park. And I work at LC Allen. So we've decided as a family, what's best for our kids is to drive that drive. And the main reason is the enrichment programs at Gravenstein ratios, you know, classroom sizes are of course important, but we want our, our kids, I grew up, I took four years of Spanish, four and a half years of Spanish. My wife took four years of French. And we, and we know that at Gravenstein, they'll get that exposure to foreign language and cultures. And tonight, after hearing the design team and the things that I've heard from CCLA. This is the first time I've thought about bringing my kids and thinking I need to have this conversation with my wife about bringing my kids to a San Rosa City Schools school. I've always thought I'd love to teach them at LC Allen, but that's years down the road. But now I'm thinking we need to think right now that CCLA, especially if we get French and Spanish, we get them going at the same site, we'll take them where we need to take them. But even if we don't get French, the things I'm hearing and the plans and the passion. Like I said, I've been motivated. So I wanted to share that. Also, let's do football. I've got football coaching experience. I was glad to hear that. Let's do it. Let's bring football back to LC Allen a big way. I'm ready to do film at lunch in my classroom, I twenty eight. Let's go Lobos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. That is it for public comment. Thank you, President Sheffield.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to the board. This is a discussion item. Any further discussion? I see trustee Flores's hand raised.
Yes, thank you, President Sheffield. And this is for our superintendent. I like to know, you know, what can we do to make sure that a program like this is fully funded? And sustainable, right? I would hate to, to, to start something new and then hear, you know, a year from now, two years from now that we are short in funding. So I like to have that from, from you and in your future. So to make sure that we have that. Because I know the impact in the seventh period day will be, you know, a little bit more expensive and then the repercussions of having that. LC and then the possibility of having it in other school sites and I just, I just need to have that information ahead of time because I would hate to start something new like this and then have this board make a horrible, horrible decision, you know, a year or two from now because we don't have the funding for this. So I just, I just want to hear that. I just want to get that information from you in the near future. Okay?
Thank you, trustee Flores. Trustee Manieri.
Yeah, sorry. Just one quick question that I wanted to ask before we got to this point. But it kind of came up during a public comment during this item and then also just around the conversation of bell schedules. Do we as a district face any liabilities for kids who don't have access to electives? I mean, specifically our ALD kids who don't have access to electives, is that something that we're liable for?
That's a great question. I will also tap into Director Cardozo as well, especially around CTE. What we are legally bound to is when we have students who are newcomers, for example. We are legally bound to provide them language development courses. And that takes precedent at least for two years. After that, it is expected that students show progress and move into a regular program where they can begin to then start taking electives. Electives and elective credits are a part of the graduation requirement. And so in that, we still do provide them those opportunities. It's not required that they have them all four years. But we certainly want them to be able to have these opportunities. Because some of them do go beyond the two years because they need additional support. And if Ms. Cardozo or Ms. Yamas want to jump in on that, I'm, I'm fine with that, too.
Yes, thank you. As far as implications regarding career technical education programs, there are state and federal requirements that require that we offer at least at a minimum of two course sequence in order to be eligible for CTE incentive grant funding, Perkins grant funding, agriculture incentive grant funding. And we rely heavily in Santa Rosa City Schools on our grant funding to support these programs. And so we would definitely want to be mindful as we're moving forward with this work that you know, we continue to offer programs that are robust. And and at the very minimum, meet that two course requirement and then I mean, they could be up to a three course or four course requirement as well, depending upon the program. So that's something we definitely need to take into consideration.
And and it doesn't sound like we, we can do that without an adult schedule that is conducive to that. Is that correct? So yeah, look at that. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, trustee De La Cruz.
Thanks. So in line with Director Flores's question, I would really love to see a work plan come back with not only costs, but also a timeline. And then I would love to also get those numbers back about what the impacts of LC's enrollment is after kind of closing cook and what that looks like from year to year, the comparisons so that we know what's happening to LC and its enrollment. My, my last question or kind of a question information is what are we doing with CCLA's eighth graders? What is the plan for them? Where is their home? And where do they land after the amazing work of being in a dual language immersion program in the city of Santa Rosa with such an incredible program? So I would love to have that come back so that our, our parents and those kids know what their options are and know what they have available to them at LC, even with this work not being complete. And this is, this is, they are, they are the trailblazers. Right? They, they are the kids and the parents who kind of stepped off that ledge with us. And I would hate for us to not have something and therefore them as they, as they stepped off that ledge. And so I'd really love to have those three things, costs, timelines, and the plan for CCLA's eighth graders come back.
Okay, other questions from the board? You know, I, I know that COVID has forced the shifting of priorities. And that's definitely understandable. But I too am hoping that we can get back with a sort of a realistic timeline to make sure that we're staying on track. It sounds like we have plenty of commitment, willingness of the board. We just need to see a little bit stronger blueprints as we move forward. Trustee Fong, you had your hand raised.
I'm going to echo Director Flores and Director De La Cruz's request for how we are going to pay for this because it is going to cost some money. And in terms of equity, in terms of what kids need, this is what we need to pay for. LC Allen, CCLA, they are doing unprecedented work. They're doing twenty first century work and we need to support them over ratio to make sure this happens. And so it's going to take a close look at everything else we're spending on. So we're making the right cuts in order to pay for something else that's different, that's not status quo, that is going to grab kids. That graduate profile, Gabe, is unbelievable. And if we don't act on what those kids are saying they want for their education, then we just should pack it up, send them someplace else. Because we have to do this. And I've talked about this before. It's the knowing, doing gap. So we know what they want. We know what's good for kids. And if we don't do this, it's on us. And so parents have a right to be asking what's going on, where are we going, how are we supporting? And it's never fast enough for any of us, right? And so all of you guys on the team, you're amazing. I thank you. I think Karina Huey, who was you know, the, the person behind the design crew, I think, or consultant. So just kudos, keep it going.
All right, other questions from the board? Seeing none, moving on. I'm doing a time check here as well. We're on agenda item E three, an action item. Approval of CSBA delegate, the board will consider a vote for California School Board Association's twenty twenty two delegate assembly election. As a CSBA member, school district, Santa Rosa City School Board is eligible to vote for candidates running for the delegate assembly within our geographic region or subregion. It's my understanding that there is one vacancy to be filled in our region. Two candidates have been nominated, Ever Flores and some other guy. Jeremy Brought from Bennett Valley Union School District. Those are the two candidates. Superintendent Trunell, is there anything else to add on this action item?
I think you took the words out of my mouth. Thank you so much. And so there is a ballot attached to this board agenda item. And it will be to the board this evening to make a motion to vote on one of these candidates tonight.
I'd like to make a motion that we cast your vote as a board for Ever Flores.
Second.
All right, we have, it's been moved and seconded, but we, we we might have questions from the board. Any, any questions? I saw it. Okay. And we also have public comment on this action item. Want to go directly to the public, this public comment.
If there are any members of the public who'd like to comment on E three approval of the CSBA delegate, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
All right, bringing it back to the board for a vote. Help me out here. Who made the original motion? Trustee Fong seconded by trustee De La Cruz. All right, I believe we are ready for a vote, Adina.
I have a, just a free thing to say. Regardless what, how the vote goes, because this is the original vote, I just want to say that I will still go out there and make sure I advocate for our school board. And and I'll be actively involved in the CSBA. Just because this is the regional vote, I just want you to know that. Okay. And I'm already in, in contact with our regional person who was in charge of CSBA here. So that's, that's my commitment to you all. Okay. And I appreciate your vote of confidence. Thank you.
Spoken like a true delegate. All right, we are ready for a vote.
Director Beard.
I.
Director Fong.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Medina.
I.
Governor Sheffield.
I. All right, the motion passes. Well, congratulations on the nomination, trustee Flores, wishing you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, stretch. This is the big show. We have agenda item E four. An action item. Consideration of new masking guidelines from California Department of Public Health. On February twenty eighth, the California Department of Public Health issued revised guidelines for K through twelve settings. These guidelines allow for local jurisdictions to consider changing indoor masking requirements from required to strongly recommended. Now I'm looking at the attendees who are still participating. There are two hundred and twenty three people attending. The board and the district office have already heard a lot on this issue. So tonight we are going to cap public comment at sixty minutes. We are going to take two minutes. Segments, intervals of public comment, but we are going to cut it off at sixty minutes. I'm hoping that works for everybody. I'm going to turn it over to to Superintendent Trunell for some background information here on this agenda item.
Thank you, President Sheffield, members of the board, staff in our community who's been patient as we moved towards this item. I do have a presentation tonight that also captures survey data that we collected from our staff and from our parents regarding this new masking guideline. And so I'm going to share my screen and go through some of that data now. By the way, these presentations that are being walked in tonight will become a part of the minutes following this meeting. So just please know that you will have access to this information. And sure. Okay, can you all see that? Great. All right. So just getting to it. Tonight's presentation, first, I'm going to talk about the purpose of this discussion tonight. Afterwards, I'm going to share data like in the previous item, share survey data from our parents and our staff. And then also show some of the current data around county case rates and district case rates. And I just want to be sure I acknowledge Mr. Mazzara who is in the space right now. I don't know if we have Mr. Jones here tonight, but I do see Mr. Mazzara in the space. Thank you for joining us this evening. So the purpose of this discussion, if you joined the call earlier today with the county, you would have seen some of these talking points. These talking points are shared via that scope presentation. And these are, this is language in considerations from the CDPH guidelines. Remember that the CDPH guidelines are considered the floor or the foundational guidance that a school district or other entity would follow. And a school district has the ability to provide for more stricter guidelines and go above that floor. So there are three buckets that we consider in doing so. First is what are the current patterns that we're seeing in particular case rates? The second is how are we trying to maintain proper staffing levels? So that if case rates increase, we're not losing staffing. So we look at how to keep staff and students safe and healthy during this process. And then also we take a look at equity and vulnerable populations. And when we're making these decisions, ensuring that we're thinking about the communities that are disproportionately exposed. And also those who are in schools, for example, who are in high with higher percentages of high risk or immunocompromised individuals. Where the ability for us to keep those individuals safe comes into play when a board is considering stricter guidelines. So our parent survey, same numbers as before because it was the same survey. So this is duplicate data that you saw from my former presentation in, in regard to parent survey responses, two thousand three hundred and seven. To the question of whether a person is in favor of ending the indoor masking mandate for Santa Rosa City Schools, for the two thousand three hundred and seven responses, you can see here that fifty nine point one percent said yes and roughly forty point nine percent said no. This is the breakdown of those responses by school. I'll just give you a moment to review that, but you can see the spread is different from region in our, in our district. From schools on the west side of our school district and those on the east side. And then all of the corners as well. And, and the number of responses that we have received from our families. This is the same data that you've seen before, representation of who responded from which school or district level department. And asking staff a similar question, but with the wording around whether they would be for or against the strongly recommend with the removal, oh, excuse me, removal of masks. After March eleventh, the answer here was sixty five point eight percent yes and thirty four point two percent no. This is a breakdown by group. So for This is a breakdown by group. So for certificated staff, which is a representative of our SRTA group as well. We had 460 respondents of that group. 66% said yes. 34% said no. Of our classified employees, which also includes members from CSEA, we had a respondancy of 169 people. 100, or excuse me, 62% said yes, 37% said no. We offered a separate option for administrators to respond to the survey as far as a group classification. We had 41 total respondents. 90% said yes, 10% said no within that group. And then there was an other category and 63 or five people said yes, and 37% or three people said no. This was also shared today, but as of today, these are Sonoma County case rates, which is on the decline. And this is our district data. And I believe we didn't have more than 30 cases. And Mr. Mazzara, please correct me. No more than 30 cases total last week. It might have been around 27 or less. And we had zero staff cases as of last week.
That's correct.
These are some additional data points around zip codes that also include our schools. The rates of unvaccinated people around our schools. And then at the bottom here, this is just for Sonoma County in general. By age range, the percentage of unvaccinated students. We do not have a specific district number because our students aren't required to be vaccinated. We are not collecting or asking families for their, their children's vaccination status right now. So for the board's consideration, there could be others. But one is to consider retaining the current requirements for mask wearing in indoor settings for students and staff. Another may be to remove the requirement of mask wearing in indoor settings for students regardless of vaccination status. And employees except those who are not boosted, which would mean that we would move forward with the state guidance, for example, of transitioning from required masking indoors to strongly recommended, starting after 11:59 PM on March 11th. And with that, I will end sharing my screen and I will take any questions that you have.
All right, bringing it back to the board for questions. We see trustee Flores.
Yeah, in terms of strongly recommended, what does that look like in terms of? Pol- I don't want to say policing, but policing that masks in the school setting. And, and then that's one. And then that's when I asked my, all my questions at once here. And then two, was there a distinction between elementary and high school numbers? I, I think there was, right? It looks like.
Would you like me to share my screen? I can go back to the numbers.
Yeah.
Yes, let me find that really quick. I am sharing. I have it for parents. I did not break that down for staff by school. So I apologize for that. I, I went the route of groups versus by school on that one, but I will share my screen for the parent survey data.
Oh, that was parent. Okay, got it. Okay.
Yeah, so this is the parent data by school.
I see. So high school parents, okay, so we have, okay. Okay, all right, thank you. And then, yes, and what does it look like in terms of stronger recommended? What does that look like in terms of this one setting? At the elementary setting, middle school and high school. Thank you. That's my only question.
Currently, as it stands, if the board were to make a sweeping decision to remove masks, starting or transitioning to strongly recommended after March 11th. Part of the law and guidance in that is that there will not be discipline of any student, for example, whether they wear their mask or not. One of the things that is clear in the guidance is that whether students are vaccinated or not, they will have the ability to wear a mask or not of their choice. And, and hence being strongly recommended, they can choose to do that. If a student chooses not to wear a mask, they are not to be disciplined for that. And on the reverse, if they are wearing a mask, they would also not receive discipline for that. And so we will not be enforcing any kind of progressive discipline on that matter.
Thank you.
Trustee De La Cruz.
Thank you. Going back to the data that you showed earlier, is there any data broken out by race and ethnicity?
We did not collect race and ethnicity data in the question survey. That would be the only way that we would have been able to collect that data.
And then in terms of the vaccination numbers throughout the county, that, that, that information is available at the county. Are you reporting on that tonight?
I do not have the breakdown of race and ethnicity data for the county. That was just to give a broad snapshot of percentages by elementary and et cetera, excuse me, age ranges of students who are unvaccinated. Which doesn't represent just our district. It represents the entire county.
Right. But the county has GIS maps that allows us to draw kind of circles around our district in terms of the, of the rates. Was any of that work done to break out vaccination rates and case rates by race and ethnicity in our district?
I do not have that data for you tonight.
That data is available and has been made available to the district by, by advocates who are speaking on behalf of communities that continue to experience higher levels of negative impacts, including transmission as well as death, as well as lower rates of vaccination. So I guess my question is, why don't we have that tonight before us?
My apologies that I did not include it in the presentation for tonight.
We do have the zip code by schools, you know, and so there's, there's a glance into some of that differentiation between the locations based on zip codes and the schools, but that was in the superintendent's presentation.
We're going to pause really briefly. I believe we need to do a little bit of interpreter switching. We can all just kind of catch our breath for a minute.
Yeah.
And if I can get a, a signal when we're ready to continue. Adina. Unfortunately, President Sheffield, I need Adina to promote me for that.
Hi, I'm sorry, my computer was frozen.
Okay.
Yeah.
While we're waiting, I do have the link open for that demographic data. I'd be happy to share my screen so that could be a part of the discussion.
That would be.
All that up.
When you're ready.
I'm still waiting.
We're all set. Thank you.
Thank you both. All right. We can continue. Superintendent Trunell, you can pull it up on the screen for us.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, as you, can you see that? So as you can see, please let me know if you can read this. I need to make it bigger. As you can see from the county data, the breakdown here, it goes by individuals, partially vaccinated, individuals fully vaccinated, and then portion of vaccine recipients and percent of population that is five and older. And I'll pause here. And then I will scroll down.
So I'm hearing that that's not the right dashboard, Superintendent Trunell.
Okay.
Let me see. There was a presentation that was publicly available that was directed at the county's health equity work group and that lays out the data and some of the disparities that continue to exist. Specifically with regards to kind of case rates by race, ethnicity, hospitalizations by age, hospitalizations by race and ethnicity, deaths by race and ethnicity, TK cases, right? So this was really speaking to a lot of the questions that community members presented also in last night's forum. Around kind of equity concerns with taking out the mask mandates now with current continued disparity in particular populations specifically around race and ethnicity in our community.
I have that presentation. Let me see if I can pull up that data. Apologies, I'm scrolling through to find the slide that you're referring to. I did not ask for permission, by the way, to share the, to project their information, so.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move the meeting along. We can pull that information. We have trustee Medina.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Superintendent Trunell, if we're going to be bothering you, but I just, for the sake of time, I do want to keep the meeting moving.
Can I, can I just present some of the questions so that it is in the record? I have it in front of me right now.
That would be great. Yes, please.
So if we're looking at the Healthy Places Index, which is a California index that kind of takes into consideration a number of different pieces of data that takes, kind of stands in the place of race and ethnicity for the state of California. A huge majority, or 32.8% of school cases are in the HPI Quartile One or the most underserved, less resourced members of our community. 25.5% in HPI Quartile Two. As compared to 19.4 in the highest quartile. So we're still seeing that the highest number of school cases continue to be in the lowest resourced and, and most underserved communities in our district, which means that 58% of COVID cases are in families that continue to experience lower resource. We also have disproportionate case rates in Latinx students and other students of color. So student cases in the Latinx community are 49.3%, but comprise only 43.8% of the population as compared to white students. White students are 42.9% of the cases and 43.4% of the population. There's also continuing disproportionality rates in the American Indian, Alaska Native and Pacific Islander communities. During Omicron, kids who were zero to 17 represented 28% of the cases in Sonoma County. Prior to Omicron, they were only 15%. Latinx youth have been disproportionately impacted by COVID across every age group. So, and compared to the white community, there is some significant disproportionality in that. With vaccinations, while we are 80% vaccinated throughout the county, there are still significant disparities in vaccination status. So it does not necessarily mean that 80% of all communities in Sonoma County are vaccinated. Specifically, only 37.2% of children in the county, 5 to 11, are fully vaccinated. 53.4 have not even received one dose yet. So 68.1% of children 12 to 15 are fully vaccinated. And when we come to boosters, we still see a significantly lower percent of boosters in communities that continue to be underrepresented and underserved. So 58% of populations that are underrepresented, underserved communities of color versus 69% of the white population have received boosters. Only 48% of eligible Latinx community members have boosters. So we continue to see kind of overall disparities with regards to kind of case rates in communities of color and essential workers and residents with continuing, continuing to have the least access to resources to support their health. We still see disproportionate burdens of hospitalization in the Latinx community throughout the pandemic. So 40% of the hospitalizations, when they're only 23.7%. Death rates in the Latinx community throughout the pandemic, 31% of death rates when they're only 23.7%. Population. Again, these, these, this, these data is really critical to our kids and our system. Really hope that this is data that is in our record that we are considering, given our, our, our focus on equity in this district.
All right. Thank you, trustee De La Cruz. Further questions? We have a hand from trustee Manieri.
Yeah, I have a question just with regard to the data collection with the survey. I know that paper surveys were available to families. And for, for those who either preferred that or don't have access to filling out an online Google form. So I'm wondering if, if that was utilized, because I think that kind of helps me also understand, you know, who, who didn't have access to the survey.
Or, yes, we always want to be sure that we're collecting as much data as possible. For tonight's presentation, we are still collecting information. And so we wanted to give time for the paper tonight. This is the electronic. But we hope to continue to bring you that data where we're able to add in those hand tallied data pieces that we have collected at school sites. So we're still collecting that.
What, by when do we think we would have that ready for the board to review?
We could have it by our next board meeting on March 30th, for sure. We just, but with the ability for people to get to a site or have the paper sent home, we didn't want to rush that. And certainly we want to be able to continue to listen.
Right. Thank you.
Sort of continuing on, on the, the same stream of thought as trustee Manieri, I'm wondering about the paper surveys and, and making sure that we had them available at, at all sites. I know we were working under a pretty condensed time. We wanted to get surveys out and appreciate the work that we did on that, but also just stressing that you know, not, not everybody responds to these types of, of electronic communication and just really stressing that we, we also have that backup paper, physical ability, physical means for people to respond. Trustee Medina.
Thank you. First question would be in terms of like the, the, the state guidelines to go to effect, I believe, March 12th. Could you clarify, what specifically is all a part of that? I mean, I believe it's students not being required to mask, but are there more specific nuances to that? In terms of that guidance from the state?
I'm sorry, Director Medina. Your question is about, other than the moving to strongly recommend?
Yeah, was there any, any like nuances or like caveats to that?
Yeah, so there is. There is still in place for those who aren't fully vaccinated in an indoor setting, they will, I'm talking about employees, because right now it's still not required for students. So any employees in a school system, if they're not fully vaccinated, they will have to continue wearing masks indoors and they will be tested twice weekly.
And then my next question, I think this is maybe geared towards like some of the data that you shared, Director De La Cruz. Because, you know, what I think about what I've seen in the community in terms of like access to vaccines, and I feel like vaccines have become a lot more accessible and like, I feel like anybody should be able to access a vaccine. And I'm wondering, out of all that data that you shared, is, is some of it more tied to lack of access to healthcare in general, which I know that is a huge problem versus specific like vaccination access? Because I'm wondering if some of the consequences of some of those things are tied because people don't have access to healthcare, which is a problem we've had for a long time and continues to exist. And I think it specifically will our document community, which I've had to deal, you know, help out a lot with.
Can I actually speak to that a little bit? Because I feel like this is like the work that I do day in and day out. You know, at the beginnings of the, of vaccine thing available, it, it did take a while for our community to, for us to see uptake in, in vaccines. There was a lot of hesitancy and that's why a lot of organizations mobilize. There was a lot of work to really help people understand the science so that they could make informed decisions, and I think we're seeing something really similar with children. And so I think that it's, it's not that it's, it's not accessible at this point. I think that from what I'm hearing in the community, it's just taking the same amount of time that it took at the beginning for folks to make those decisions about their kids.
Yeah, and I, just to add to that, Stephanie, because Director Medina, this is exactly the world that I'm living in as well. When you're looking at, you know, the way communities of color both have access to general healthcare, it's also a question of the trust in the systems and whether or not they have people inside of those systems that speak to them, that speak to them in the way that they need to be spoken to and the languages that they speak. And then there are other social determinants of health that impact just, again, kind of overall health and ability to access those vaccines. And then you're really looking at kind of, you know, this data that I just shared with the superintendent from last night's presentation. There's still a significantly disproportionate percentage of five to eight, five to eleven year olds vaccinated between the white community and the Latinx community, so as I mentioned, about forty, forty-something percent of white kids from ages five to eleven are vaccinated. That drops down to about kind of twenty-four percent when you're talking about the Latinx population. So still really significant gaps in the younger kids and their full vaccination status. Many, in many ways, it's because the messaging has also been like, you know, if your older folks are vaccinated, the people who are leaving your house, kids are less susceptible. There's been a lot more kind of hesitancy in parents generally to fully vaccinating younger children because the risk is seen to be lower. So there's lots and lots of reasons why we still see those, those really disproportionate rates in vaccination status, in particular between kids of color specifically, that five to eleven range, which is our, all of our elementary school age kids.
My, my next question is, you know, one of the things that I've seen in lots of places that I've traveled to is, and, and I don't know if this is possible, there's just an idea sort of potential could be done. The idea of like, if you've shown that you're vaccinated, then maybe you don't have to wear a mask, because that's what a lot of places are doing. Would that be like completely crazy?
So currently speaking, employees have to demonstrate evidence of being fully vaccinated and now boosted, or else they have to test twice weekly and will have to wear their masks. Because testing is not required for students, at this time, we cannot require them to produce a test card in order to be unmasked. The law and the current guideline says whether they're masked, excuse me, whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated, they have the right to not wear a mask.
Other questions, trustee Medina?
Just following up on what Superintendent Trenella just said. He said whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated, they have the right to wear masks. When you say they have the right to me, to me, I'd say that's regardless of what we do, or is that only within the state guidelines unless we do something differently?
I'm currently speaking about the current state guidelines. If the board were to take action in a different way, students would have to follow that.
Thank you.
Trustee Fong?
If we go to strongly recommend, what option would there be for a student or a staff member who believes that they would be compromised because there's, there are issues at home or they have issues? Do they have options besides just wearing your mask, or do they have options to go on independent study or permissive leave?
We do have independent study, the way it is currently designed. A student has the ability to request whether there are space in independent study in order to be able to be moved there. That does end at the way that it traditionally is set up for this year on June thirtieth, so that would be temporary. And so yes, the answer is yes. If students felt so compromised that they could not be in their classroom environment, they could seek out independent study. Legally speaking, we are not offering distance learning. That's no longer legal to offer. And independent study would be the only option at this time, other than having them wear a mask in the classroom or in the indoor learning space.
And about staff?
The same for, so for staff, two things about that. One, we don't offer distance working any longer. So the alternative for staff would be to request an interactive process with the human resources department so that it can talk about accommodations.
Further questions from the board?
I have a, I have another question. I'm sorry, I may, I must have, may have missed this earlier. So is there any way to get us the demographic data around the survey respondents?
We, it was an anon, it was an anonymous survey, so we do not have demographic. We did not ask the respondents to share with us their race or ethnicity, for example, or any other demographic data because it was anonymous.
Another question that I have is, you know, I understand that there are significant numbers of kids whose parents have shared with us that they are having kind of increased mental health challenges to wearing masks. What would be kind of the opportunity for us to retain a mask mandate, at least for the near future, and allow for an expanded exemption program that would increase the conversation in our district and in our systems to better understand what the mental health challenges are for those kids who are struggling to wear masks? So essentially, keeping a mandate and saying, you know, beyond strongly recommend, we are still, as a system, asking kids, especially those in elementary levels, to remain, to remain masked and expanding the, the exemptions available to families and kids who may want to access those exemptions.
And so what I'm hearing you say, just so that I understand, is that we would give families the opportunity to, for example, if the board were to say, yes, we are lifting masks in alignment with the state, that we would give, or excuse me, the opposite, that we would continue masking, that we would give the opt-out opportunity and, and also the ability for students who are struggling to engage in additional resources.
Well, I think it's like the idea of saying that the standard is still stay masked. And if you need an exemption to being masked, then there's a way to access that, and that also brings with it additional resources and additional, frankly, data for the district to have around what are the challenges that kids have experienced throughout the pandemic due to masking. So I was just curious about whether or not there is a possibility there. The, the other thing that I, I have questions about is, you know, I, I know we've received some information from parents. What? Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll retract that question. I want to ask a different one. I just want to also confirm that we have confirmed all adequate ventilation, ventilation and all of our, and all of our locations, both for staff as well as students, functional ventilation inside of classrooms as well as outdoor eating areas that are covered. So I just wanted to know more about, you know, our capacity as a system as a whole to make sure that the rest of the mitigation measures and that we know work to lower an airborne virus transmission are, are in place and functional?
I think the short answer is yes, we are working and we continue to work on making sure that those are monitored. If Mr. Edson would like to speak to, or Deputy Superintendent Edson would like to speak to some of the additional measures that we've put in place.
Yeah, I, I would say that our, our systems are working, and when they occasionally do go out, we are addressing those as quickly as we can. We still have the air purifiers with HEPA filters in place. We're going through our CO2 monitoring to ensure that there is adequate exchanges of air and keeping those levels down, which is a, a signal we can use, so to speak, for air exchange in the classrooms. That's happening where those are almost fully installed and at the point of calibration for use, where we're starting to see results starting to come into our systems of what's happening on a daily basis in classrooms. We have distributed tents to several school sites, not all of them yet, as requested by principals, and setting those up for covered outdoor eating areas to, to keep that in place as well. And we fully intend to, regardless of, of any other outcome, still encourage staff, including teachers and office personnel, to continue using the measures that we've put in place, not to stop using those because guidance has changed.
Another question that came up that we've also talked about in the past is recognizing that elementary school culture still prioritizes kind of eating inside, sitting next to each other with monitors. And has there been any move towards expanding the possibility of elementary school kids eating outside and kind of being able to sit where they choose and to be outside?
Can we talk a little bit, Deputy Superintendent Edson, about the tents?
Yeah, so I know that that's happening at several sites. Either in their normal winter and other weather has been more cooperative, if you will. Along with, like I said, I know a couple of sites are utilizing, you know, eight to ten tents to have covered eating areas as well. And others are still going through that process of deciding if they want covered eating areas outside based on their school location. So that's taking place already. I don't know personally about the flow at every school site in terms of eating inside or outside. But I know that they're utilizing it, to my knowledge, as much, as most, as much as they can, excuse me.
And my, my last question is, you know, how, how are we taking into consideration the increased mental health impacts as well as an increased stress and increased learning loss in those families who, with those kids who have experienced disproportionately higher levels of COVID transmission and infection? Because that will continue. That has not stopped throughout the pandemic at all, ever. So how will this district continue to address that disproportionality in the way that we address increased stress, increased learning loss on top of existing gaps for those populations?
So, and I'm probably not the best person. We might need some of our SEL supports, but maybe Mr. Mazzara could also support and answer on this. We are increasing where we can mental health supports with our mental health therapists, our counselors. There are resources that we are pushing out and making more therapists available so that we can make this process for some students who are struggling and staff. I should also mention staff that we do offer some SEL or mental wellness supports for our staff as well.
Okay. Further questions, trustee Manieri?
Yeah, I, I just have a question around just kind of action plans. If there was an event of a surge, not to say that there will be if, if the mask requirements are lifted, but if there were, if there was a surge or anything like that, that would impact educators' abilities to come into the classroom, attendance for children. Are we prepared in this moment to address that, to do something about that? The last thing I would want to see are our schools being closed again or seeing the stress that this has caused in the past. And so I'm just wondering if we're ready, we're ready for that right now.
So I think there's a lot that we've learned over the last several months, and there would absolutely need to be some shifting. And I, it depends on how dramatic we would need to be in pulling back and maybe going back to some of the former social distancing or physical distancing and some of the other measure, safety measures that we had in place previously, would also, which would also then spark the need to meet with our labor groups to talk about those things ongoing, and the hope would be that we wouldn't have to close schools. But if we have to pivot, and I used that word, but if we have to pivot, pivot, we will.
And, and I think I was thinking more with regard to, you know, in the past, we've heard from educators saying that you know, they have to take sick time or even personal time if, in, in cases where they have gotten sick that they can't teach. And so are, do we have any kinds of supports in place for our educators in, in case they need to take time off?
Yes, and I'll ask Assistant Superintendent Shepherd to speak to that, as there has been an extension of supplemental leave, just for this very reason.
Yeah, correct. There, there's been an extension of COVID leave. And starting back to January one, staff have an additional ten days of, of COVID leave. And they would have to qualify for with, in some cases, a doctor's note. But it also covers, it's a little more, it's kind of back to the, the same, similar law that was passed last year. So they would have, it would provide if they had to, if a staff member had to stay home because their kid was homesick and they had to care for them, that would also be an example of what would be covered.
Okay. And just going back to action plans, do we have a, like an internal threshold that we would follow, you know, if we reached a certain number of cases per thousand or something like that? That would trigger having to go back to mask wearing?
That's a great question. I'm going to ask Mr. Mazzara if he could address that one.
The county has their tiered system that they're looking at, and so they have a one, two, three, four tier that talks about positivity. They've also changed their factors a little bit. They're looking at hospitalization rates and hospital space that will decide the next layer to this. But we, we will have to rely on the guidance from the county. County would be the one directing us to make that next adjustment, whatever that might, that might be. If you recall, as superintendent mentioned, we pivoted with pool testing, you know, we pivot less, we pivot more, we add those. We had restrictions for indoor sporting and other events. So we have a whole layer of things that we could put right back on as needed. That's pretty easy to flex if we have, you know, forbid another surge. But the county would basically be the ones giving us direction and modifying, you know, their mandate, of course, if they felt we needed to go to masks.
I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm doing a time check here, and I know we're going to allow sixty minutes of public comment. There are two hundred and nine people in attendance who've been waiting this evening. I'm gonna, I, I know we have more questions and we can come back to these questions, but I do really want to get to public comment.
That's what I was gonna say. I was gonna make a recommendation. We get to public comment.
I'm sorry, trustee Manieri, to cut you off. If, if you had something you really quickly you can throw in here, but we do have a lot of people waiting.
No, that's all right. We can, we should go to public.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna allow two minutes of public comment. We're going to cap this at an hour. Are we ready for public comment?
President Sheffield, would you like all hands lowered and an ask for students, or now at ten thirty at night?
At ten thirty at night, I think we're just gonna move forward.
All right. Thank you. Our first comment is Lori Turner, two-minute time limit, please, and there should be a clock to help you. Lori, are you there?
Yes, I don't see.
There it is.
Okay, you hear me now?
Yes.
And thank you. I was gonna speak quickly. Hopefully you can take notes. I have a lot to say. In September of 2021, I informed this board in writing the same thing that the CDC is now telling you that you are now considering. So that's very important. So that's very important that you listen to public comment like you're doing, and I appreciate your time. But you may understand that there are many people trying to help you guys along and that they are doing way more research and finding out a lot more than what the CDC and the Public Health Department are actually telling you. I've spent a hundred percent of my free time. I have done no work. I have completely invested in solving this problem and trying to help the schools, but I really have not gotten any feedback from you guys. So I hope that you. Work more closely with the people trying to contact you and help you in the future. I let you know at that time that there was a civil liability if a school. Or a teacher enforced a mask wearing and that it would impact a child in any way. And so now we know the CDC is saying you cannot send the kids home. You know, you can't make them do this. We already knew that. So please, again, there's an education code 49005.8. Section three, schools are not allowed to use a physical restraint technique that obstructs a pupil's respiratory airway. By law, so you might want to look at that one. There's a lot of reasons why a school district should go ahead with your proposal and open normally, but even further. No masks, no forced distancing, no glass, no coercion, no discrimination. No pressure to satisfy others with experimental medical procedures. For their volunteers, their staff, their students, none of that should be required at all. Each district has the authority to implement the guidelines. But you should definitely go with making it a recommendation. There's a lot of ways you can softly enforce the recommendations. They could be. Letters that get sent home. They can be, give the kids a club to talk about this stuff, you know? Um, you talked about the health for children who cannot wear it and maybe an exemption. I just want.
Sorry, Ms. Turner, but you have reached the time limit. Next is Katrina Goroskis. Katrina, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, hello, my name is Katrina Goroskis and I am a senior at Maria Creo High School. Over the past couple of years, my school experience has been filled with disappointments and inconsistencies. What started as an extended two weeks to slow the spread has turned into two important years of my life that I will never get back. I do not even know what my classmates' faces look like and I'm daily robbed with the joy of seeing people's smiles. I'm not only asking you, but begging you. That you align with the state mask guidelines for schools and let students have the choice whether or not they want to wear a mask to protect themselves from the virus. Forcing kids to continue to wear masks against their school or against their will at school despite California state law changing is unjust. Adults can go about their life breathing freely when they go to work. While forcing children to wear masks is discriminatory against the youth in our communities. Let us breathe and let us choose what precautions we take for our own health. Please, please stop targeting the children in the community. It only hinder, hinders learning. But also greatly impacts the mental health of students. I am taught in school about the importance of my voice. Well, this is my voice. These are my thoughts and I hope you did not already make a decision before this meeting. Please listen to a student that your decisions directly affect.
Thank you. Next is Liz Birch.
Hi, um, my point of reference is on the ground and it's all about health. Um, I drive a carpool and I asked the kids in my car what they want to do about this. And they all intend to continue to wear a mask whether mandated or not. Um, they're nervous about new variants and they just want to get to the end of the year and they don't want to go back online. So I just hope that someone watches out for the kids who want to continue to wear masks. It's fine with me if you go to not mandated or mandated. Whatever the county says to do, just do that, but, um, I wish I knew more. About who was vaccinated and who wasn't. Um, I think we've all, the kids and me. Uh, we talk all the time about how we are gonna not be too surprised. That the kids who don't wear masks may not be vaccinated as well, even though it's supposed to be the other way around. And that bothers us. Um, so, you know, I am very frustrated listening to parents talk about their rights. Um, you know, we have rights and I am so sick of this conversation being about rights. Is, this is about health. It's just about health. I don't know how many times I could, I would take my last 48 seconds to just say it's about health, but. I digress. Um, in any case, we just want to keep everybody safe. We want the schools to stay open, okay? Closing the schools and going back online, hey, they'd rather wear a mask. Let me tell you about that, okay? That's the main thing here. I also want to say that I hope that you guys listen to the teachers. Remember, they were the heroes. Remember that? They were the heroes. Now people are beating up on them right, left, and I'm sick of it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sammy Sharp.
Hi, um, so I would just like to start out by saying something. Um, it was pointed out earlier in the meeting during the, um, S R T A president presentation. Um, they made a point saying that, um, they're commending the board because no one party is being asked to just agree to when it comes to the mask mandate. Um, but I would like to make that abundantly clear that that is not the case. Um, the parents are being heard, the board is being heard, um, S R T A is being heard. That your classified staff, your, um, C S E A is not being heard. You haven't asked them for their opinion. No survey has been done by our president. Um, no sort of data or information has been taken. This is just another instance where our board is specifically. Leaving a huge demographic of your employees out of the conversation. Um, and that's not a fault of S R T A. It was just something that they had said that kind of resonated. Um, that you guys are completely leaving, um, your classified staff out. And just hoping that they agree with whatever you decide. Um, you don't really have any data beyond that to kind of back that up. Um, I would just like to say that a lot of people are saying. You know, the state guidelines, the state guidelines. I would also like to reiterate that our county has now changed their guideline as well. Um, you don't have to wear masks if you are vaccinated in public areas. I think it's really important that you guys just take a look at, you know, what's being said. You follow the guidelines that you have followed. Um, another thing that was said was that. We would follow the county guideline if masks were required again. So I'm confused on why we would follow them. In that instance, but not follow them now. Um, I just really hope that you guys are putting your students and everybody first and giving them the choice. Um, I think that's the operative word, you know, word here. If you want to wear a mask, it's strongly encouraged. If you don't want to, then you don't have to as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Luca Navarro.
Hello, board and superintendent. My name is Luca Navarro and I am a fourth grader at Santa Rosa French American Charter School. I would like to respectfully ask you that the board makes wearing masks optional for students and teachers after this Friday. My school is a language immersion school and wearing masks. Makes all aspects of learning difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Erin Matthews.
Hello, my name is Erin Matthews. I'm a substitute teacher for the district and the parent of a kindergartner at Proctor Terrace. I feel strongly that masks should remain until health professionals deem it safe to remove them. Currently, it's strongly recommended to wear masks. Students are not currently required to be vaccinated against COVID-19. If those unvaccinated were to walk into a grocery store, they'd be required to wear a mask. Why on earth would that not be the case in a classroom? Superintendent Trinell mentioned earlier that safety is a top priority, which I don't doubt. So why are we even discussing removing masks at this time? I'm the daughter, my son, the grandchild of two immune compromised parents. Removing masks in the classroom puts my family at a greater risk. Should I stop substituting? Should my son stop attending in-person school? Should we stop seeing our family? These are a few questions that keep me up at night. You, the board, have the opportunity to make our commitment a safer place. So let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Um, good evening. Um, I can actually give you some of that demographic data that the district did not provide. Um, I looked, took a screen capture of the yes, no's. Every single school. That said they preferred to keep the mask mandate has 72% Hispanic students or more. So. Take that under consideration. Um, S R T A leadership uses a system when we're discussing the impact of our choices. It's got four pieces to provide balance. Move, follow, oppose, and bystand. Move is the suggestion. Keep masks in school because it makes everybody safer. The oppose would be the people who don't want that. The, excuse me. The follow are the people who agree with the move. But we also look at who's not in the room. That's the bystand. Who is not here to share their? Need, right? Equity is about getting everybody what they need, not making sure that everybody gets what they want. Right? When things are inequitable, those who already have privilege get more than they need and those who don't have privilege get less than they need. We aren't hearing from disabled students. We are not hearing from disabled parents. I don't remember the last time we had a Spanish speaking parent speak on this issue. Their voices are not being heard. They're not. Now, uh, my, after my last speaking with you, a parent accused me of being afraid. No, I'm not afraid. I did a risk assessment on what it takes. My family is in. Four elementary school classrooms between myself and the three children. And we all wear KN95 masks or N95 masks. We've made an assessment. Of that. I'm not afraid. I'm angry that our society is abandoning disabled people. That our society is abandoning those who need our help the most with removing masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kim. Kim, could you please state your last name for the record?
My name is Kim Goroskis.
Thank you.
Um, I guess it's important to say this. Uh, I have two students at Santa Rosa City Schools and an immune compromised husband, so I'm speaking on that behalf. Yet I'm asking that you please allow for mask choice and follow the new state guidelines. I'm asking that you are not more restrictive once again than the other school districts and counties. Our kids already felt targeted when you banned their own parents from watching their sporting events a few last month. Now they feel that they're being discriminated against by being in Santa Rosa City Schools if you do not lift the mask mandate. Friends who go to other schools do not have to wear their masks after March 11th. Parents can go to work without masks, but kids cannot go to learn without masks on. What is our priority? Kids are missing a vital part of education in reading the emotions and facial expressions of their teachers and peers. Please do not make your restrictions tighter than the state. A press Democrat article posted before this meeting at 5:52 PM. Said, and I quote, "Santa Rosa intends to keep the mask requirement at least in the near term." So you decided before this meeting? We were told that you would listen to the community concerns. Is that a lie? How can this make us feel like we have a voice when you have already made a decision and are making our kids feel marginalized and discriminated against? Please allow for mask choice when they go to school on March 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gabby Porter.
Uh, hello, thank you everybody for speaking tonight. Decir que yo si soy una madre que es latina. Yo nací en Venezuela, vine aquí, crecí aquí. Y estoy hablando para las personas que sí son latinas. So what I want to say is that I am bilingual and I am a mother and I am Hispanic. And I am speaking for the people who are, um, in the Hispanic community that don't have the ability. To read the research and to, um, be able to come on here and speak confidently. So we are here. Um, the other thing I want to say is that, you know, the research is pointing. Towards the mental health of kids, like that is the biggest thing. Um, the health crisis, the suicide, the anxiety, the depression, like this is why we're moving and this is why. The federal government, the CDC, the state, the county, everyone sees this. And, you know, I just want to say like three things, like the experts gave their guidance. We need to, uh, follow their guidance, right? Um, the CDC also recognizes natural immunity as the same as being vaccinated. So between. Natural immunity and vaccinations, we're at here, you know, we're at herd immunity. Everyone relax. It's okay. Um, the third thing I want to say is, um, everything is in favor of following the guidance. Um, your student board member today said that, you know, the, the students are ready to move forward and are positive. They're ready to put this behind them. The teacher said that they're ready to follow the guidance as well. Um, we heard from the teachers' union. And also the parent survey, who also said that they were in support of following the guidance. Um, there are countries that have taken all of the COVID mitigation away. United Kingdom, Sweden, I, uh, Israel, check out Florida. We're all doing great. Guys, you need to update your research. I know you don't have tons of time. Um, but if you just check out just the UK or just Sweden, you feel much more confident and much better about moving forward.
Thank you. Next is Shelley. Shelley, would you please state your last name for the record?
Yes, Shelley Kaldensky. Um, good evening. I'm very concerned that Santa Rosa City Schools is not considering following the mask. Choice guidelines that many schools in our district will adopt starting next week. I am a teacher here in Sonoma County and I think it's important for parents and concerned citizens listening to this call. To understand that these restrictive COVID protocols are being driven by the illogical fear and. Of some teachers and their powerful unions. You can see from the decision, from the data we just saw, a majority of teachers do not endorse continuing to wear masks. These decisions are not being made based on what is best for the health and well-being of students. Instead, money and political special interests are calling the shots, quite literally. There are numerous protective measures that teachers, staff, or even immunocompromised students can take if they so choose. The data is clear and easily accessible. Kids are at virtually zero risk for serious injury or hospitalization from COVID. As we all know, our county's COVID-19 community level is now categorized as low. CDC recommends. Mask wearing should be based on personal preference. This translates to choice. As other callers have said, our kids are plagued with increased suicide, severe anxiety, delayed speech and learning. When will we say enough is enough? Frankly, the adults in the room making these decisions. Against the best interest of our kids should be ashamed of themselves. Mandates and policies are not laws. Parents, students, and even some teachers thankfully. Are educating themselves on the law and their rights. I think it's great that this board has taken time this evening to honor the rights of others like indigenous peoples and women's history. All wonderful, however, let's not forget why we are here. As a public school teacher, I understand that I work for the taxpayers and my students. I ask this board to please listen to the many concerns brought forward tonight. Students have a right to decline a medical device such as a mask, a right to breathe fresh air and see the smile of their friends.
Sorry, but you've reached your time limit. Next is Justin England.
Hi there. Sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, well, just want to make, uh, two points really quick. Uh, well, first of all, I, I strongly support you guys ending the mask mandates and making it optional. And I wanted to just try and dispel two, uh, the two main misconceptions that I've been hearing throughout the night. Number one is that, uh, people are still afraid of getting COVID, it seems, despite the fact that they have been vaccinated. Boosted. Everybody who wants to be vaccinated can be vaccinated. And yes, the vaccines are highly effective at preventing serious illness. The chances of you becoming seriously ill are almost zero. And all teachers, all staff, all parents. And, and all school age children now can be vaccinated. And so. We need to move out of this climate of fear. There's no reason for the vast majority of the population to be afraid of getting COVID anymore. And so we need to move away from the fear and we need to spread the message that we should be giving to the kids. Is not strongly recommending the mask. We should be telling, look, you guys, it's, it's okay. You can take them off. You don't need to be afraid anymore. The fear is not rational. It is not supported by the numbers. It is not supported by the science and it's not healthy. And we need, need to move beyond it. And secondly, I don't think a lot of people in Sonoma County realize that 95 plus percent of the rest of the country has already ended the mask mandates. Many countries have ended all restrictions and you can go look at the numbers in these places. There have not been. Increases in cases in schools or the communities as a result of ending the mandates. You can compare the states and the counties that have not had many mandates for a long time. You can compare them with California. There is no significant difference. The masks, the reality is they don't have that much of an effect on the spread of COVID. Anyway, and so all, all of this taken into consideration, the masks make very little sense at this point and they are doing real hard.
And you have reached your time limit. Thank you for your comment. Next is K O Acosta.
Hola, buenas tardes. Yo también soy latina, entonces la comunidad está representada aquí. Hi, my name is Kyo Acosta. I'm responsible for sending you the email today from Sonoma Child Mask Injury. I want to thank you for hearing me today. Where should, where should I start? I guess I will start with telling you that you need to be aware that the masks are causing injuries. I sent you guys photos today. Those are just some of the children. Their skin is falling off behind their ears. There's polyps and there's noses. There are children that are bullying each other because they can't understand what they're saying. I mean, there are real, there's asthma. Children are passing out from asthma and wearing masks. And their medical injuries are not being um, exempted by the doctors because the doctors are afraid to lose their licenses. And the schools are afraid to lose their funding and get shut down. So you have to be aware of that. On top of that, there's been a lot of great points that have been put out by the community. Liability, lowered speech standards, suicide, following the money. These are all red flags that something is not right in our community. Even the superintendent herself, which I would like your attention, ma'am, said that there's support that need, that's needed. But the support that's really needed is that we want a choice to mask or unmask. And I'm just here to bring awareness to you guys that there are mask injuries and that children are suffering. And the Latino children are suffering. Okay, I know this. Yo soy mexicana, okay? You may look at me, I'm green eyed and red headed, but yo soy latina. Yo voy a misa con mi gente. I go to church with my people. So please unmask the children. They need you. This is about health. You know? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Katie Johnson.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Um, I cannot say that any more eloquently. I just wanted to um, echo uh, everything that's been said tonight regarding supporting um, mask choice and um, yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next is Jenny Fish.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Dr. Jenny Fish. I work for the Vista Family Health Center, so I, I work also four to twenty-five hours per week in COVID equity work, working alongside promotoras and community health workers. And I want to thank those of you that came to the community forum last night to hear their concerns. So I'm here to elevate their voices. Voices that are often unheard in these spaces, in spaces in the county. Um, there are eight to ten community health worker groups and community-based organizations that are asking you to keep the masks in our schools. Uh, we talk about fear. Their fears and their concerns are a hundred percent valid. Um, the health disparities are real. They're persistent. They're not going away. It is affecting our low income children of color, most disproportionately. That's continuing. And then you think of the learning loss, you think the financial insecurity, the housing insecurity, the food insecurity that's affecting most families. We send you the urgency of Equity Toolkit, which shows updated um, data from public health experts across the country, which shows unequivocally there is no data supporting masks causing harm to children. The real question is what is equity? And equity really is about creating policies and challenging systems to prioritize the needs of the most impacted communities. And that right now is low income children of color who are already starting off entering kindergarten with a learning gap. They need more support. Their fears and, and are valid and their voices need to be heard. And I'm really, really hoping that you vote to keep masks in place for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Anastasio Tovar Rose.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I was at the county briefing earlier and um, Superintendent Anna Trinell was there and county superintendent Steve Harrington said that there's going to be a robot of rapid testing. So I want Superintendent Anna Trinell to address this meeting on how those rapid tests are going to be available before spring break. Hopefully, we've learned before that these tests need to be available before we go in on break for the Christmas break. Those rapid tests were offered after, so I want to know on how Santa Rosa City Schools is going to address those rapid tests and how they're going to roll them out.
Thank you. Next is Deanna Oliveras. Deanna, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, there's so much to say. I'm sure that all of you know how I feel about these mask mandates, but a few things that I, I really want to say is that some of these quote unquote um, nonprofits or clinical people like Jenny Fish that just talked. They employ a lot of underprivileged Hispanic people that are medical professionals. And what they're not telling you is that they tell their Hispanic medical, medical professionals what to say to their bilingual and underprivileged people that come in there. So the white doctors are telling their Hispanic medical assistants to tell these people that they need to mask their kids and they need to give their kids vaccines. And it's very alarming to me that you listen to these people that are profiting off of minorities that work under them in the school system and in the hospitals when you should really be going to the source and asking people like how they feel and what they're doing. And it's just, it's really alarming to me that you all, you all like act like you want equity and all this stuff, but you, you, you don't go to the source. You don't go to the schools. You don't ask the parents. You, you literally just sit there and wait for people that can afford to wait for four hours to, to, to talk on Zoom. And it's just, it's, it's super alarming to me because it's not equitable. You don't care about people that can't have their voices be heard. And it's like, it's just, it's like, it's crazy to me. And I'm just, I'm lost for words. And if you don't vote to align with the state, we will unseat you from your positions and we will move our kids to different districts. So I dare you to vote against it because I want you guys to see what happens.
Thank you. Next is Sammy McEnulty.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Samantha McEnulty and I'm a senior at Santa Rosa High School. I've only had one normal year in my high school career so far. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, a year and a half was taken from me and my fellow students. But we were able to go back to, to the masks. I'm all for wearing masks at schools. I personally have family that are very vulnerable to COVID. And I'm very scared to infect and seriously hurt them. I read the newest update of the mandate on February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, which heavily encourages us to wear masks in high-risk situations. In the list, it shows in-school activities as a high-risk situation. And because of this, I beg of you to keep the requirement of masks. Because of the previous mask mandate, we have been able to have some semblance of normalcy this year. And I would like to continue to go to school safely and confidently. As someone who goes to school every day and engages in the danger of infection, I encourage everyone to wear the mask regardless of how this action item plays out. I would also like to include about a past comment that was mentioned about the suicide rates going up because of the mask. While suicide rates have gone up due to uh, COVID, there's no actual evidence that is due to the mask. And as someone who was a suicide survivor in the last two years that COVID have been here, I can assure you, it is not the mask that is making me suicidal. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. Next is Lindsay. Lindsay, would you please state your name for the record?
Hello, can you hear me? My name is Lindsay Conneke.
We can hear you.
Awesome. Hi, guys. Um, thank you for taking the time tonight to hear us out. I think this is really an important matter. Um, I think at the end of the day, I speak for many friends and family in my circle uh, at the school and outside of school where this should just come down to a choice. We've been given the choice in other areas of our community when we go to the store, when we're out and about, even with certain family members, if they want to wear a mask, go ahead. One thing that's interesting that has only been mentioned one time is natural immunity. While the vaccines have been readily available across the board for adults and for children, one thing we haven't heard a lot of conversation on is the natural immunity benefits in addition to being or uh, being equal to a vaccination status. That would be something that I would like to be considered. And at the end of the day, this should come down to a choice and it shouldn't be penalized if you choose to wear a mask or not to wear a mask. I think we all just need to, I, so many other people have been very eloquent with their words, unlike me in this moment. I just fully support that this comes down to a choice and respecting it amongst each other um, on whatever that choice may be. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Next is Shelby Pryor.
Thank you. Per the CDC's March fifth, twenty twenty-one morbidity and mortality report, masks only reduced growth rates of COVID nineteen cases and deaths by approximately one point three two percent. The report concludes community mitigation policies such as state-issued mask mandates and prohibitions on premises restaurants, dining, have the potential to slow the spread of COVID nineteen. I do not personally find the differentiation, differentiation. Oh, excuse me, sorry. The differentiation of less than one point five percent to be significant. I thought this information may be helpful for the board to consider since we have received a lot of negative feedback regarding the mask mandates tonight alone. It's interesting to me that you guys read what you want to read when you want to read it. And it's disturbing. As far as vaccines go, the full clinical trial data for Pfizer was released on March first, twenty twenty-two. As outlined in this data, there were over a hun, one thousand two hundred deaths and forty thousand serious adverse reactions, including many autoimmune disorders, also known as AIDS. Fast forward to March seventh. A week later, Pfizer filed S E C Form twenty-five, delisting from the stock exchange by removing Pfizer from the U.S. Securities Exchange Commission. This would allow the pharmaceutical giant to dissolve its legal uh, legal responsibility and charges or paying damage to people injured or killed by COVID nine vaccines wouldn't, would be impossible to go ahead and pursue these individuals. It is disturbing that you guys listen to what you want to listen to, when you want to listen to it. Stop masking our kids and stop making us be vaccinated.
Thank you, Mr. Pryor. You've reached your time limit. Next is Hannah Hoffman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so this is actually uh, her daughter Emma Miners speaking right now. Um, I'm a senior at Santa Rosa High School and I've heard a lot of strong opinions from parents and on social media. And, you know, I just want to say that they're not the ones who are actually, you know, in the classrooms all day one, all day. And they aren't the ones whose immunocompromised or disabled friends could potentially suffer if they were to get sick. And another issue I'd like to speak on is just the wording around this. I've only ever heard the words removed and optional used when speaking about this issue. And rather than strongly recommended. And I should say wording does matter in general and wording matters especially when you're speaking to middle school, middle schoolers and high schoolers. And if this mandate is in fact lifted in high schools, it's very important to actually explain what this means and what your choice to remove your mask actually means and who it may affect. And although some of the parent opinions may be the loudest, please listen to the opinions of your students and your teachers who actually go to school daily and have to deal with this daily. And I'd also like to say that using words like discrimination in regards to this situation is a bit ridiculous, but you know. Thank you for your time. That's all.
Thank you. Next is Margaret Boone.
Good evening. Oh, sorry. Hold on. Um, I feel I'll be remiss for not saying my opinion on ending the mask mandate. I understand the CDC, the state and the county have all said it's time to stop mandating masks. And I do not doubt that's the decision our district will make as other districts around us have done. I don't expect the district to be the one group in this whole area to say it's too soon because that's a huge burden and the amount of vitriol you would receive would be overwhelming. It really was up to health officials to provide that guidance and they've chosen to put public opinion and economics above the good of the most vulnerable in our community. It's ableist and the mask mandate. My first seven years with the district, I taught the class for medically fragile students. And I learned so much about these wonderful kids who have so many vulnerabilities. The powers that be have decided that people like these kids are not valuable enough for us to make the sacrifice of wearing a little fabric on our faces. And that's a sad statement on our values as a society. And that's not even addressing the socioeconomic and racial disparities we've seen in transmission rates and deaths. I will mask to the end of the school year because I can, but I do wish people would choose to prioritize others over making these tiny concessions like wearing a mask. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andrea Cordarolo.
Uh, yes, hi. Just uh, food for thought. Maybe next time with such a hot topic like this one is, place it to the top of the agenda so that we're not here at eleven o'clock saying our comments. Just something to think about. Um, I would first like to start by informing the Santa Rosa City School parents and families that the school board of trustees are elected positions. They are elected and voted for by us, the parents. The school board of trustees sole responsibility is to represent us parents. With that being said, three school board positions are up for reelection this year. Omar Medina, Stephanie Minari, and Jill McCormick. Please remember and play close attention to the school board of trustees who do not vote in favor of aligning with the state and county guidelines regarding mass choice when their position comes up for reelection. I would like to address the Santa Rosa City School Board of Trustees. If any of you walk around without a mask, whether it be in grocery stores, malls, movie theaters, restaurants, et cetera, then I ask you, why wouldn't you vote to align with the state? Do the classrooms pose any more higher risk than a restaurant, movie theater, grocery store, concert, sports arena, or anywhere else? Do you think that COVID knows it's a classroom? Do you think we really, you really want to be the only district not aligning with the state or county? I understand your student enrollment is low. With that, excuse me, being said, what makes you think upset parents won't just pull their children, their children, your students from the district and re-enroll them in another district with mass choice? I like to bring to your attention the current active COVID case rate of two thousand one hundred cases out of a population of almost five hundred thousand residents. The active COVID cases have been steadily declining by the hundreds daily, yet another important reason to align with the state and county. And finally, remember the saying, rules for thee but not for me, or masks for thee but not for me. If any of you ever remove your mask outside of the school district, remember you are all role models to the families and students that you represent.
Thank you for your comment and you've reached your time. Um, we have twenty-one hands raised and we only have another about twenty minutes left for public comment. Um, so just so that you know, we won't get to everyone. Next is Sheila Walker.
Yeah, I'll just speak briefly so others have an opportunity. I just, President Sheffield, members of the board and Superintendent Trinell, prior to your meeting tonight, I sent you a letter from a concerned group of over four hundred. And I understand that more people are signing throughout this meeting. I believe we're at four fifty. Multi-ethnic, multi-generational, politically diverse parents, students, doctors, teachers, spiritual advisors, community members, and voting constituents that have come together to urge you to please allow our children to have the option to go maskless at school starting on Monday, March fourteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Troy Mott.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I'm here to advocate, uh, to drop the mask mandate. While these are challenging times, a true leader in this situation should focus on having as many people as possible wear masks when there's an outbreak or a new variant to save lives. Um, by arbitrarily making masks mandatory when they shouldn't be, fewer people will wear masks in the future, which will do more harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Donna Pratt.
Hi, I just wanted to share. I don't know, I've only been half listening now, but Bennett Valley just voted five to zero to allow optional masking for students. So I hope we follow suit with them. And if we're not going to force kids to be fully vaccinated with COVID to go to school for the new school year, then does that mean the kids still have to wear a mask? So that's it. It's well past my bedtime, but good night.
Good night and thank you. Next is Mary T.
Hi, good evening.
Mary, could you please state your last name?
Hi, I'm Mary Trader and I urge you to make the decision to follow the CDPH guidelines into strongly recommending the wearing of masks both indoors and outdoors in our schools. The CDPH's guidance mentions that local health jurisdictions and entities may continue to implement additional requirements that go beyond this statewide guidance based on local circumstances. It does not mention school boards or teachers unions. Dr. Mace is our local health officer. She's following the state guidance and is not going beyond this. The school board is not a health entity, nor is the teachers' union. So officially, the school board, nor the SRTA should have the authority to propose a public health policy that is more restrictive than the state or county. My own child developed a breathing tick due to the prolonged mask wearing. A good friend's daughter has developed eczema on her face. Many children have big reading delays due to this prolonged mask wearing. Suicides have gone up, depression, mental and emotional health. Speech therapists have seen a huge uptick in children needing help. All of this due to the mask wearing. All these outweigh the risks of COVID in children. Many teachers I speak to also want to have the option of masks. It makes teaching children a lot harder with masks on. Please do not prolong your decision and follow the CDPH's guidelines starting March 12th and not a day later. These children have suffered long enough. Those who aren't ready yet have all the tools to protect themselves. And those who want to wear a mask can. All experts have said that they can protect themselves now. And others don't need to do it for them. With vaccination boosters and N95s, people have all the tools to protect themselves. Sonoma County is one of the counties with the highest vaccination rate, plus it is in the green law community level from the CDC. Many other surrounding school districts already announced that they're following the state guidance. Why can't we do the same thing? At this point, there is no reason for you to prolong this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Lisa Mott.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for taking the time to hear from us tonight. I wanted to join um with the voices of those urging you to please drop the mandate and align with public health, the CDP, the California Department of Public Health, the CDC and county health. I was one of the people that signed on to the letter signed by over 400 community members urging you to please align with the current guidance of making it optional to wear a mask in school. I also just want to respond to something a board member said that really made me shake my head, this idea that maybe ask those kids that are having mental health difficulties to get an exemption and not wear the mask. And I don't understand why we would put further burden on them and ask them to self-label and do anything of that nature that that really, I don't think that was thought out when it was said. And it it really upset me to hear it. Um, our kids have been burdened for the past two years. They've they've gone through this pandemic era learning where they've had to isolate, distance, mask, lose out on events, prom, sporting, um, sports. The list goes on. Right now, the state is saying we can drop the mandate. We can allow the choice of masking for those that want to keep masking. Um, I just implore you to align with the guidance and to think about all of the ways that adults now are able to interact in the world and not wear a mask and to not ask of our children more than the adults in the community are being asked. To me, that is just highly dis-
Sorry, Ms. Mott, but you've reached your time. Next is Karen. Karen, could you please state your last name for the record?
Yes, my last name is Karen Serbic. My name is Karen Serbic. And I have three children and two attend the Santa Rosa City Schools and one in Brinkin Valley. Um, I'm wondering if you vote on continuing the mask requirements, please provide us with an end game plan. What are the factors that will determine the end of the mask requirements? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kelly. Kelly, could you please state your last name for the record?
Uh, Kelly DeVries.
Thank you.
Um, I am confused really why this is even a discussion. The California Department of Health, who is way more educated and informed than all of us, has said it is safe. If you don't feel safe, then wear an N95 mask. No one is at risk. There is a major issue with continuing to do something that is no longer required by our health department. We don't know more than they do. We know less. You have to take your personal bias out of this and make a decision for the physical health of our students as well as their mental health. I'm a teacher in Sonoma County, as well as I have two students in Montgomery High School. I see an issue not with COVID, but with COVID protocol. Let's move on. Let our kids breathe and interact with their teachers and fellow students. Side note is quit acting like people of color are less because they aren't vaccinated. That's offensive. They are making an informed decision to not get a vaccine that doesn't stop you from getting it or spreading it. Also, why not at the very least leave it up to each school to decide? I hope you take both the CDPH guidelines as well as the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is someone with the initials KM. Could you please state your name for the record? Are you there, KM? Okay, we're going to move on. Next is Rachel Barber.
Hi, good evening. Um, just a couple of things. Most of what I want to say has already been said. Um, we heard a couple of students earlier say that they're afraid if we release the mask mandate, that they're going to spread it to their relatives. I feel like we've placed the burden of this pandemic on our children for too long. I think we need to follow the CDC guidelines, lift the mask mandates. To the woman earlier who said there is no data to support uh that masks call cause harm to our children. I'd like to present you with my daughter who has raw behind her ears, who gets headaches every day and has a panic attack if she doesn't have her mask with her when she gets to school. Regarding the other districts who are lifting the mask mandates and making it optional, what are we as parents supposed to tell our middle and high school students when their younger sibling doesn't have to wear a mask, but they do? So I ask that the district do the right thing, follow the CDC guidelines and make it a choice for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paul Polling.
Yeah, hi, I'm Paul Polling, I'm father of two centers and centers of city schools. Um, thanks for listening to us tonight. I just wanted to address the comments earlier that we're talking about the health disparities. Um, and especially around COVID for communities of color. Want to validate that those things are definitely true, like access to healthcare, all the reasons that go into why less of those people are vaccinated and all of those things are very much true, but are unrelated to the mask mandate. The, there's been data for now a year and a half and more studies since then showing very clearly that having students go back to school, having students even being unmasked, none of those things increases community spread. And a threat to people who aren't vaccinated is community spread. And so the link that needs to be, would need to be made would be to say, oh, having kids getting unmasked increases community spread, therefore increases risk and disproportionately increases risk to people of color, as the people said before. Um, and that link isn't there. There's no data supporting that conclusion. There wasn't even anything presented to say that even without data, that here's why I think that's true. So those are very valid concerns and like definitely need to be addressed by us as a society. Why are those disparities there? But they are unrelated to unmasking children in schools. Please do the unmasking, we have the optional as soon as possible. Decide that tonight and allow us kids to be unmasked. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Kate Wieland.
Hi, it's not a real long comment. I'm not sure why this is even a debate. The California, you know, they've already decided this was fine. Sonoma County Public Schools have decided this was optional. Out of the 40 districts, I think 38 have already said they're going to do this. What makes Santa Rosa City Schools so special? Certainly not your enrollment. Everyone's paying attention to this.
Thank you, Ms. Wieland. Next Rebecca Sullivan.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I am an employee, a classified employee at Santa Rosa City Schools. And um, I thank you guys for staying up this late and listening to the community. Uh, I just asked that you guys really look at an end game. When is this to end? Where does it end? Because when the city and the state align with the CDC and they say it's safe, you know, to choose and we're having this discussion until midnight, I just want to know. And I ask that you guys really think about what is the end game here? What, if we continue with masks, where does it end? Because I'm, I'm in the health office, I work in the isolation tent and I deal with sick kids, I deal with sick teachers and the decline is significant right now. And I, I just don't, I just want to understand um, as a person who's really in the thick of it at a high school um, with over 1,600 students, you know, where, where does this end and what is the game plan? If we do continue with masks, so I just ask that you guys really think about that before making your decision. Have a great night. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next is Bea Murray. If you could please state your full name.
Yes, my name is Brittany Murray.
Thank you.
I, yes, I have um, two kids, one in junior high, one in high school, and I work in an elementary school. Um, mental health, it's, it's huge and, and I know um, you know, I look out on the playground where the mask is optional and there are a lot of little elementary school kids, probably 95% of our kids running around with a mask on still, terrified to take their mask off. Um, my daughter, junior high, came running in one day freaked out because she almost forgot her mask. Um, she has friends that say even when we lift the mask mandate, they don't want their face to be seen. So they're going to keep wearing their mask. Has nothing to do with being scared. It's now become kind of a part of them, um, just kind of being hidden behind a mask. Um, I mean, we all know how that feels when they lifted the mask mandate and if you walked in a store and you're like, oh my gosh. And then you realized, oh, I don't need my mask. It's, it's kind of, it's, it's become part of us. Um, you know, I, my high school son, you, you walk around, these kids are getting together outside of school, doing, going, playing soccer, going places, going everywhere together without their mask on. But then for some reason, they go to school and they're going to get sick at school. And if masks work, then the people that want to wear the mask should be able to. But I'm in support of lifting this mask mandate because I think it's done a lot of harm to our kids. And I really think a choice would be huge, huge for them. So thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. It looks like we only have time for a few more. Susan Fries.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm an educator in Santa Rosa City Schools. And I'd like to make it really clear to everyone who's really asking for the mask mandate to be dropped to think about the language and the word optional versus strongly recommended has been reiterated a few times here. That is super vital because we want to make sure that the kids know CDC is saying strongly recommended still. I strongly agree with Director De La Cruz, what she was saying also about students of color and the disparities and inequities they have. In my classroom, over 50% of my students have had COVID. And of those families, several members of their family have died. So it is not something that we want to take lightly. My students are happy. They're wearing their masks. They're complying. And as we approach spring break where people are going to be congregating and traveling more, my plea is that we at least wait until a couple of weeks after spring break when this virus has had a chance to chill and we can make sure we're all safe. It does look like it's ending. It does look like it's becoming an endemic. But we've come this far and we just hate to turn it off at this point and have to go back to any kind of distance learning or any kind of um, remote situation for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Natalie Goodrich.
Good evening, folks. I, I will be very brief. Mental health has been mentioned so many times. I work with 150 middle school students every week and I can tell you that mental health at this point is just as important as this virus and for some kids even more important. As Brittany said, the mask is becoming a part of who they are and how they identify. And that is such an incredibly sad, sad thing for our kids to have to experience. There was even a board member here tonight that said on this call that mental health, depression, anxiety has become a serious issue and spoke of maybe kids having exemptions. That is, that is the opposite of how we need to be viewing our children. We are all on this call to do right for our students. Every single one of us is here for our kids and for the students and we need to be fighting for them. What's happening to their mental health will leave long-term effects that are much, much far greater than this virus. I urge you to please, please change the language of the masks. I don't strongly recommended versus optional. It doesn't matter. Kids are going to wear them or they're not. Please, please give kids the option to be normal kids. We've come to an end with this virus. We are coming to an end and we need an exit plan. The masks are not supposed to be a permanent solution for anything. They were a temporary solution that need to be gone. Thank you.
Thank you. And we only have time unfortunately for one more comment within our hour-long public comment period. And our last comment will be Irma Garcia. Apologies to those of you who might have your hands raised. And President Sheffield, unfortunately, I don't believe we have an interpreter to tell us what Ms. Garcia just said um, in English. Maybe someone on our panel can do that. And this also ends our one hour of public comment. Thank you.
I would really, I would actually request that Ms. Garcia be given an opportunity to do a um, simultaneous translation and I'm happy to do that with her. What she shared was really important.
What she shared was really important for our entire board and our community to hear.
Do we still have her with us?
The translator just said he's here.
I don't see Ms. Garcia. Ms. Garcia is here there.
Gracias, Irma. Es que lo que pasó es que no, no se tradujo, no se tradus, tradujo tus comentarios. Y so es importante que si, si lo puedes repetir como frase por frase y así el interprete puede traducirlo.
Okay, perfecto. Mi nombre es Irma García. Y yo lo que estoy, perdón.
Adelante, Irma.
Sí, mi nombre es Irma García. Yo lo que estoy diciendo en esta junta es que yo no veo la participación de las personas que solamente hablan español, sino solamente algunos de los que hablan inglés.
What I don't see in this meeting is a participation from people who who don't dominate the English language, who speak Spanish. I only hear people who dominate the English language.
Necesitamos escuchar la otra versión antes de tomar decisiones.
We have to hear the other side, the other version before we make a decision here.
Y por lo que estoy viendo el cuestionario que se mandó, esta es el resultado.
And this is what, by looking at the results of the survey, this is the response. This is what I see, the results of that, of that lacquer here.
Que muchas personas que no dominan el inglés o tal vez que no, no leen español, no saben leer español, no pudieron responder ese, ese cuestionario.
That those people that don't speak English or don't feel comfortable in English or for those people who may not be literate even in Spanish, they won't feel comfortable filling out a survey like that.
Yo quiero saber dónde están ese veinte por ciento que no contestó.
I want to know where the twenty percent who did not answer the, the survey are.
Y si en ese cuestionario se les mandó toda la información de lo que está pasando, especialmente con la comunidad latina, que tenemos ahorita estos niveles altos.
And if, and if all of that information was actually shared with the community around the high levels of COVID rates in the Latinx community?
Y de esa manera ver todos los casos que están pasando y así ellos tener la información para decidir o no sobre ese cuestionario.
And that by having that information in front of them, then they're able to say yes or no responding to that survey.
Y con referente a los comentarios de los cubrebocas, un cubre boca salva vidas.
And with reference to the comments about the masks, masks save lives.
Tengo dos hijos y mis hijos cuando entendieron que su abuelita padece del corazón, su tío es dializado y es diabético, ellos inmediatamente, sin, sin en contra de nada, decidieron ponerse el cubre boca.
I have two kids and they have a tío, an uncle who is on dialysis and a grandmother who has heart problems. When they learned that masks would protect them, they immediately without question put the masks on.
El cubre boca puede salvar vidas, puede protegerte a ti, puede protegerme a mí, puede proteger a la comunidad, por lo menos hasta que termine el año escolar.
Masks will protect me, they will protect you at least until the end of this school year.
Pero también entiendo a las personas que tienen problemas con el cubre boca.
I also understand that there are people who have problems with masks.
So podemos solucionar eso, pero no podemos arriesgar a los demás.
So we can work with those people, but we can't put at risk everybody else.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias, Irma, por regresar con nosotros.
Okay, this concludes our public comment. And I just want to thank everybody who, who spoke. Your, your, your words mean a lot to us. Your, your positions, your opinions, your voice means a lot to us. We are going to bring it back to the board for further discussion, further questions or motion. I see Trustee McCormick's hand raised.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to echo President Sheffield, and I appreciate everyone who stayed on so late and, you know, shared their opinion on this issue. And I also appreciate the hundreds of people that have emailed the board and myself over the last week or so regarding this issue as well. So we are taking those into consideration. I am strongly in favor of moving, accepting the state's new masking guidelines and changing it and following that to accept that and changing the indoor masking requirement from required to strongly recommended. So I would like to make a motion that we approve and accept the new masking guidelines from California Department of Public Health and that we do so, do so starting Monday on March fourteenth.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Trustee McCormick and seconded from Trustee Fong. All right, we're ready for a vote.
Director Beard.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Fong.
Aye.
Director Monari.
No.
Director De La Cruz.
No.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina. Oh, he's gone. President Sheffield. President Sheffield.
Yes. Aye. And there is our vote. Okay, the ayes have it. Clearly, we have not gone into this issue recklessly. We listen to science. We listen to health experts. We listen to equity. We listen to families.
Didn't listen to equity.
We go into this, this decision knowing that masks have been proven to be effective to minimizing the spread of COVID. We know this. We know vaccination rates are lower at the district elementary schools. Keeping this mandate in place for a bit longer would definitely give students and family a bit more time to get vaccinated. We did not go that route. And this is the decision that we've made as a board. Motion passes. We have twenty minutes. We have two more agenda items. We have agenda item E five, approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two second interim fiscal report with positive certification. The board will consider approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two interim report with positive certification. We have Deputy Superintendent Edson and Executive Director Dantos joining us.
Thank you, President Sheffield. If we can bring Mr. Dantos over, please. Thank you. I am, good evening, President Sheffield, Superintendent members of the board, those community members still with us. I know we have a couple of other key things that we have to get to tonight. So I'm going to go through the presentation and hit some key slides. And then, as always, both Mr. Dantos and I will be available to answer questions. Okay, so just very quickly, we are at the second interim report as part of the normal budget cycle that we go through on an annual basis. Highlighted in green here. Next, you'll see the May revision coming on or about May fifteenth that we'll bring back to the board at that point for any adjustments to this as we prepare for our public hearing for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget adoption and then ultimately the budget adoption at the second meeting in June. Very familiar slide to our board. This is required by ED code four-two-one-three-zero, a first and second interim report. And then a third interim report if we do not certify positive at second interim. So going through this as an overview, we are self-certifying as positive. And that is the approval that we are asking for tonight for your, during your consideration of this item. A lot of these things we went through in some form or fashion during the fiscal stabilization plan at the last board meeting. So there should be some familiarity with this. We did try and show what our budget assumptions were, including the inclusion of our fiscal stabilization plan again in this presentation. You know, showing on this slide district enrollment and showing it from two thousand eighteen, nineteen through a very rough projection of twenty-three, twenty-four and the impact that has on ADA, which is our source of funding for our general fund, our primary source of funding. Of note, on this slide in twenty-one, twenty-two, we have adjusted P two to thirteen, five, five, three for average daily attendance based on the best information we have at this point of what could transpire in the May revision with hold harmless protection going back to the nineteen-twenty school year. Went too fast. On this slide is the same information for our charter schools. Other budget assumptions that we made, if you'll recall at first interim, we projected a five-point-three-three percent that came at least initially true with the governor's budget proposal in January. Since then, LAO has released a higher number of six-point-one-seven estimated for COLA in, excuse me, at the May revision or at budget adoption. We have chosen to use a number in between that, five-point-seven-five. Certainly, if it comes in over six, which is expected, that will help our budget situation even further. And we'll, as I mentioned, we'll update that as we get information either through the May revision or through augmentation to the trailer bill. As of right now, there is still no help for Calsters or Calpers with reduction of percentages that employers pay. But I am cautiously optimistic that that may come up in May revision as well. The next few slides are what was approved at the last meeting in February regarding fiscal stabilization plan one or part one for this budget cycle with the total budget reductions over the course of the three years, where you can see that through that identification process and using our existing funds, you know, there's considerable, I'll call it savings right now that help offset some of the other deficiencies in order to certify as positive for second interim. I won't go through all these line by line, but the part one A is revenue enhancements. Things that we are reasonably assuming will come true for budget adoption and carry into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. You'll note A nine again, that is the increase of COLA from five-point-three-three to six-point-one-seven amongst the other funding that we mentioned at fiscal stabilization plans, including the expanded learning opportunities program, which dramatically increases our revenue to our district over the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Going into section B and the remaining sections of the fiscal stabilization plan are primarily movements of money in order to alleviate some stress off of the general fund while still providing services, support, services and supports, including keeping as many FTE as possible in light of declining enrollment, knowing, as we've heard tonight many times, the needed services and supports that our students need at all of our sites. So we tried to use the money in the most efficient way possible in order to keep as many staff as possible to perform, perform those services, including classroom instruction and reduction of combo classes or minimizing combo classes, not eliminating all of them. So on this slide, twenty-one, twenty-two revenues, this shows our first interim report and what we reported and then updated for our second interim numbers based on new information, changes in information or clarification of information that we had on these funding sources. This shows a comparison to what was approved at the twenty-one, twenty-two first interim in terms of expenditures for the entire fiscal year. So this is what we are estimating as, as actuals right now going into the close and using in terms of budget creation for twenty-two, twenty-three. The reserve balance shown here. Hold on for just once. Okay, I apologize. So in beginning, any fund balances comparing first interim to second interim of this fiscal year including our unassigned unappropriated amount as components of the ending fund balance. Going into these next two slides are for our multi-year projection. As a reminder, multi-year projections are for the current year plus two fiscal years out for a total of a three-year budget cycle. In here, you can see the implementation, if you will, or the inclusion of the fiscal stabilization measures that were approved at the last meeting and updates to our numbers overall. Here we show that at the end of the third year, our unassigned unappropriated is zero. So that we can meet our financial needs in the current year plus our two out years. The next couple of slides is a COVID-nineteen federal and state funds, including our allocation. If there was a plan required for them, deadlines for use, our actual expenditures for nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. And then our projected for at second interim for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And then the out years as well, if applicable, and then remaining balance as of right now. This slide is our projection of ending fund balances for our other funds. Fund eight through fund sixty-seven, our self-insured dental and any changes of note since first interim to second interim. As always, I won't go through this list exhaustively either. But May revision, we're obviously looking forward to that. We're looking for clarification and more description on some of the trailer bill language in terms of what may be appropriated or part of other of funding mechanisms for Santa Rosa City Schools. And still, you know, the big one that we have to be aware of, you know, is still our continued declining enrollment as we go into budget. Sorry, my mind's going a little blank. Budget creation and ultimately adoption. And then our ongoing contribution to employer expenses for Calsters and Calpers as of right now with no help from the state for twenty-two, twenty-three or beyond. So tonight is the second interim report. We'll continue on through the remainder of winter and spring, going through budget development and then coming back to the board in June, as noted previously. With that, I will say I apologize for the fast. With that, I will say I apologize for the fast presentation tonight, but we are happy to answer any questions.
And no apology needed. It's, it's been a long night. This is an action item. Board members, do we have questions? Okay, seeing no questions, public comment. Do we have folks in public to comment on E5?
Anyone would like to comment on E5, please raise your hand. Gabby Porter would like to comment.
Hi, I'm sorry. I know it's really late. I just want to say that I switched over to the Spanish translation and I think there's only one person doing it and that poor person sounds very, very exhausted. And the Spanish was very hard to, to understand. And then the other thing I wanted to say was that, yeah, okay, thank you for the budget sheet. And then with the ESTR funds, if you go, if you Google it, ESTR three funds, and everyone should go in and Google it. It tells you what it's supposed to be for. It's supposed to be for learning loss. So I hope that we can use a big chunk of that money to mitigate the learning loss that has happened and bring programs, art programs and social emotional programs back to the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sheila Walker. Sheila, are you there?
Again, yeah, I, I'm glad to see. I just want to note in case anyone else is still listening that last week we were in the qualified area and the reason we are positive is because we moved ESTR funds to pay for for general budget expenses or meaning our existing personnel and existing costs. We did not include any additional resources for learning loss or additional programs or additional staff. But that is how our budget is now positive. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other hands raised.
Thank you. Okay, bringing it back to the board for discussion, further questions or motion? I see Trustee McCormick's hand raised.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve E6, the 2021-22 proposal. Whoops, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Hang on, reading the wrong one.
E5.
Sorry, E5, approval of the 2021-22 second interim fiscal report with positive certification.
Second.
We have a second motion to approve, seconded by Trustee Fong. We're ready for a vote.
I have just one comment to make. Just for future reference, you know, I've, I've asked it several times to, you know, when you include your three-year projections with previous years, it would be nice to have the previous years' actuals with the, the projections and the actuals. So I'm hoping to see that, you know, eventually in the near future. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for a vote.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director Fong.
I.
Director Moneyeri.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
President Sheffield.
I. Motion passes. Okay, we clearly are not going to make our midnight deadline on this agenda. I'm looking for a motion. Trustee McCormick.
So I'm not exactly sure what the motion needs to be, but something to the effect of I move that we have a special board meeting next Wednesday. What's the date? The
14th.
No, the 16th.
16.
Right? Yeah, the 16th to deal with the remaining items that we did not get to tonight.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone the rest of this meeting. Bring it up on the 16th. Any second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Trustee Flores, ready for a vote.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Moneyeri.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I'm not available on that day. I have a prior commitment.
Director Fong.
I.
President Sheffield.
I. Motion passes. Okay, well, we have information items. Oh, well, we can actually continue on. We've got two minutes here, guys. Can move to our H items real quick or Superintendent Trinell?
Very quickly, just to be super clear, since we are doing a continuance of this meeting, we also need to state the time, the start time of that meeting. We've established the date is March 16th. We need to establish the time.
Do we need to have a closed session or no? Because it's just a continuance.
We can discuss that. Since we have the opportunity for another meeting, there's the potential to add additional items.
I would say that we do not add additional items and the meeting starts at five.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Approval on five o'clock start time on the 16th. All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposition. Okay, motion passes. All right, well, guys, we need to adjourn this meeting. We will continue next week on the 16th. Thank you all.
For everybody. Thanks, everybody who hung in there tonight.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night.